I had visions of Finley Milton storming the meeting room.
He just tweeted.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's hilarious.
I told you.
Sorry, A D M C arrived, my fault. Thanks, Max. Appreciate you calling me out. Yeah.
Hey, now we have to deal with you have to tell Finley Milton not to come in here.
Why the fuck is he here?
I no, 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 I because I tweeted it, but I said just you and Solomon.
Oh, I don't think.
First he twatted out A D M C, come to the meeting room, please. And I went, oh, God.
No, no, no. Listen, I don't control those guys. All right. They're their own entity.
Good lord.
Like, what do you do for that? Do you have visitors? Do you actually have people come in?
Told you.
I was supposed.
Hit the fuck out, Fed!
John, you nailed it.
Hello.
Get the hell out of here.
Hi.
I was told to be here by the mayor. Isn't that an order? Isn't that a legal?
No.
Read the follow up trial. Read the follow up trial.
I didn't read the follow up trial. I was already on the way. I wasn't looking.
Classic.
You gotta, you gotta read the whole thing. I respect the responsible no texting while driving that I do respect that.
I safety is my number one priority as a, as a club member of a, of a, of a nice Sunday driving motor club.
Yeah, I assume you wear your helmet if you have a bike too, by the way, is now law.
Wait, what? I have to wear a helmet like a fucking nerd?
Yep.
It's for your own safety.
Already look like a nerd, Finley.
Okay, fuck yourself, cat though.
Okay.
And nothing's changed on their side.
You're literally a doctor.
I am.
Well, I mean, well, Finley, Finley, while we have you here, I mean, you can just take the other A D M C members. He's not here today.
Yeah, fuck it. You want to be the deputy mayor?
Oh, can I sit on TJ's lap?
Okay.
Get the fuck away from me.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't, I don't know any other seat then. Sorry. I could just like hang out.
Finley, leave. Goodbye, Mr. Milton.
Bye.
Have a good day, everyone.
Yeah, have a good one.
It was open when I came through. I guess it still is my fault. The last one through locks it. Yeah, that's kind of me.
Corny, you're looking mighty fucking authoritative today. Is Andy here to present something? What's going on?
Yeah.
She is.
Okay, what?
You guys want to start with me?
Yeah, we can start with you.
Yeah. I'm passing out books.
Wait, can I get like a? A T L D R?
Oh, from last time?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, that's why I said T L D R, Alex.
You guys talk about that while I slip these into your pockets.
Can you get, can you yell, Alex?
Yeah, my bad.
Yeah, make sure everyone's yelling.
Wait, what are you doing?
Part of my presentation. You guys talk while I pass these out.
All right.
Home's unsilent, you know?
That is smart.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Uh, so what was the T L D R? I know what you guys passed something about a cabinet, so I'm hiring Andy to something, something.
Park some wreck. Yeah.
So essentially, uh, we gave the chief of staff a staff, uh, that manifests in the form of various secretaries that were in the process of interviewing for. Uh, the rules for them is the same as the rules for me, i.e. any felony equal fire.
In fairness, I think they prefer the term receptionist these days.
Right, reception, sorry. The receptionist of Park and Rec.
Huh. Sorry, what the fuck?
It's secretary. It's not, it's not that kind of secretary, Alan.
Fucking director.
Oh, you mean like a military secretary?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the badass kind of secretary.
I was wondering, I was like, you ain't allowed to say that anymore. Is you okay?
So they.
You can say what you want. These damn kids are changing everything.
These secretaries would, would be classified as government employees and would be permitted to sign in, uh, the same way that a council person signs in, uh, as we discussed. And that's pretty much, what else was passed last meeting?
Uh, we also.
Anti horny twats.
On Twitter.
Yeah, horny tax on Twitter.
Oh, right. Yeah.
Respectful posting.
Yeah, we, uh.
What does that mean?
Go ahead, Max.
Go ahead, Bucks.
Use examples, be vivid.
This fucking council of eight is wasting everyone's fucking money and time by passing stuff like the horny tax. Shut up. It took five minutes. Also, if anyone talks about their pussy or cock on Twitter, they get fined.
End of ban.
I think it's like, I think it's like, oh yeah, and a week ban that I will hand out personally.
Wow.
Yeah, it's good shit.
Yep.
Uh.
Uh, section 11 of the bill of privileges allows you to do that.
That's right.
Oh, goodbye, cancer.
Yeah, but, uh. And we supposed to let people like say what they want?
That is why I was the lone dissenting vote in this wet pussy legislation, uh, because I had to stand.
Wait, oh wait, hold on. I have a better idea. What if, uh, we just disabled Twitter for the first 30 minutes after the AU storm?
That's actually.
That would probably solve the entire problem.
That solves like the entire issue. Cause literally all it is, the first 20 minutes is like feeling really wet tonight, you know, just hanging out.
Yeah, my shit's dripping like a holika candle, shit like that.
Oh.
Pussy in bio.
Time for later.
Yeah, so I mean, hey, we can just do that and then we don't got to do like, we don't actually actually enforce it individually. We just cut the problem at the source. I mean, you just come around the AU storm and ban everyone from Twitter for the first like 30 minutes.
It's not wrong.
Well, no, we can't do that because, uh.
Isn't that worse restriction of freedom of speech?
Well, I, uh, here's the thing. We, we kind of need Twitter the first 30 minutes after the AU storm because, uh, you actually, your grandson is always putting people's license plates that are doing money runs immediately after the storm.
True. I think that's an important thing.
Yeah, yeah. Your grandson twats that shit out so other people can go rob him.
Not rob him. In for a penny, in for a pound, you know? I think, I think we just, you know, we can do a little censorship, might as well do a lot, right?
Well, okay. Look, I'm a big believer in freedom of speech. Uh, I'm not a big believer in freedom of saying dumb shit.
All right. I agree with that.
That's how I feel.
Look, we're not telling people that they can't do it. It's just that there is a fee to do it, right?
Basically.
So I wouldn't say we're restricting speech. You just got to pay for the privilege.
So you're saying that the city council, uh, endorses and profits from, uh, public smut? The state does.
The state does.
Okay, so does that make the state pornographers?
Yeah.
It's like a.
Kind of.
Kind of.
It's like a cum tax, basically.
Okay.
Talk about cum and wet pussies and stuff on Twitter all day, then yeah, you gotta, you get taxed for that. You still do it. You're not gonna go to jail.
Do a cum tax. You're like, no, I don't. Dom except state dom.
Who will be the cum lector, the?
That's a good question. We need like the.
The sperm bank.
The most celibate, celibate person possible.
Um.
Cornwood.
Glorion. Yeah, Glorion's a virgin.
Cornwood. Cornwood's a virgin.
He was married. He's got kids.
No, I ain't doing that shit, okay?
You, you, Corin, do you have kids?
I, I did and my damn wife took them.
Well, they still exist. They're still your kids, Cornwood.
Yeah, Cornwood. Don't, don't imply you've disowned your children.
No, they disowned me.
Bye, Murphy. Shade. Okay, thanks.
It's all right, please. There's alcohol.
Hey, Siobhan, pick up that notebook next to you on the floor. That's the one Andy handed up. Oh, but there is.
That's it? Something about sex and something about.
Uh, whistleblower protections.
Oh, yeah, that was a thing.
What?
Uh, basically, if you're a whistleblower and you want to do it in a safe manner, uh, go abroad.
Yeah, yeah, we should, uh, actually, we should go ahead and enact that whistleblower protection.
Well, I think that's what we're doing with T L D R is because he has to actually enact everything we, we passed.
Okay.
Because he wasn't here last week, remember?
Right, right. Think, uh.
Uh, Whistlemore Protections Act, okay?
Hello? Yeah, I know. What's up?
All right.
Let's see.
You go to if he's corrupt.
Who, who? The head of the civilian oversight board?
Yeah.
What do you mean if he's corrupt?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Exactly, right?
We got a.
Well, are we talking about the cum, the cum lector?
House after the council meeting, you can.
Who are we talking about?
Nah, nah, we're good.
No, we're talking, we're talking about the whistleblower protector.
Oh.
I'll call you when we're done and you can come to city hall and get it done. Yeah, no problem.
I can just go through the notes real quick and.
There we go. That, that'll probably work.
Hey, Alan.
Yeah.
Do you, uh, do you handle expungements at all or you let the judges do it?
Uh, I do when I'm asked.
Uh, I got a Giovanna Costello just called me about, uh, having a hard time finding a judge, not to say that they're inactive or whatever, but.
Yeah, she's been having a hell of a time.
I told her that after the meeting I'd call her if you wanted to help her out.
Yes, man.
Word.
Wonderful. Uh, actually, Crane, on the topic of what the question you asked about, like, what if I'm corrupt? I actually had a related question to that real quick. Is like, what do, what do I do if I want to put a bar complaint on somebody? Go to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, uh, I mean, was there anything else from last meeting?
P C P two point O.
Oh, we waited for you.
Yeah, we wanted.
Toe clamps and you part two.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, have a look. There's a little amendment and then the changes in red.
I think there was something else there that I wanted to bring up, but I'm, I'm looking over it right now.
Government vehicles are exempt from being booted or towed without police or EMS authorization within a reasonable time. Any booting of a government vehicle uh, will be deemed unlawful to use of the equipment. Oh, so you define government vehicle as PD or EMS, okay? Uh, illegal towing and illegal clamping. So we punish one court by 10 times the cost of Truvia. Okay. All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've become a real menace, Alan. They've been a real menace.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, you can see how we arrived at, at some sort of solution to this, right?
Yeah, I was a little concerned because I didn't want a government vehicle to then start, people start arguing because, um, just before I came in here, I had a conversation with Slacks that I need to talk to you guys about, which is on the same topic. So maybe you want to just piggyback off that and start the meeting or what do you guys think?
Um, well, question, what do we, so what do we charge people with? Police officers? If, if somebody comes and clamps our car or toes it?
Criminal misuse of a.
Criminal misuse of a clamp. Yeah, that's the thing.
It's a thousand dollar fine, baby.
Okay.
Um, anybody have an objection to me just relaying what I talked to Slacks about and bring up the topic now?
Sure, go ahead.
No objections.
All right, um, so Slacks brought to me something that I, uh, you know, I plan to address with Murphy, but also, um, just with you guys. He noted to me that he's been having some problems with Kyle Fred, you know, big shocker. Um, but outside of the usual petty PD and lawyer stuff, uh, one that struck me was very interesting. Is he said that Kyle Fred basically pulls in his tow truck and just parks it in the upper police parking lot. Uh, and he wanted to know, uh, was Kyle allowed to do that? Because Kyle apparently argued that his vehicle was a government vehicle. Because there was legislation we passed that says when you're a lawyer on, in PD, on duty, you count as a government employee. Now, I know we passed that for the purposes of like attempted murder of a government employee or kidnapping or, uh, you know, uh, the issues with like the notebooks and making those private and everything, right?
But he's not, he's not in M R P D though, when he's doing that.
Yeah, but he's claiming that like, he's claiming that he's on the grounds and, you know, there's the whole argument. And so, uh, he then brought up, you know, was Kyle allowed to park in that upper lot at all? And I said, no, you know, he's trespassing. He says, oh, but he's a, you know, government employee. So then, you know, uh, so I think we probably need to either make it clarification to that legislation or just issue a directive to an individual about this because it seems like they're itching for some kind of, uh, ultimate decision maker authority on this shit.
I mean, uh.
Yeah, I've heard about this already too. Um, and it's come up from both sides, from Kyle Pred's side and from the PD's side to me and, uh, yeah, it's like gone to court, like all of his toe shenanigans multiple times. Uh, and, uh, we, like the, the toe clamps thing was born out of one of his, uh, court cases, actually, I think, right?
Yep.
So, yeah, that's interesting.
Does I, because I mean, at that point, it's like, does that mean any lawyer shows a term where he, M R P D gets to park their car in the upper lot there? Which is why I said I was grateful that, you know, when government vehicle or government employee was defined in the one you guys did where it says P D E M S.
Rut row.
That's awkward.
Well, yeah. I'll take rut row over the moaning. Um, yeah, every court case, every single time a PD alert went off, there were like, you know, a cacophony of, of recently pubescent men making moaning noises.
I didn't realize Rami was in there. Sounds wonderful.
Cornwood, they're dying. Also, hey, Cornwood, did you leave your truck on Elysian Fields Freeway?
No, that was, um, Mateo Radic was driving a Cora Cora about two hours ago. He, he asked for approval. So maybe this was like an hour ago. Is that when that happened?
Bro, this shit was just there.
Thirty, forty minutes ago, still there. The car's still there.
Sorry, this is off topic. It's off topic.
Yeah, I, I anticipate that Kyle Pred will continue to provide us with opportunities to tidy up laws and legislations. Uh, specifically, I guess, with toe related matters.
Holy shit. Um. Okay.
Oh, my God.
Uh, that's six?
Hey, you're a councilman right now, Cornwood. We've got the best medical technology in the world, okay?
Okay, 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 okay.
I know it's tough. Somebody even say that those bullets don't even matter.
Ah, yo.
Also, Cornwood, ain't you here on, uh, government time?
I mean, technically I'm signed in.
He can't cope without his M D T.
Why don't you sign out and sign in as a council member for the meetings?
As I'm always on duty.
Well, no, you're not when you're here, right?
What if some shit happens?
You're a civilian with a weapon.
Okay, I can go sign out.
Thank you.
Okay. Cause I'm gonna get the door for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
God damn it.
That's eight.
Not going good today.
Nope. Can't be easy. Never was easy.
Yeah, that's a interesting timing.
Well, I'm glad I cleared about that.
Yo, where's the freaking deputy mayor? You said he was sick?
Yeah, something like COVID or something.
Yep.
Hmm, okay.
COVID like something like that.
Hmm, okay. Okay, okay.
Um, so yeah, I, uh, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page there because you know Kyle is, uh, he's, he's a good talker and he'll get people to just kind of give him a smile and nod and move him along. And then he'll use that as like evidence that they agreed with him and told him he was right about it. So I don't want any of us getting cited to as like some input that told him he was allowed to do that shit because that is not what I put my name to paper for.
No, I actually told them specifically he could not do that.
Yeah, well, uh, you're gonna have to talk with him because apparently, um, and then maybe this is, you know, third party, something got confused. Uh, but Slacks, uh, claims that he was told that, you know, uh, you were of the opinion that Kyle was allowed to do that.
No, no, I talked to Slacks and I initially was from what Kyle was telling me where it was and Slacks sent me the picture and I'm like, no, no, I was on board with Slacks. What was Slacks like? So, no, I changed my mind about it after talking to Slacks when he sent me how it was parked. So obviously I was being told, you know, in from secondhand information that I wasn't able to see. So. Yeah, absolutely. And I called Kyle afterwards to tell him that, no, don't, don't do that. Why don't you just park in the back?
Yeah.
The back sucks, guys. Let's be real.
Well, okay, but i- if the back sucks, what's the difference between just parking in one of the spots in the front and parking in the, in the blacktop?
You talking about like in front of the building?
Yeah.
Uh, tow truck stick. Tow truck sticks out really far.
Oh.
Like blocks traffic. Uh, honestly, um, I, I'm thinking like, kind of like outside the box on this. Um, I feel like this is like a.
Nevermind.
I'm worried that the L S P D is targeting easy crime? Does that make sense?
Mm hmm.
I feel like this is another symptom of that. Like, for example, Bobby Charles, you know, you'll get 10 cops responding to Bobby Charles because they feel like they can actually handle that situation. Now you're probably going to get 10 or 11 responding to Kyle Pred parking his tow truck in that parking spot because they can actually handle that situation. And, uh.
We did discuss that last week.
If they, if they need this victory that bad, and I mean, honestly, I agree. I don't, I don't think you should be doing it there, especially if it's blocking like an actual parking spot.
All I'm gonna say is right now, uh, I am and never will be and never have been in favor of giving people like what I consider like makeup calls. Like some wrong has been done to them. So now I'm going to alter my opinion to make it all better. Nana boo boo. I ain't about that shit. So, uh, if there's some insinuation that, you know, we're going to give them one for the sake, giving them one, I want no part of it. I just, I, I, I need to make sure that I'm on the same page as you guys because when we sign this legislation about, uh, declaring lawyers, government employees and are on duty and on premises, it certainly was not for, in my opinion, them to get into a pissing match where they can park with the PD. That to me is just stupid.
No, I agree. I agree.
Like, there, that to me is just boundary pushing for the sake of boundary pushing, uh, and I think is juvenile. So, I'm gonna nip in the bud. I'll tell Slacks that is not the intent of that definition. He is not a government employee, meaning he is exempt, can park where he wants, blah, blah, blah. Just treat it like you would anything else and they can sort it out. They're fucking adults.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
All right.
Um, we can move on.
I got a proposal also.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so in the, uh, reports there, uh, there's a judicial compensation program that I've written up. I kept this one very brief. Um, I know I spoke to, uh, Max and Siobhan about it a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and just floated the, the conversation that I'd had and relayed the concern. Um, problem is, is that multiple judges have come to me expressing that they, uh, do not feel like they're, you know, able to like sustain, uh, a normal sort of cost of living. Um, the truth is with a lot of these people is that, and as Murphy can, you know, well attest to, for people who spend a lot of time in the city, uh, there's not a lot to fill with as a judge, uh, in between cases. And so, you know, it's very hard to keep people around. Um, so I end up with a lot of part timers, which is, which is fine. I accept that. Um, but there's an issue right now where, uh, well, they're, they're just not getting paid enough. So instead of, uh, sort of like agreeing with a pay raise just for the sake of them being on duty, I think it's more prudent and responsible to make it on a per case basis. Because judges don't create, uh, docket cases or bench trials, they respond to them. So if, if they're responding, that means they're participating and they're actively trying to, you know, provide themselves as, as a help to the city. So I think that, um, you know, we just keep track of that using the official channels that already exist. Uh, I will assemble like a monthly ledger or a record keeping or accounting, whatever term you want to use at the end of each month, um, to the treasurer, who then makes a disbarment since based on those records. Uh, and so this way also it makes sure the documentation is public to everyone because, uh, anybody in interfaction or in the, you know, court case announcements can see what judges are taking what cases. And that would be my proposal.
Uh, I have a proposal in regards to this. What, what if in order to qualify for this 10K bench, 20K docket thing, um, they had to clock at least, uh, 21 hours a week in the city? I, three, uh, three hours, three hours, three hours a day.
They, they don't have a lot to do between these cases.
I don't give a fuck. They can go outside and talk to people.
There, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, that's gonna disqualify a lot of my better judges.
Unfortunate. I don't know. What about, so what, 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 oh, let's do it this way. Let's, let's.
Commenting on that, but that's, that's a lot.
Well, okay. I, I know. Twenty one hours out of a week is a lot. It's, it, what if we do, what if we do, uh, 14 hours? That's two hours a day.
All right, what if we don't focus on time? What if it's more of a quota thing where it's a qualify for that? You gotta do X amount, you know, in, in whatever the time period is. That, that seems more productive.
I like that. I like that.
Trials and docket.
I, I like that. Um, okay. I mean, if 14 hours a week is too much, we could, we could go all the way down to one hour a day in the city. Seven hours a week. You think they can swing that?
I feel like if you're a judge, am I wrong? I'm not trying to put too much work on somebody, but I feel like it ain't hard to exist seven hours a week.
It's, I mean, I can tell you.
But they're bored, Cornwood. Cornwood, they're bored. There's nothing for them to do. Cornwood, they just.
I found plenty of shit to do.
Yeah, I mean, hell, that's, that's not even a full day of Judge Murphy Braun. He, he was fine. He always had shit.
I mean, I wouldn't say I was fine, Cornwood. A lot of things happened, but.
Something did happen.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um.
I think the boring people are bored.
I don't, I don't think, uh, that a seven hour, uh, requirement is unachievable or bad or whatever, right? Um, hell, I'm barely around and I probably hit seven hours easily.
Mm hmm.
But what I will say though, is that I think that, um, I think that, uh, it is very difficult for me to measure, uh, the contributions that I get from judges based on their time spent in the city.
Yeah.
Um, there are a number. Well, I will say there are a number of resources, people that are hired as judges, uh, who I've only ever seen the city once or twice, right? And those people are, you know, invaluable because maybe they, you know, have experience or whatever, you know, that is necessary. I'm not asking you to reward them for not being around. What I'm asking you to do is to reward the people who are the docket clearers, right? The people who are actually, you know, doing the job and getting the work done.
Who, who are the doc, who, who are the docket clearers right now? Uh, Anastasia, right? Anastasia's one of them.
Um, yeah, I mean, there's a core group, right? It's, it thankfully, it's not like it was where it's one or two people anymore. Thankfully, we have a good balance of people who, you know, are all chipping in, you know, in the ways they can. Uh, so right now there's, I would say there's probably even four to six people who are, you know, kind of dock clearers as opposed to the old school was like one to three.
Uh, okay.
I, 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 I just, I just want to reward those people who, you know, um, are putting in the effort to get the docket out there, get bench trials taken, things like that. That's what I want to incentivize because, uh, that has worked traditionally in the past very well.
Yeah.
Um, it has, it has contributed towards, um, a period where we were actually clearing a very high percentage of bench trial requests. The only time infamously ever under addressed was like AU hours, but that's self explanatory. Um, but yeah, I, I think that, uh, I think it's a good system. I think it works.
Uh, I, I, let me clarify before I go on. Uh, I think the system's great. Uh, I do have a question though. Um, why do they need this money if they're not in Los Santos frequently?
No, I'm, I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying, I'm saying the ones that are, are the ones that are taking cases and they're the ones will be rewarded.
So, I mean, I, the, so the docket clearers are frequently in Los Santos, not doing judge work is what you're saying. Uh, which is fine. I, I mean, they're.
For what obligations they have outside of the city. I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would just say, if they're here anyway, then that's seven hours a week is a protection against other people coming in and vulturing all their shit, the ones who are already coming in and.
Cause they're doing cases, so the survivors should be hit.
If vulturing, if the definition of vulturing is taking bench trials or docket cases, in order to make the vulturing worth it, you'd have to put in more than the seven hours a week anyway. It's like a nonsensical comparison because one bench trial, I asked me this, the reason I incentivized at the rates I did was because I, I estimated roughly two hours for a bench trial and that's if you're, you know, if you're goddable by the horns, you know, but, um, you know, in the docket cases, I estimated up to four hours because that's like where I would consider it to be getting, you know, jumping the shark territory. Uh, and so, uh, you know, you break those down and then you get a per hour rate of, you know, five K incentivization an hour. What I'm saying is I don't think that there's a risk of this being abused because to, to make any money doing it, you'd have to be one of the workhorses anyway. I just, I think it's common sense.
Yeah, and my concern with this, speaking from a, a fiscal point as well, uh, state, state account wise, uh, even if this were 25K per bench and 50K per docket, that still would not be a significant hit to the state account. Uh, I'm, uh, I will say for the record that I am for this idea. I think it's a good idea.
I share your concern real quick.
Oh, sure. Go ahead. Sorry.
Um, so my concern with this is, uh, some of the issues in terms of judge activity are kind of contrary to this, and this would sort of like exacerbate the issue, which is more so that judges are around only for bench trials and only for docket cases. Meanwhile, I get four or five calls every day I'm in the city about judge stuff and I'm like, oh, there's none around, sorry. And I'm not one anymore either. So, there's like expungements and other type stuff that, you know, still needs to be available on a regular basis. So that, that'd be my concern is kind of encouraging the same kind of activity that is going on and rewarding it while other areas still suffer.
So in the past, we had to do.
I wanna say something because you're kind of blowing the surprise here, right? But, uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up next after this, I didn't think it would become relevant to this, but uh, the next thing I want to bring up is the concept of running an election for one elected judge position.
Ooh.
Uh, my, my experience in the past was that I myself was elected. Um, and I think there are diamonds in the rough and are people who should just be given a shot at something. Uh, and you know, if they fuck up and they really fuck up bad, I'll fire the shit out of them. I don't care. You know, no skin on my back. Um, but you know, if they put their nose down and they learn and you know, they're passionate about it, you'll probably end up with someone in the early stages of their career, uh, like myself who, you know, was around every day for 18 hours a day. And so I think you probably will get more, um, civic participation like Murphy's talking about with licenses and expungements and things. Uh, and then they're gonna sit back and learn all the other stuff from us. So that would be, I would suggest would help with that concept of judges not being around in the city.
Sounds like a phenomenal idea.
Huge fun.
I love it.
Uh, you know, in conjunction, I think that would also help alleviate concerns about, uh, you know, it's disincentivizing, uh, community participation, all that. Cause I think we'd have that at least, uh, you know, more covered in terms of hiring those people. And, uh, we, in the past, we did a system of four judges elected and then we would keep two of them at the end of the period, uh, basically like on average, I think. Um, and they would either be asked to become full judges or just, you know, they could run for another term or, you know, anything in between. That's something we can discuss in the future. For now, I just wanted to give it a shot with like one person at a time, you know?
It's easier to train one person to at a time.
Uh, so do we want to vote on, any, any other questions about the, uh, the money one first?
No.
Actually, I do actually have a question about that. So, uh, this might curtail this stuff later tonight. So, can we hold off on that until some other stuff is talked about later?
Okay.
Yeah.
Go, me.
Um, I was gonna bring up rather than hours, what if we were, okay, you remember when the pass to qualify for it? You had to have a court announcement that open court hours were, you know, essentially happening, there was a judge available. What if we brought that back?
Oh, uh.
Cause I think that's, that, that kills two birds with one stone with that.
Yeah, hold the open court.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how would we incentiv, I guess you would consider anything an open court or bench trial?
Yeah, or a small claims action, et cetera.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, sure, that makes sense.
I think that, that, that way you have people who are showing that they are available and, um.
Hey, you just do some like two, two hour periods a week.
Exactly, exactly.
Open court.
Yep. And then they just have to provide those, uh, you know, copy of those announcements to you for their documentation or whatever.
Yeah, no, we can talk about that. Um, cool. And then, um, I'm, you know, open to your guys' input about the, uh, judicial elections, how many you think we should elect, you know, that kind of thing. Um, but I'm just looking for, you know, your thoughts on just at least doing one for now.
I think two would be right, right in there.
And two.
Two, two elected judges?
I think if you target timeframes, it's probably the better for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we can't target timeframes.
Can't really, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, technically you can.
Yeah, you could have them run for like AU.
An AU, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
What can we like lock the votes per time zone? It, it like exactly, it adds. Yeah, yeah.
That is an interesting concept, though.
I mean, PD does it, right? They hire me sometimes.
Yeah, we, we have three.
Just have shift on their application.
Yeah, why not?
You have a shift one, two and three judge?
Yeah, shift one, two and three judge. All right.
Who's the shift three judge right now?
Good luck.
Whoever's awake. Do you Jenny?
Uh, it's too much to talk about. Um, the, so essentially what would happen, and this is me middle grounding myself, um, you know, Damian Tankerman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so he became a lawyer. He requested to be a lawyer. I said, I'll give you a shot, right? He's one of the, like a diversity hire, just threw him a bar, said, go for it, fuck it.
He's been good.
And then he's now, uh, has like a full on thing. He's given me like his application or proposal to be a mayor and all this. Or not a mayor, uh, judge, sorry. Um, and a lot of his thing is about, you know, shift three and there's not judges around and all that. Uh, the problem is, is that there also aren't really lawyers either. And so traditionally what has occurred in the past is we take the person who's the most active shift three lawyer. Uh, we make them a judge and then there's no lawyers. And, uh, that's, that's probably would be the case right now because we lost Ledson. He's a doctor. God damn you, Cantor.
I'm so sorry.
Uh, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's hard to find people in those hours. So, uh, I don't know. I, 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 I'm, I'm saying I'm for the elections, want to need shift. But I also recognize the shift three is never gonna be solved by any problem we, every program we put in. So it's just not even worth uh, caring about, I guess. We just gotta pre, you know, proceed forward.
I, I do think one thing to keep in mind is like the, the idea that hey, you're really good at this job. So we can't have you be a part of that other job that you actually want is, is a pretty damn bad feeling. So, I mean, I, I know, I know it kind of puts, puts the whole thing in a bind. Like you said, now you're most active lawyer, ain't lawyering. But I'm sure that if, if people knew about it and they knew they had the opportunity, I'm sure you'd be able to find somebody else to be as active as lawyer as Damian is.
Well, and the, and the other problem is I don't, uh, i- if I, I don't, I don't know that, uh, I, I just, I don't, I don't know that he's competent.
Well, I think that's fair, let's legit admit.
So let me, um.
And I don't mean that in like a derogatory way. I just mean, I genuinely don't have enough feedback on the gentleman uh, that convinces me that he's even close to ready for it. So I, you know?
I think he has a lot of really good common sense and he has really, uh, he has a really good way of articulating logical arguments. Um, I do think he would be competent in the role, but I do also believe that he needs a lot of training. He won't be ready to go from the get-go. You know what I mean? Um.
Yeah, and who's gonna train him in shift three?
I think he can be trained in other shifts, but that will.
Why don't we do it? Oh shit.
Oh.
Me no. We can get him a judge crash course. Why not?
Great. My suggestion is go look at like all the bench trial requests and see how many are actively occurring during shift three to even see if it's needed.
Uh, it's needed.
Yeah, I think there's, that, that's a kind of a catch 22 situation. A lot of people stopped requesting bench trials because there weren't judges around.
They, they're still, they, they requested constantly shift three. Cause I, I wake up in the morning, I'll look and I'll see that there were like two or three missed or one missed and it's like, you know, so is, you know, straight, I'm, I'm fast asleep.
That's right. Damian told me he had 11 missed bench child requests in a row. Like over the course of a few days.
And that's also just, that's also a self fulfilling prophecy, right?
It is.
So.
Yeah. That is one reason I want to have more judge presence in the city because when there's judges awake in the city and they get calls about bench trials, they tend to happen whereas you know, you can, you can kind of leave them on red. I'm sorry if, if you don't feel like it, if you're just not even in the city. It tends to happen sometime.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know too much about it. But if you're, if you're willing to have them train somebody who's, who's ready and willing to learn, maybe, maybe come up with some guidelines and just give them, give them like a trial period.
Well, no, we already have, I mean, there's, there's guidelines. It's, it should be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have guidelines. The, the past system had a whole documented breakdown of roles and responsibilities, what judges could do what.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't want to impart that whole system, um, but at least for the elected judges, we could probably just use the, that portion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could go down a huge rabbit hole trying to teach someone everything. I think that they should, everyone should be responsible for some of that themselves.
Yeah, there also should be a, um, and we'll get to that. Um, but yeah, just the thing I'm kicking around, um, if you guys think, uh, you, you come up with any more like comments or ideas on it, let me know. Okay?
Alright.
Alright, appreciate it.
Uh, I, I want to go back, um, cause, cause we were already on like one, one, you know, direction before, uh, before we move on to more things this week. I don't think we talked about the rider protection check legislation that we passed for you to look at Judge Crane.
Oh, yeah.
Also, this one will be, uh, Cognson Andy is in the back waiting to.
Oh, yeah.
Present something. So I don't want to take all of our time.
Ideas for other stuff.
Oh.
Did you say the, uh, whistleblower protection?
No, he's saying the helmet one.
Helmet one, yeah, the right protection check.
Yeah, we should talk about the whistleblower too, I guess. I think that was Shabans.
Oh wait, what?
The, the whistleblower? That was your thing?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I did come up with one, uh, note for this one actually, which is like, like a Sal Rosenberg provision. You know, if you have a medical reason, you can't wear a helmet, you're fine.
Oh yeah, we have that in the, uh, the Drip Act as well. That's probably smart. Yeah.
That's, uh.
Yeah, can we do something about the name?
Well, it's to protect the riders of cabinless vehicles.
Alright.
I mean, do, do you, do you have an idea for a different name?
And we'll go with it. Uh, alright, so what's up? We have that one. EMS request, what's that?
Oh no, the other one was the.
That was just, uh, Max wrote it all down to talk to, uh, John City about the possibilities, nothing that you had to put into effect.
Dogtown suggested changes.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah, that's what we talked about the radios.
Oh, that was a big, big.
The radios, yeah.
So what happened?
Oh yeah, the whole radio ordeal. So. Um.
Okay, I see. You guys set up.
What needs to happen? Yeah.
I got it. Okay, cool. Alright, I'm just reading and then, uh, tenants rights?
That's just like a work in progress. Nothing's been done with that. Yeah. Yeah, it, it was just brought up and if anyone wants to work on it, just not sure. We talked about that in early in, um, term one about the possibility for that. Uh, just sort of, um, brainstorming right now, not, not, nothing's really written there. There's one sentence.
God, I just realized how OCD I was gonna get about the tags not being used and why they exist.
I'm sorry. I'll go tag it. I'll go tag.
I'm doing it all right now. Trust me.
I take one. I got you.
Alright, I'm, I'm busy, uh, next.
Oh, let's see.
Whistleblowers get voted on?
It did.
They did. I don't know what happened to the vote section. It's kind of annoying.
Alright, I saw, put that as approved?
Uh, it was, yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
Uh, I don't think you guys voted on it. I think you said that they were going to flush it out more.
Oh, you know what? You know what? We all brought it up. I think people liked it. It was general approval, but we said we wanted to brainstorm the process to place the whistleblowing complaint.
Work in progress.
Yeah, work in progress. Yep, yep, yep. Cause we wanted to define that further.
About wanting an outline path, uh, for how it will be handled. Okay.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No one was against it.
Kind of wanted you here.
Y'all, y'all want to do that now? I'm, I'm up to do it now. Y'all are.
We can.
Sounds good.
Alright, um, I guess Murphy, this is your, it's gonna, it would be underneath you. What, do you have an idea of how you want this to start?
Okay, so, um, I mean, obviously a lot of different communications are gonna kind of funnel towards me, you know, whether it's bar complaints or uh, civilian oversight related things and, and now this. So I just want to make sure that especially with this, that it's, uh, you know, it's very clear the delineation between these things because a whistleblower has to be treated with a special amount of care because obviously, you know, it's all, it's all here in the legislation. Like, these people are putting themselves at great risk and, uh, you know, need to remain anonymous. So like, I don't want like random clerks getting these complaints by mistake. Uh, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So that, that'd be my primary concern. Um, but obviously anybody who's looking to blow the whistle is gonna be aware of the whistleblower act. Or we, we can assume they will be. So I think it'll be very clear how it works in the event.
Do you want their complaint to like specifically cite that this is like whistleblowing so that it is like clear, like they just need to like clearly state that the nature of their complaint should is. Do you want their complaint to like specifically cite that this is like whistleblowing so that it is like clear, like they just need to like clearly state that the nature of their complaint should is whistleblowing, so and they're seeking the safeguards, the anonymity, rather than another form of complaint?
I don't think that I need to benefit from anything further in the legislation. I do think that the whistleblower would benefit greatly from a more. Thorough definition on what qualifies as whistleblowing, you know, like the, the, the level or severity of the occasion. Um, I think it should be like clear, uh, so it's like not like excessively minor things. You know, I'm blowing the whistle on my coworker for stealing my lunch for two weeks, et cetera. So like when we're talking about whistleblowing, we're talking about like, uh.
It specifically says like wrongdoing of like government entities or.
My, my superior, my superior within this department is like literally stealing hundreds of thousands of dollars, et cetera, you know, like it's, it's like. Something of that scale where you, you can't speak up internally because of retaliation, you know, because it's someone who has leverage over you or is above, above you. Essentially.
Right. So. What do you want the first step to be?
Um.
Just like I said, you need to go and talk to you? Like, is that, is that where you wanted to start?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, pretty much like. And then from there, like, you know, in terms of protecting the person. It would have to, I, I think it would have to be discussed between me and Crane and then Crane would have to sign off on their continued anonymity through whatever process is. You know, endured from there. Does that, does that make sense to you, Crane? Like, I'm just spitballing.
Yeah, uh, it's pretty much, I think it's gotta be me, um.
So I come to you with an actionable request and then, you know, if it goes to court, they continue to be anonymous through that process and it goes to the highest court.
Yep.
Alright, there, I mean, that's pretty much what I have. Make sure the definition is clear for the public.
Oh, motherfucker. Can you go? Sorry, I just, I forgot my other idea that just came to me. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just like make it clear to the person who's gonna be making these complaints, like what the. What, you know, what, what whistleblowing really is like all about and then, yeah, just making sure that the process from me. To you, to make sure that, you know, exceptions are made in terms of how court usually works to protect their identities and so on. Um, yeah, the escalation process sounds pretty.
If that does occur, do you want to form a committee, define who that committee is, who to investigate it, how to investigate it, what the repercussions are, the timeframe, would that should occur? And maybe a civilian oversight board on top of it? Kinda just figuratively thinking of steps.
Um, I don't think it needs to be like super duper complicated. It could either be from amongst the civilian oversight or, uh, it could just go to Crane and a selection of appeals panelists as per. Secondary appeals, uh, if that's easier. I, I don't know which one is more just. I defer to Crane.
I mean, it's got your name on it, right? Isn't the Murphy whistleblower thing or?
Well, I would, I would defer, like, in terms of which option is more just, I would defer to Crane because. I'm not sure that this would fall in the purview of civilian oversight because this is more about. Government whistleblowers, where civilians more directed towards government from civilians. Uh, yeah, I mean, what if, what if we have a police officer who, who. You have the, the police continuity plan. Police officer goes to the mayor about something. But then now they're being reprimanded for something they said to the mayor or the chief of staff. You know? So. They are going to their superior based on what the police continuity plan says, but then if like a. Captain, sergeant, whatever the hell else now reprimands you for it. Where they feel a certain type of way, they start mistreating you just because you had concerns about something, then went to the mayor or the chief of staff about it. That's a problem. So Cornwood, let me ask you, do, do you think, cause you're, you're in the police department, do, do you think that it's better if, uh. If, if these, if these things, like if they go to court are dealt with by people on the civilian oversight board? Do you think that that's better than like if it were council members?
Ah.
Cause the thing is like, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even trying to, I'm not even trying to. I'm not even trying to like throw shade your way, but like, you're a member of law enforcement, you know? You're elected to this position from amongst the rank and file. So if you're on an appeals panel type situation about a whistleblowing situation, you could in theory then communicate. To your lieutenant, oh, hey, you know, some, some motherfuckers out to get you.
Right. I, I don't think, I don't think that's, uh.
I don't think that like Cornwood's gonna do that. I'm just saying, you know? I'm just trying to like, what if, you know? You're essentially future-proofing the, the position, the, the. Who should be on the whistleblower thing, yeah.
Can I, uh, can I make the recommendation with it? Cause it doesn't seem like y'all have like a solid recommendation of how to deal with this? Maybe meet the two of y'all, come up with something, put it in writing and discuss it? Is it very much like actually throw shit at the wall and see what sticks?
Well, I feel like we're, we're almost right there with having this thing sent. We've already talked about it for two weeks. I mean, I think we just, we hashed it out right here now. Yeah, but it's so close, right? I mean. We don't wanna overcook it either, right?
Yeah, pad the paper, that's it.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's fine, like workflow wise, like people come to me, I go to Crane, Crane decides. You know, court-wise, how, how it stacks up from there, um, panel, no panel, like.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, cause I need to sit down and think about. Uh, with like whistleblowing, government corruption. Uh. Yeah. I'll come up with something, but I think, uh, I think, I think it will probably need to be, um, amorphous. It will probably need to be dynamic, so we'll probably need. Uh, the liberty to assemble panels based on what the corruption alleged is, for example. Uh, if it was anyone outside of the judiciary, uh, or like a lawyer, I guess I'd say, um, I would assemble probably a panel of judges. But if it's a judge or, you know, uh, you know, city council member or somebody from the civic side, then, you know? How does that get adjudicated? So I think we'd probably need to be a little more dynamic and things like that.
So.
Little fluid, that, yeah, makes.
Yeah.
And we could always put something together and, and adjust it, right? Not just for this, but for anything.
Well, I think you just use a generic phrasing of enables, uh. The chief justice to assemble a panel. Doesn't have, it doesn't have to state whether it's a panel of judges, a panel of city council members, just a panel based on the situation.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it.
And that way I avoid any kind of interruption or suggestion of bias or interference.
Yeah, easy.
Yeah.
Well, that's the solution.
Yeah, it's like.
Cause then, because you know, in any large, high-profile corruption scandal, there will always be allegations of impropriety both ways. So the only way to prevent those is just have me assemble the panel based on the situation and then that'll drown out those issues.
Perfect. Alright.
Crane, if you are good with that, then I am, I'm good with the way that sounds, just like in general.
Yeah, if, if, if I'm brought a viable case of corruption, I will assemble a panel to deal with it. Which is honestly what would have happened anyway, so, you know, good to write it down, I guess.
There we go.
Yeah. It's also about protecting those, uh, government markers from retaliation throughout the process.
Speaking of which, the idea that I was briefly reminded of when Murphy was talking. Uh, oh, do we need to vote on that or Murphy's thing? What, what are we doing?
Well, I guess, did we vote? Oh, no, we didn't vote on it.
I don't think we voted, but I don't think anyone had concerns.
I think it's ready, if we wanna just present it for a vote right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can vote for it, yeah. I say yes.
Yeah, as discussed, I'm ready to vote.
Any names?
Not for my son.
There we go.
Mr. Mayor.
And is this, uh?
Max? Oh, boy.
Max! While he's, while he's mulling it over, uh, is this active immediately?
He's just on the dark side of the moon.
Oh, no.
Max. Is, is this, is this active immediately? Any, any sort of legislation that we pass, is it, is it enacted as soon as we okay it and you say it's good to go?
Uh, I, so the, the typical format, Cornwood, if you check the city council documents right now.
I'm not asleep.
Okay, your vote was us.
Y'all, y'all, he's just thinking about it, okay?
Hey, deeply meditating.
I understand.
What are we voting on?
The whistleblower thing. It was all guesses so far, you and I?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect, there you go.
That was yay on that last time.
Do we wanna, uh, let Andy go next?
Yeah.
Oh, it's probably for the best. Yeah, yeah, you ready, Andy? Y'all, right? Everybody got their notebooks?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Open them up if you feel like reading the lovely bullet points. I'm sorry, it's not more bullet points and I know people don't like reading in this state. Okay, so pretty much, Sharks, I am coming to you for $250,000 grand prize for my week-long survival event. It is Legends versus Locals, which means. Eight returning All-Stars will compete against eight new local players. I've been working on it for about two months now. I'm probably still a couple of weeks out, however, um, I. Wasn't aware that TJ was the treasurer until recently, so I was unsure how quickly the prize money would make it into the account and make sure it was ready for the day of. Now that it's TJ, I feel a little bit more secure. Um, this event is easily, if I'm going to get rid of being humble, probably one of the best that occurs here. As far as the likability, as far as the repeatability, um, and as far as the massive amount of work effort that I put into it. I cannot explain how many hundreds of countless hours I put into this. I love doing it and people have a great time playing it. Um, that being said, if you want the actual numbers, 92 people have auditioned over the course of two seasons. I didn't do any auditions for season one. Uh, a total of 67 contestants have played in the past three seasons. We'll add 16 more to that this season. Um, 64 challenges have been created by me, um, and played out after this season takes place, which is a ton of running of ideas, but I will get through it. Um, again, they take months for me to plan. Um, we've given away $16 million through this, but 5 million of those were donated back to me because I loved it so much, begging for another season. Um, it is so well-attended that for, not only for every tribal council, do I have to make seating for the audience, I also have to provide seating for every single challenge. People filter in and out to just watch this event every single time it happens. So we have people coming, yeah. We have people coming in and out every single day just to watch challenges, to sip the tea. We have people live tweeting all the way through it. It's always such a good, a good fucking time. I would say easily, um, over 100 people probably filter in and out through the week.
Oh, yeah.
I can confirm I was the OG live tweeter of season one.
Oh, there you go. That's true, you absolutely were. Um, if you wanna know anything about the history, this. This event happened because Sis fucking abandoned me. Well, I was second in command of the HOA and I wanted a way to trick the boys into doing their fucking chores for the gang, so I made them into games and we played survival instead.
Oh shit. Wait, gang?
Yeah, I used to be in a gang, Cornwood. For like.
Criminal mayor, Andy Jones.
God, that's me.
Wait, what?
The OG criminal mayor.
Yo. Have we ever had a mayor that wasn't in the gang?
Oh.
No.
Emma Gang, Emma Gang, well, I guess Doctor.
Emma.
I think Emma's probably the only one I could say. She was just a doctor.
I don't think, uh, shit, who was the ex-cop?
Emma got accused of being in Changang.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
That's hilarious.
Oh, I remember. I mean, I barely.
I mean, she never came back to be in a doctor after, so for all I know, maybe. Bunny wasn't, Max wasn't. Oh, I, I think Hardcastle was in the bunny gang, so, you know.
Yeah, Hardcastle was in the spending millions of dollars on my wife gang.
He, he was in his own little thing there.
Hey, I profited very heavily for all of Hardcastle.
Let me rephrase that, embezzling millions of dollars for my wife gang.
Thank you. Oh, true. The embezzle wagons that we never asked for. I'll teach you afterwards. I'll send you the thing I use. I just copy.
Hey, 1.5 million dollars for a truck? That was, uh, I like that one.
Yeah.
My business did very well.
Benson's back alley bullshit.
Excuse me, we provided a unique service.
Shut your goddamn mouth.
True though.
Fucking nice, I'll boost it, cars are us.
Uh, shh, never happens, never happens.
Yeah, I love it, Andy. Uh, you know, I have a very high opinion on event funding. It's like something I'm very excited about. Rewarding people, giving people stuff to do that's fun and unique and exciting. And allows people to come together and meet each other and actually talk to each other.
Yes, which is the biggest feedback that I value from former players is that they enjoy that they made connections with people that they feel like they otherwise probably wouldn't have met. I mean, I had Bones and Luciano playing in my event a couple of weeks ago and they were saying, let's settle this shit from five years ago on survival. It's fantastic. I love it. And, um, as far as why I'm asking for 300,000, I know I said 250,000, cause I have been going back and forth on how much to ask. Um, I have made some calls around to see how much the average civilian worker could make in a week if they were really grinding their ass off. The standard seems to be about 100,000 to 200,000, depending on how hard they go. So I feel like I need to incentivize people to take a break from that grind to, you know, make that money in a fun way, because otherwise they're gonna say, oh, I could go make more than that by sitting in my sanitation truck, which by all fucking means, please do. But I don't think it's enough to break the economy. Yes, it could help towards buying a car, house, a really, really cheap house on the south side, the entire amount, but. If they're going for something bigger like Crazy Fast Cargo Burtuner Car, it's not gonna cover the entire thing.
Alright, be honest. How much are you underselling your number by?
She's underselling that number so hard, Andy. That's not enough money.
Oh, oh, I mean, I will take anything. I just never want to ask too much to the state account.
How much, okay, what, what number would you actually propose if you weren't worried about fiscal responsibility?
I would ask for. If I wasn't worried about fiscal responsibility, like I full-on turn on, turn off Andy Jones, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I would ask for half a million to give away. I would ask for an additional like 200,000 to give for a rerun of this season with a different cast. Who will make less, but will still have a great time. Cause people are already asking if.
So you're gonna, you're gonna do it like a back-to-back?
Pretty much.
And you want, and is, how many weeks is each one?
Um, they are five days. I have cut down the number from like 22 to 16 contestants, because I used to be like having them pull 10 hours a day, which everybody happily stayed around for. Um, but I'm trying to cut it down so they can still.
Okay, so it's, so it's a week for each one?
Yep. Week long, full of like six, I think there's like 14 challenges in this one, a bunch of tribal councils. There's a ton of moving parts. It's great. Um, so pretty much this would be for two weeks. If I could get half a million and give 250K each, I would be more than happy.
Uh. Sounds good to me, shit, I mean.
I think we give her the 700,000.
Yeah.
If I don't end up running back seasons, um, I can either transfer the money back if I end up, um, switching gears. Or I can, uh. Visit with you guys again and then keep it to allocate for other future events and not have to come back here and pitch them all over again.
So I, I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but, but why? Why do we have, like, what is survival legends versus local? Don't we have a survival, we have the survival. Police Department versus everyone already. It happens every day.
No, but this is, this is not about a gunplay, Cornwood.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
If you read one of the, uh, reviews, Nico Canto phrased it as conflict has never been so healthy. That's pretty good. A glowing review, in my opinion.
Oh shit, okay, maybe I'll partake in this then.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, looks like a good time.
Um, yeah, totally up to you guys. I am more than happy to take whatever you guys give me. The help would be immense. The last event did successfully earn me the warehouse to build the set, which I would take you guys to if it wasn't in Toledo and you weren't already sitting in this room for a million hours. But if anybody are interested in seeing it, feel free to come back.
Yeah, I would love to. What is Tessa's review here? What the hell is this?
Oh, yeah, apparently some of, okay, so in season two, I allowed phones and that means that people were texting each other. I would assume. Things like, we gotta get rid of him now.
Oh, God.
He can't be here anymore. We gotta fucking cut his throat and then apparently she was part of an investigation because of her text messages.
Layers.
Wait, what?
Because of out of context, uh, survival.
Hold on, she said what? She said cut his throat?
No, I'm saying this is years ago. This is years ago.
So she said that shit years ago.
I don't know what she said specifically. Saying those types of things were very frequently probably texted among each other. No, they don't literally hurt each other in survival. No, Tessa wouldn't do that.
She stabbed me in the throat, like.
Hey, what the hell?
Like two months ago.
Oh my God, I'm sorry.
Dolphin.
I'd stand corrected.
So. Hmm. Uh, that is my presentation. Any questions?
Uh, how do I sign up? No, um.
Open auditions, if that's a legitimate question. They hold open auditions if that's a legitimate question. I tend to, uh, send it up down at the fame or shame thing at, uh, Maze Bank Arena.
Uh, I've been, I've been advocating for, uh, you know, rewarding high effort, high engagement events and basically funding them out of pocket for months. So I'm, I, I, I'd be very encouraged if you got the funding for this that you're asking.
I saw the set yesterday and it is the definition of high effort. Jesus Christ.
Everything Andy does is so.
True, true unreal. Yeah.
Andy, was the thing that I accompanied you to, was that part of the planning for this too?
Uh, no, that was the last event that went to the funding for the warehouse for this. Well, for this and other events.
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah. Okay. But, uh, yeah, uh, you, you got my vote for funding. I'm, I'm all.
My take this time is the same as last time. Uh, if any, uh, one individual deserves the trust of, uh, usage of some of the state funds for something like this, uh, it is Andy Jones. So I'm perfectly happy for that. Yeah. I mean, you guys don't, I'm more than happy to hand over my bank account if you guys somehow, you know, end up thinking that something weird's happened.
Oh, yeah, I'm not worried.
I ain't got no worries. I do think, uh, I mean, that is a lot of money to hand over, but I mean, I think that if people are doing shit to, to support the people of the city, I'm, I'm, I'm well, well, well in favor.
Thank you. Um, I guess it's up to you guys, what number then? I will take the most you are willing to give and allocate it as.
I think it's 700,000, right?
Yeah, I would approve. The reason I asked you what, what number you actually would ask for is because uh, I know that you're going to undersell yourself out of some compulsion towards making sure we understand that you're like legit and not, you know, taking money or anything. So you're trying to show us how conservative you can be. Uh, but that's bullshit because we already know that because you've run this thing like multiple times already. So uh, don't undersell yourself. We should just give her what she asked for, in my opinion.
Yeah, agreed.
And you'd asked for 50,000 before, right?
Uh, for the last event, yeah, I asked for 50,000.
And I know that you spent more than that on the rocks for the new set. So no, you're getting, you're getting, you're getting the full amount. You're getting the 700,000. Oh my God.
$61,000 worth of rocks.
Uh huh.
Holy fuck.
Oh my God, that's a lot of rock. Oh damn.
How many rocks did you individually place again? 300?
116 different rounds.
Yeah.
It's fucking cool though. There's a skull. It's great. Um, yeah, 700,000 would be amazing. I'll run several like back to back versions of this particular one before I move on to like a different theme, different set, different challenges, all that stuff. Um, I like to give them like a four to six month time gap between them, but, um, if more people want to play, uh, and with it being a little bit more difficult to set up nowadays, because I don't have as many tools available to me as I used to. Um, the gap will probably come sooner and I'm willing to run it back with the same challenges and stuff. And besides, with this type of event, the game really does change based on who's playing, not necessarily what challenges their person's anticipating in, so. 700 would be great if you guys are, are good with that.
Uh, you know, you know what, Andy? We have, uh, we, we just got, well, the rentals technically, I forgot. We just got, I was going to say, we just got helicopters in and, and we could even do some shit with your event regarding the helicopters.
Cornwood.
But that's another discussion.
Tell me when you guys got parachutes. I got challenges in mind for that.
Oh my lord. Sorry.
Listen, I want to set up a target with police barriers.
You know, don't count your, you know, chickens where they hatch, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's just a, just an idea that I got for down the road, maybe for season five.
Hey, I appreciate it. Yeah. Season five will definitely happen. I will keep running this as long as there are people who love it.
Hey, do you have any nays on 700,000 dollars for Andy Jones?
So you're splitting up as, how much did the breakdown cost again? Just really quick. 500 prize, 200, which is going to be the overall cost.
If I do give money to a second place, but I still want to toy with that idea because I do really like the cutthroat aspect of it.
Uh.
Um, so I would say I would stick probably within like 250 because I was allocating 50,000 of the original price to like a bum second season. Uh, but if the price can be more, I'd probably stick with like 300 for the first season and then the rest be like 100 each, depending. Depending how many people want me to run it back. If not, I can return the money or I can keep it to allocate to a different event.
I bet we, I bet we do it as this, again, again, prove it as a certain amount. As each one of those come up, those can be milestone payments based upon reception.
Withdraw it when I actually need it.
Correct. Yeah, not lump sum, just as it goes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that. It's not hard to contact you.
Oh.
Cool. But I will ask for the 300 relatively soon. Because I'll be done any day now. Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, Andy. Super excited for that.
Thanks, guys.
Of course, you have a good one, Andy.
Oh, also just as a side note, you guys should get process servers. It would give judges quests to give and follow and watch people and then you can pay them like per job.
That's a good idea.
Run.
I, I was using servers for, uh, a cease and desist wouldn't, but I was actively practicing law. It is super fun. A 10 out of 10 recommend.
Yeah, I mean, because you also don't need like construction. You could just pay them based on per contract. Okay. Anyway, I'm out of here later. Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Okay, she's great.
Okay, is my aunt. She's amazing.
As, uh, as is, as is customary, uh, we will now go to my left to start to see, uh, who has what to present. We've got Solomon Walker.
Uh, excuse me?
TJ.
What?
Sorry, TJ Walker, sorry.
Wow, wow.
ADM C, last name probably related somehow. You know how it is.
Not related, but thank you. Uh, we're two very distinct people. I definitely don't have a British accent. Uh, I have questioned quite a bit. Um, I want to follow up on some of the Dogtown stuff. So the last time that we had talked, uh, I did go meet with Bobby, um, and actually got him to be serious for a hot minute, which is kind of hard to do. So did a full assessment kind of of where they are at as costs. Uh, they estimate roughly, this isn't a Dogtown treasure notes. This is not something that's like a actual legislation or something. I just put it there for y'all to look. They estimate their cost roughly to be about eight to 10K per day.
Pause, pause.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, these idiots are accounting for several thousand dollars wasted bullets that they're shooting at their enemies.
I was seeing that.
Okay, just so we're clear.
Yeah, this is across the department. I'm, I'm well aware, believe me.
I'm, I'm, I'm just going to enter my stance on the record ahead of time. Uh, fuck Bobby and Carmine and fuck their shitty request. Uh, and I love them and they're doing a great job over there. Uh, but part of this agreement where they get carte blanche and this lawless zone was that we don't have to deal with them or fund them. We, we gave them jobs. We're hiring more of their people.
Well, let, let me go, let me finish with this before we go into a.
I know, I'm just getting myself on the record.
Let me, before we start to this part, because you weren't here for the part where they're doing a proposal crane. Uh, and I'm going to give you, I guess, a, I'll T O D R on this. So they came in asking uh, and gave a demonstration of inmates that were shackled, uh, and they were requesting that they're able to work with the state to do sanitation, do deliveries, do jobs, uh, with them. They're requesting then funds afterwards, which would be helped or used to then basically fund themselves. Um, I have on there a suggestion. This is not by any all means, they, whatever, it's open from discussion. I thought that it would be appropriate if the state would purchase materials if they were from sanitation or Dogtown employees, inmates into positive funds into, I just have a pending state account accessible only by those members of Dogtown. Those purchased by the state will be used for repairs of emergency service vehicles. And should, uh, this is down the line, um, that be of interest? And Siobhan and I talked a little bit about this. Businesses interested in working with PD or such wise for those emergency service vehicles may bid on a contract, be administered of those repairs. Uh, kind of a circular economy with it. Thoughts?
These guys are idiots, TJ. Are you willing to do all the work for them?
Well, uh, we do have a pending, uh, cabinet that is looking at commerce and labor and that could fall right into there. But yeah, am I able to? Listen, I, I just want to give people opportunities.
Okay.
And if they're willing to do the work, then I see no reason why, as long as it's actually benefiting. If it's for bullshit, then no.
So wait, so the, what are the, how do they get the materials? They're going to go do sanitation?
Yeah. So they brought in inmates that were shackled and they're going to take them.
So, so you're telling me you're going to get a bunch of these lifers are going to go to sanitation. What happens if someone robs them doing sanitation? Is the lifer with 15 life sentences for, you know, cannibal torture, going to then bite the guy's face off and then I'm going to be liable?
They're trying to ask for essentially the ability to function as cops outside of the prison in regards to their.
No, that wasn't it.
All that was definitely where they went, but we did talk them down.
We, we, we gave them homework, right? And their homework was to go talk to Barrick of how potentially this could function. They obviously haven't gotten back to us yet. Uh, I've actually been trying to reach Barrick in the meantime for separate issues. Um, so I'd imagine that they did not catch up with him, but it would be based upon them coming back here and proposing that. So I just did a cost analysis, basically what they're formulating, if this is feasible or not. I'm not trying to pitch it for them. I'm just putting it as a suggestion as more context from what they came with. There.
Bobby Charles is the biggest tip she ever met.
Craig, you don't have to tell me that. I spent way too long in prison with him being guarded.
Shackled woman.
If, if this, if this goes through, uh, it would be much easier to allow them to get the materials from the slave labor for the lifers or whatever. Uh, and to sell them and to pocket the money. I don't think we need like another account that needs to be like added to and then like, we don't need to add more bureaucracy, bureaucratic like tape to like the process of them getting that money just because it's extra work for all of us that doesn't need to exist in my opinion.
And that's fair. Um, you know, I, I thought just as a perspective, uh, and this is kind of where I was going at with it. As a continuation from the emergency service vehicle side, I did get the numbers from EMS. Ran those, uh, they're roughly about 560, 500, 500, sorry, $5,628 a day is what their actual expenditures are. A 4,000 of that, which is 80% is going to the actual repairs while a thousand per day is going to equipment. Um, so it's just more of a circular thing and then pocketing.
Bobby and Bobby and Carmine have to constantly repair their shit.
This isn't Bobby and Carmine. This is, I just said EMS.
Yeah.
Where are you going with that, Craig?
Well, Bobby and Carmine driving like assholes all day.
Cause they're dipshit.
And when we're sitting here and we're talking about groups like the EMS and things like that, uh, some of them ain't too far off from Bobby and Carmine in terms of driving habits.
That, that's fine.
Honest about that.
I, 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 I guess, I'm just putting out the information of what can be used to be beneficial. That, that's really about it. So there, that's on them. If they want to come back and propose this and actually have the ability to do that, that's not on me. I'm not trying to advocate for it. I'm just did an analysis of where things were at. Fair enough?
Yeah, it makes sense. I'd, uh, I'd hear him out again. Hopefully it's quicker than the last conversation too.
Your, your, your intention was to have like that account pay for EMS repairs and shit?
So the intention of, okay, uh, no, no, so we would buy the materials off of them, right? We would have a business bid on the contract from a government to be the sole provider, sole administrator of repairs for EMS so that those materials that we buy can then subsequently be used to repair our essential services vehicles. So we're using the inmates to gather sanitation parts. That then goes back to the state. The state then fixes the vehicles of our emergency services. They use it to fund whatever the hell they're going down there. That's what I'm about it.
Did you, who, who did you talk to from, uh, EMS about this?
I have none. This is just a theoretical. Um, I got the cost analysis.
It's a great idea. It's a great idea. Um, see, I, I was just wondering if, you know, maybe the, the chief of EMS came to you and talked about it.
No, no, I, I just got access to the funding for it, uh, as to what they are currently spending in their expenditures. And I just figured, you know what? Um, how do we make this all relative? So one feeds into the other.
I like that idea. Um, there, there is, there are a couple of problems. One, uh, we would have to designate one person that is not a government employee that would be ensuring that those materials are used for the sole purpose of making repair parts.
Right.
Uh, and I don't know who would be able to do that. I have like a couple of ideas, but at the end of the day, like we can't like fully monitor like how they're actually using those parts, right?
Yep. So that's, uh, that's where technically the last part of that is they come in and do a bid. So if you want to have, you know, say four or five different potential shops to open, right? They're going to go ahead, bid that they can do the work. They come in, do a quick presentation similar to what Andy did. We as a council say, yep, all right, we're going to choose this one. And then that one is the only one, which then allows it to be audited basically because we know how much we're paying for it and we know how much should be there. So all those things get logged and see how many across, how many get repaired. All those things are very easy to do because it's the same thing that happened, you know, years ago at Autos. All that shit was taken care of. You know, you can cost factory and how much these repair costs are, and you can determine if they're being abused or not.
So I, I know a guy who can, who can make them and sell them. Who's not a part of the PD.
Or you can even just, I have someone in PD. The, this is, this is down the line, big picture thinking. This is still contingent upon them actually doing the fucking work and coming in here and saying this is what them and Barrick talked about. So I don't want to get too into the weeds with shit that hasn't happened yet.
Right, I got you.
What if it's in PD like today though?
Uh, yeah, but as mentioned, I mean, I've personally been trying to contact Barrick and have not been able to. So I doubt they have either. And apologies, my voice a little raspy. I'm kind of, you know, allergies in the city are not great.
Oh, hell, I guess you just get to waste some time. Okay, um, Bobby Charles and Carmine are very much a give them an inch, they'll take a mile type of folks and sometimes it'll take two miles. Uh, so you gotta be careful with what you give them.
Oh, I agree. This is depending if they actually do the damn work.
Yeah, I get you.
They don't get, if they don't do, that's it.
Yeah.
Can't we just have them make license plates?
That'd be great.
My mind, uh, conjures an image of Bobby with like a shackled inmate inmate with like a collar on, just like leading him towards his enemy to like eat him.
Bobby, you do not have to tell me. I have spent more time in prison with him than I care to even let you know.
Yeah, but like using lifers as pets outside of the prison.
So they're going to.
So many things.
Y'all weren't too opposed to it last week when he was here.
It's just good old fashioned for-profit prison labor. I don't understand.
So they're going to have shackles on these, on these prisoners and they're going to have them go work for them for free.
That is exactly what he showed us last week. Y'all were here.
So I, I did see something on file. I just remembered this, uh, earlier. If you look up Grover Carlson, are they already doing this? There's two individuals in, uh, their, uh, prison gear with Scotty Bard, who I know is hired to the DOC. Uh, it says Scotty said, no, send your buzz on our future. Maybe it's something different, but they're already taking it. Maybe they're already trying to do this without speaking to the, uh, PD about how that would function.
Uh, they are outside. I don't know what they're doing, but yeah.
Well, I guess fuck it. We warned them if they, you know, if they commit any crimes outside of here that they're liable still anyway. So, you know, it's fine.
I understand that it's like a hurdle to get over logically, but it, it, it does still like bug my mind that like the lifers, the ones specifically who are meant to be in prison and never come out are the ones in this use case that get to frequently leave prison. I understand why. It's just funny. It's hard to get past.
Being in the presence of Bobby Charles is a prison. I'm going to be honest.
True.
You're not wrong.
So what happens, uh, what happens if someone decides it'd be really funny to ambush the DOC and break out the lifers?
Uh, then they're harboring a fugitive.
Yeah, we talked about that. Uh, technically be a hot.
That's a hot. I don't think people are going to be fucking around and finding out with that.
And we explained to Bobby and Carmine very clearly, they cannot retaliate against individuals, um, on behalf of the lifers or anything. Uh, no, that does not, that, that is not their prof you that would have to call the police.
Yeah.
Are Bobby, are Bobby, well, hold on, are Bobby and Carmine subject to search when outside?
Hmm, are they? I mean, they're still, I mean, they're citizens of Los Santos. We still need RS and PC for that.
Cause I know for a fact, uh, the PD's provided me evidence as well as, uh, pretty much anyone who would listen, somebody even got twatted out. Uh, that these yokels were brandishing PD guns in the prison.
Uh, that these yokels were brandishing PD guns in the prison. And I told them specifically that if you manage to get your hands on illegal guns and things like that, I'm not going to mess with you if it's only in the prison. But the second any of that comes outside of the prison, we gotta, you know, big fucking problem.
Well.
Uh, and I don't, you know, trust either of them to, you know, not get unraveled in their own authority and think, oh, I'm the big dick strutting around with all my inmates. I can do whatever I want. And then, you know, pull out their PD Glock when someone tries to hold them up.
I think that's a, that, that's why we tried to explain to them that they're not.
And then what do they get argue? Well, I'm, I'm active on duty DOC, so.
Yeah, that's what they were trying to go for. That's why they were told they had to speak to Barrick about where the line on that is because, uh, we told them pretty clearly, uh, no, you cannot do that. That is, that is not.
Fine. That's, that's the legal line.
Well, I'll tell you something that happened.
That was where they ended.
Something happened a couple of days ago. There was a, uh, ah, shit, was it a Ramiel Ramon that we had in custody? And for some reason, we decided this is the first time we're going to do a prison transport, at least as far as I know. We did a prison transport. Now, I wasn't even made aware of a prison transport occurring. I was up patrolling north with Croc Steve. I see a white vehicle, looked like it was crashed out against the, uh, against the tree. And this is around the same time everybody's seat belts just were, were real loose for some reason. So I thought, oh shit, somebody probably got ejected from their vehicle, didn't they? So I get out of the vehicle and I go check up on it and say, oh shit, is something going on? Myself and Croc are looking around trying to help a, a fella. Next thing you know, uh, I end up getting just mag dumped from across the street by a couple of folks and the guy that we're trying to help out. The belief is, is that these guys had set up to stop a prison transport. Now here's my question. How the shit, I don't know what that was. It was probably Al Qaeda. But how the shit do these guys know that we're doing a transport when we usually have the local DOC trap these guys up?
Oh, do I get to fill you in on this? Yeah. Max, you know, you want to fill in on this one too? All right. So, uh, usually Cornwood, what will happen is if they request a lawyer, uh, most of the members of the group that they're with will figure out who an active lawyer is. They'll go down, uh, make some sort of contact usually. And assign that they should be requesting a transport, which then means they're probably trying to break them out. Uh, transports, prison transports used to be a very, very common thing a long time ago, uh, to the point where in, in training in academy, we used to practice setups for that.
And the issue is, is that also at that time, we had coordination with, uh, actual DOC who are actual vetted government employees, not Bobby and Carmine. So first of all, we never as a council, uh, authorized those two idiots to do anything outside the prison. In fact, we said quite the opposite. So the concept that somehow, uh, there would be a prison transport at all that involved Bobby and Carmine would be contrary to everything we've discussed.
Um, did someone, did someone ask me a question? Cause I was literally, I was, I was unfocused for like 10 fucking seconds.
I guess. It was just a feedback thing. You're good.
Though, no worries. Uh, if you wanted to explain Cornwood, the process of prison transports and how they used to be hit, I gave him my context in the past. So I figured if you wanted to add anything else that was colorful, uh, from our histories.
Oh.
The lawyer just pitches a fit for an hour to get everybody in position and then, yeah.
Murphy, Murphy knows better than anyone here. Why are you asking Max? Shit.
That's, that's probably true.
So, yeah. So, so here's the thing.
Cause I got liberated from a prison transport.
Situation or not. Yeah, no, I, what I'm saying is the, if this, if this is that one time when this, this kind of hadn't really been established, and then all of a sudden the, these guys know. I'm, I'm, I don't know a hundred percent. Bobby claims, you know, come hell and high water that it wasn't him when I called him out on it. But I don't know how else they would know. Cause the only people that knew about the prison transport occurring were the people in the cells. And I don't even know if they had a lawyer for that situation because it's Rami. I don't know if he, if he normally gets a lawyer or not.
Well.
So.
What about Bobby's employees?
Sure. Again, my point being, and this goes back to the whole radio shit of them wanting the radios, right? They could still have something. I mean, they could say all they want. And I know we came up with, with some, some stipulations, but there's a reason why Chief Justice Crane said he didn't want them having radios at all. But I do understand their plight in terms of having to deal with the radios that everybody else uses. So the fact that these guys are on our radio channels, that they're privy to the information that we have, and then I'm getting mag dumped for some, some, for trying to be a good damn Samaritan and make sure that somebody's not hurt on the side of the road pisses me the hell off. Okay? So how the hell do they know about it? That there's a prison transport current for Romeo Ramen?
Little, uh, grilling investigation time there, Cornwood. Get him in a little cell, ask him a bunch of questions, put him on record, see what they say.
Yeah. And they say, no, it wasn't me. They say that damn wasn't me. Okay. Yeah, it wasn't. And then what?
Well, I mean.
Don't do shit.
You could potentially see if they called anyone during that timeframe or any of their employers, because they have to make contact with it. So then you could.
I mean, they could, we could push for a subpoena. I mean, there, that, that's pretty much it.
Why don't, why don't, why don't?
So what was the, how did this transport work?
Nah, it's, it's sidetracked at this point.
How did, how did this, how did this transport work? Did they come to MRPD and pick them up?
Yes, the police escort. Well, I don't even know because this was before the transport was even occurring. So I was in the area. Just happened to be in the area, didn't know the transport was occurring. I wasn't involved in the scene. And then I ended up getting mag dumped for, for just trying to check on some son of a bitch, thought he crashed out. That's my question. So it's not, it's not really sidetracked. It's directly to your point. When it comes back to, to you give these guys an inch, they take a mile and it leads back to last week's discussion about the radios. So unless somebody within the PD for the first time ever told somebody else, hey, we're doing a prison transport.
Well, that's not the first time I've ever come on.
No, definitely not.
First time for, I shouldn't say ever, but the first time as far as I know, since, since the collapse.
Do you know who cleared it on PD's side?
No idea. I was, I was not involved.
Sounds like a, sounds like a slacks moment. I'm gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
I heard, I heard there was only one unit assigned too. That's it.
So here, here's, here's the thing.
Well, then one unit means that unit was the one who authorized it.
Correct. There's ways to go ahead and like figure these things, this out with it. If it truly did happen, because we may be going down a rabbit hole, that is, is not that. I'm not here to defend them or not. There's just ways to prove that intentionally. So, um, I recommend just, you know, doing the proper investigation. If that is something you believe, put it together, put a subpoena and shoot it over to Crane in his department. Sorry, my old cop brain's still turning, man.
I mean, your new cop brain would say be careful about investigating too far.
Fair. All right.
Don't have anybody on duty to do that.
Uh, shall we move on to the next one?
Sure.
All right. Uh, so the first one, top one, um, the emergency essential funding, this is kind of a new one I just put up there. Uh, this is in a state or a aspect if, should the state ever be declared into an emergency relief or emergency state that there is a state fund that is set aside and a separate account. Where is only accessible to what would be at the time, whoever the current treasurer is in that state of emergency, proposed amount as 500 million. I'm sorry, 50 million. I apologize.
I'll do 20 million.
Uh, meet you halfway?
Sure. 25 million. I think, I think this is a great idea. Um, especially, uh, for future mayors who don't really understand. Um, I'll put it simply, it's pretty easy to get to zero or sorry, hard to get to zero. Uh, but I don't doubt that there's someone dumb enough who might get elected in the future who could possibly do that.
Mm-hmm. So this is just to set aside. So you said 25 and meet you at 30.
Um. Sure. I don't care.
Any other thoughts?
I, I think that's good.
Quick vote.
Emergency fund sounds fine to me. Sounds responsible.
Problem is we can't, we can't make bank accounts right now.
I know, I know. This is to be set aside. So, uh, when that should or happen to occur, uh, that will be put into there. So I'll follow this up, um, with what I am proposing to do is establish who is classified as essential workers at that point. I know I talked about that a little bit. I do have a list. If you have any thoughts on that now, uh, current list. And please tell me if you think this is off or if I'm missing someone. Give me one sec. Uh, PD EMS doctors, department of justice, food service workers and mechanics. Those are the ones I have currently listed as essential services. It's not in the document if you're looking.
Okay.
So what I would like to see this, uh, the purpose of this be is this money set aside. A future mayor fucks up so hard that the state account goes to zero. That means no one gets paid for any job.
Correct.
Um, what I would like to see this, uh, this, this money being used for is if it somehow gets to zero, the future treasurer then is allowed to move that money that was put aside into the main account. And then, uh, that should give time for an impeachment investigation essentially. Because obviously the mayor has fucked up so hard that there needs to be some kind of impeachment investigation. That mayor gets impeached. Um, blah, 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 so on and so forth. Uh, and that allows everything to keep moving, uh, citywide as well. Like we're not going to have, you're not going to have to worry about people from group six or grime coming to you being like, hey, why am I getting $0 right now? Cause you're doling the money out.
I, well, now you just made me think of some.
What up?
What happens if someone invests in, um, like a shit ton of material goods? Or like a shit ton of like cryptocurrency? And then they get all their friends together and form a political party and get a mayor elected. And then intentionally crash, uh, the economy. And then they're the hoarders of like all these essential goods, which then they can just set a price on as they demand.
How's the crypto come into this again? Sorry. I'm trying to track this.
Well, you know, crypto is all, so, you know, you need a fiat currency.
Fair. All right. So let me, uh, actually this proves, this goes right into my next one. Um, and maybe we just talk about both of them in succession because maybe we should take a look at the funding approval and transparency acts and, uh, read that for a section. There it's nine different sections on there. It's pretty self-explanatory. Take a look. Uh, that is what you just described Max, the entire purpose of.
No stop.
Yes, it is.
Uh, no, it's not. I'll let everyone read and then we can continue.
Okay.
Which one are on the FAFO?
Uh, no, the funding approval and transparency act.
I hear the FATI one. All right.
Yes.
He stole my name. That's crazy.
Adam?
No, the, the FAFO. We already have a FAFO.
Yeah, I told them about it. Yeah. It's a good name.
All right. So. Yeah, there's a lot in here.
Yeah, I've been busy for the four days since we last met. Anyone need another minute?
All good.
No, all right.
Maybe you can walk us through it, TJ.
Yeah. So this is a shared accountability for the council as a whole, uh, not just for, for example, yourself, Max. It's also in a public perspective, gives you, uh, and others the legal cover and the plausible deniability with a dual approval system. Um, so for example, if you get questioned about decisions, it becomes a shared responsibility. It cannot be pinned solely on one person, i.e. the mayor's side to it and that situation that you just described, uh, cannot happen. There's a less chance for taking a fall or financial mismanagement or for allegations of corruption. If those things are set up, uh, once again, this is set up for a future where not one person can just dominate that funding, as you had mentioned. And decide basically fuck the city at a whim and acts as a safeguard, uh, for the entirety of the system. So essentially it's allowing us to do the proper checks and balances that should occur. Uh, I don't envision too much of an issue with it because it's as a group decision and it's a signed off aspect to it. This allows another layer of protection, not only for yourself, but for everyone else involved on top of it.
So appreciate you.
Okay. Okay. All right. We'll be, who, who? Who, Bingo? Okay. All right. I appreciate the heads up. He's on the way. Um, okay. I'll beware people with white shirts. All right. Thanks, Bingo. Bye.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Look, I'm for it, but I'm also well aware, uh, that I'm not the person who, uh, makes these changes. So I'm sure others that are more involved in that discussion, uh, will have, uh, have their thoughts. Uh, however, uh, for me personally, uh, I would like to not be, uh, punished with a pay decrease to less than a fourth of what our pay was, uh, with no warning. So yeah, uh, I'm, I'm for it.
Yeah, that pay was increased to that by me, by the way. What it was, was much lower than that to start.
Uh, but still higher than we are now. Thank you.
Yeah, but like, 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 like a hundred dollars more. It was probably, yeah.
A hundred and twenty-five. Yes.
One, one twenty-five.
God, yeah. Sorry. Yes. You were so kind. Thank you for that.
Hey, just a heads up when we, um, sorry, I'd accept that call. Just heads up when we walk out of this room at all. Apparently there is somebody on their way to come kill Max. So, um.
Was that the phone call that you got from Bingo?
Yep. Yeah. Don't know who, but.
I did just say, hey, Bingo.
It's a good thing we have an officer that'll actually shoot.
Distract him. Give him something more interesting.
Well, allegedly this guy's wearing a white shirt. I asked Bingo who it is. He really doesn't know. Is what it sounded like. He, he genuinely sounded confused.
If I walk out of there, um, and I see anyone in the hallway with a gun, I'm going to, I'm going to dome them.
All right, go right ahead.
Man, God bless the second.
Go, hey, Siobhan, could you do me a favor and text him that Max said that? So he's been warned.
Um.
And we are witness to.
So.
Wait, hold on.
Yeah.
All right. I'm sorry. Popcorn. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, can you explain what a requister is in section three?
Uh, yeah, so for example, that would be like Andy, right? Um, anyone that is requesting funds to be used from the state account, anyone that is, for example, says Siobhan has someone going on for the cabinet side to it. Siobhan would relay the quest, act as a requestor. So it's a blanket term for anyone that is trying to access funds from the account. Anyone can technically be requested. That could be, you know, by, and this is Crane when we were talking before. For example, Crane, you would be the requestor for the Department of Justice to then pay out for your judges for the bench trials and for, uh, docket cases.
Were they, maybe I'm misunderstanding. Where we, uh, ain't they already gonna get covered from what Chief Justice Crane was talking about earlier?
A- absolutely. I'm just putting it as a term as to how the legislation would embody who that person is, right? So it's not like a, if they get covered by it, that's fine. It just technified, technicality is they are the requestor based upon this. They're the ones looking for funds. So, uh, as that gets paid out.
Six, one, five, four, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
So every time a judge completed a docket case or a bench trial, you would want you and me to sign off on the dispersment of money?
I'd probably just give you a stack of it at the end of the week and be like, here you go, signees.
Would you, do you, do you prefer that process to you simply being the one to do it like whenever one is done? Like the judge finishes the case and then they can immediately go to you and be like, hey, uh, you know, in accordance with the thing that Chief Justice passed or whatever, you know, you owe me 20K or whatever.
In my thing, we, we settled how we're doing the dispersments. I already wrote that in there.
I.
Or is that just an example?
It's a, this is an example theoretically.
But, but okay.
So would this supersede other?
This is a basis what those things are built upon. So when I, when I mentioned that we should probably just take a quick second uh, before voting on some of that is I wanted to see if we wanted to establish this for the basis of that of how it's approved. So if we have a baseline and build upon it, we can incorporate it as you wish. Since we had not yet approved it.
I don't know. I think we're gonna need more than a second to talk about this one.
That's entirely fine.
Um. It's, right now I'm operating, I, I have two or three fiscal policies that I, I adhere to and I adhere to during term one. Uh, in term two, I am, we're currently in a, a saving phase so that we can go back to what we were doing, uh, up until the election. For, for about a month and a half up until election, um, I super pumped money into the sanitation market because materials were desperately needed. Um. In section five, this says that you will review the, uh, you're responsible for the initial review and validation of all funding requests. The treasurer ensures that all funding requests are in accordance with the budgetary constraints and fiscal policies. Who, who in your vision should be the person to set fiscal policy in Los Santos?
That'd be joint treasurer slash mayor. So if you wanna do a as a, a golden era or a, whatever you wanna call it for.
Golden age.
Yeah, if you wanna call it that and then you work jointly with it and you say, alright, we're going to save up a certain amount for a period of time and we know that we're going to do that, then we work together to establish, at what point can we do that?
What if we never agree with each other?
Well, as long as you don't drain the account to zero, then. Part of this, part of this is also from the council side as well.
Sure. But, uh, let, let's assume that, you know, for hypothetically, okay?
Hypothetically.
Let's say this passes. Let's say, you know, me being the mayor, the person who had sole control and power over this and who has demonstrably been extremely acute and responsible. Um, let's say I am, I just don't like the fact that you are, you are the person who is involved in that process. What if I just choose not to work with you?
Uh, then I'm going to ask you, what's the purpose of having a treasurer?
Well, the purpose of, uh, the treasurer is to ensure that someone like me does not abuse my power. Uh, the purpose, the person of the treasurer is to ensure that I'm embezzling money from the state account. Purpose of the treasurer, uh, is to ensure that I am not so wildly irresponsible that you can, you're, you're essentially going to use your power to audit the state account to prove that I am someone who should be impeached if I were abusing my power. Um, which I'm sure was attempted term one, uh, obviously did not succeed. So what, what I'm curious about, uh, is this act a, a response to my fiscal policies from term one?
No.
Or, no, okay. So what made you come to, uh, deciding to work on something like this?
Yeah, actually that came from a fair amount of, actually my interview with Crane, to be honest. Uh, Crane, how'd you kind of put it? When someone pumps money to the economy? But what's, what's the wording that you use when, uh, you thought it was the possibility coerce votes based upon doing a golden age right before voting period? If it's planned and it's put out there and that's the intention of it, then I have no problem doing it whatsoever. I don't set the direction for it. As you put it, this is for you and your term. And anyone else therefore afterwards to come to the conclusion of how do I support that to make it happen, so it's done responsibly?
Yeah, I mean, I, um, shit, sounds like good politics, I guess.
I mean, the, uh, maybe I'm wrong, but from my understanding, especially when we're talking about the.
But, well, and yeah, sorry, in the corner, I just wanna make sure I get this out there. Uh, there's also easier ways to solve that issue than implementing a whole other check and balance on every decision the mayor makes. And that is you just, you know, make it so the economy has to be locked in, you know, uh, at a non, you know, accelerated, you know, stance. Uh, you know, a week or two before the elections.
I think that's a separate, you know, yeah, that's, I think that's a separate thing with that though. I don't think that's, that's pertaining to, um, this is the entirety, not just for two weeks.
I know, I'm, I'm just saying, I, you know, if that's the citation that I'm concerned about, that's what I'm worried about, so.
Correct. I'm trying to basically put with this is that, you know, my job is, yes, max to ensure checks and balances. To make sure you're not doing anything stupid. By on top of this, it's also ensuring that there's dual responsibility between you and I.
Hmm.
So you're not basically fucking yourself out of a job.
Yeah, of course. Um, and I, I made some pretty, uh, poignant and powerful decisions fiscally recently. Uh, and I definitely, uh, did some during term one. Uh, and I definitely had the, uh, the details of the state account leaked by the former treasurer to Stanley Miller. Uh, who then began to tweet that the state account was losing more than $3 million per day. Um, and if the state account losing $3 million per day was not enough to inspire the treasurer to maybe vote that I should be impeached. Uh, I'm not too concerned about impeachment or losing my job. I'm not concerned that I need, uh, dual responsibility for this role. Uh, in fact, I'm so pleased with how that golden age went that I am, I'm even more confident now than I was while it was happening, that, uh, right now the state count has more money in it that it, that it almost, uh, ever has. Right now, we're almost back up to, uh, eighty-two million, I think was the cap or eighty-three.
Hmm.
It's, uh, the check today was about seventy-four.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there. Um, and at the end of term one, it was almost at thirty-nine million or forty-one.
Fifty, oh, thirty-nine, holy shit.
We, we got pretty low, uh, there.
Holy shit. So, so we're ranking it in right now.
Yeah, and that's.
It's enough.
Um. So. I like the idea of transparency. I've been filling out that, uh, that report, by the way. I don't know if you've been peeking it.
Hmm.
Um. So.
For the future, Max, and I, I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do with a golden age or not. Like I said, that's, that's. If you say that, for example, your platform that you wanted to run on and the next mayor or whoever that mayor afterwards, they're asked about their fiscal policy and say that this is how I wanna do it and they do it. Then as long as it's done in a way that is responsible, that's fine. This is not just for a now, this is for everybody. Max, I'm gonna give you a, a quick example of this, right?
Hmm.
So, um, Craig, five years ago. Explain to me what happened to this state account with the mayors.
I mean.
For, for, for the record, the treasurer prevents that from happening, whatever it is. I, cause I know that it's probably about embezzlement.
I, I, I'm, I'm gonna step in here and, and not, not to, I don't wanna be a damn inhibitor, okay? I hate inhibitors. However, I, I'm just taking a look at this and the way things are trending and whatnot. And, and yeah, the, the point is that this is gonna be for the future, sure, but like, and I ain't no damn hell, I don't even know what it's called, ecologist or whatever, but if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I'm the same thing. But it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? I mean, let's just, if, if, if things are trending as, as positively as they are, why, why don't we just put a pin in this until it looks like it ain't ending up that way? I mean, you.
I'm with, I'm with Cornwood. I was, you guys know what I say. Let the kids work in the coal mines.
Yep.
Yeah, hell.
That's what we're doing for the mines.
So, fair enough. Okay. So I'm not, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not trying to break anything with this. I'm not trying to put, oh, someone just deleted something there, Max.
Nope. Oh, actually, no, it wasn't me. It was me. I actually, uh, yeah, I got it.
So, I'm not trying to break anything whatsoever. It's continuing with it and it's ensuring that if something does happen, uh, people understand why things happen, right? For the salary side to it. It's also saying that anyone, for example, like Andy, who came in here and requested $700,000 uh, for the funds, that, that information is then signed off by both. And so it's not like a, hey, who the fuck just took out $700,000? This is an accountability aspect to it where it's duly signed off. And so it's not just saying, hey, for example, Andy's really good friends with Max right now and this could look really bad if only Max signed off on it. You have now two people signing off for it and it has already been approved. These things are basically to ensure that if something does go through, that the information being presented and out there in the future has been vetted.
So, so you're, you're calling it like a, a, a cover your ass legislation, essentially.
Correct.
That's, that's, I think that's all fine and I think that's all fine.
He's giving himself veto power.
Yeah, I'm not giving myself any veto power.
It, it, it is veto power.
I just, I can call it for what you want, Murphy, but if that's what you wanna put it as.
Giving an unelected member of the council veto power.
I'm not comfortable also with previous mayors that have bought bombs from me controlling everything in the fucking state.
Well, I mean, to be fair, th- this ain't previous mayors.
Okay, that's entirely fine.
This is somebody who, I mean, I, I feel like things have been trending in a positive direction. And, and we just gotta let them, hell, let the turkey finish cooking, right?
Uh, there, there are certain aspects of this that I like a lot.
I, I wanna out, Max, I wanna cut through this because I wanna ask you something. Sure. You and I have discussed, uh, in, in pretty good duration, um, you know, uh, what I thought about, you know, TJ coming in here and being treasurer and, you know, the things that I felt you guys agreed upon, right?
Right.
Um, and you know, I learned some things that you told me that you, you know, I didn't realize that made you guys, you know, I think have some more viewpoints on things.
Hmm.
Um, so I'd like to hear primarily from you, like your breakdown of this, what you like, what you don't, and what you suggest of any changes.
Okay. Um. So, for, uh, the, the example given was the Andy Jones presentation or whatever. I like the process we've been doing with that, which is that, you know, we'll invite people into the council meeting and then they can, they can give their presentation and then we can all, we, we all decide uh, right then and there, uh, if we wanna give this person money for their event. Uh, I also like the idea of the treasurer, um, for example, TJ, TJ has a, a storied history in Los Santos, so he knows what is good and not good in the realm of proposed, uh, event funding. Um, I like the idea of the treasurer having the sole power, um, um, maybe not, maybe sole power is not the right word. I like the treasurer. Uh, actually, no, yeah, I like the idea of someone being able to call the treasurer and be like, hey, uh, I, here's my event idea. Uh, the treasurer then being like, okay, is this event cool and, you know, high effort and deserving of a financial reward or not? And then I like the idea of the treasurer deciding yes or no. If they decide yes, then they record what they did and then just post it in the fucking reports for us to see. Uh, you know, like a time and like withdraw and like, you know, who it went to and their state ID, blah, blah, blah. I like that idea a lot. Um. It's what I tried to encourage Ed to do multiple times and it was brought up. Uh, I don't think she was putting herself out there specifically for that and maybe that, that's our fault.
That we didn't.
Weeks of discussions with her about it and then she just like told me to fuck off basics.
Yeah, um, I, I don't know if she was motivated to do that. I don't know if she wanted to do that. Um, I don't know if, yeah, maybe it would have been better for us to uh, officialize precisely that particular power for the treasurer. Um, it was heavily implied multiple times that she had that kind of power though, if she so pleased. Like we trusted her to be able to do that. Um, so what I like here is, uh, where is, I'm looking for the section in particular that I'm thinking about. Looking, 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 looking. Wish there was a search function. I like the, uh, I like state funds are subject to information requests. Love that. Uh, I like, um,
I just wanna be clear, you know what that means, right? Like any layperson can ask.
Of course. Uh, it, so long, so long as you're willing to do that work as the treasurer, because you have access to the state account and, uh, potentially future exports and stuff, so it could be a lot of work.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, it's a continuing and ongoing thing. So for example, how that would go, right? And this is how I envision it. Is, for example, Andy put together the notebook, right? I go ahead, put that information into what we have as a publicly, well, actually it won't be publicly viewable, but it will be a repository of information. If someone wants to request that, I can then say, here's what the funds went for, here's what was actually paid towards, and then here's a signature that came onto it, right? Uh, those things are available and it should be ongoing. It shouldn't just be like a, you know, bolus of information. This is as they come up.
Um, so. Yeah, I love all of section six. Um, I, I love the idea of me per, because it's very satisfying for me to be able to, for example, fill out that, that fiscal report that I've been doing in, in reports. I love doing that. Uh, I, I have always been a huge proponent of transparency. Uh, I pushed, uh, it, it could have been the first or the second meeting for someone to film so that they were publicly available, uh, the contents of this meeting entirely. Uh, I wouldn't mind if all of our reports internally right now were public. Uh, I wouldn't mind if someone could go and get the export for the state account and see where everything is being spent right now. I, I would love for section six to just be the norm. Um. Section eight, uh, can you explain your thought process on section eight?
Yeah, it was mainly, uh, as what had been discussed from last week, a lot of what would happen, uh, from the Cantor side and just basically making sure that things aren't done, uh, from either now or in the future with malice towards a specific group or something that had happened until something had been resolved. Uh, if there's no valid justification for things happening, why do those happen or why should they occur? So the proposal as put on there with justification for the ju, for including financial forecast to then be forwarded to the council for discussion, i.e. those changes goes through everybody, which the council then has a vote on. We go in here and say, hey, listen, hey, I'm, you know, PD's been fucking killing it. We have the quota system. Uh, I want off their base pay by five percent overall as an entirety. What do y'all think? Yes or no? Yay? Okay, passes, cool. So majority vote for the council. So when you're saying that treasury has a sole veto power, no, I'm giving power to everybody.
Black hat, we did it at the start and it worked just fine then.
It worked fine and, but it was slow. And there's another aspect of this that is somewhat concerning with me is, you know, what if one day TJ, you just disappear? You know, uh, any attempt to make any adjustments to this stuff would sit in limbo for weeks until we determine whether or not you're going to come back. And then we're gonna have to wait even longer for another treasurer to be picked. So there's gonna have to be more interviews for that. So it could be like an almost month process where the mayor's ability, which was formerly instant, is then bogged down in this sort of, uh, like limbo bureaucracy where we have to establish another treasurer, teach them and then, you know, get them on board with the whole process.
Crazy, what if, what if he just disappears?
Well, I mean, uh, well, for example.
Some time.
Uh, okay, so this isn't about, uh, you, uh, because I know you're here. Okay, but what, i- i- in the future, um, what if you take a vacation? What if we, what if you can't, we can't get in contact with each other? Uh, where's, where's Solomon Walker? You know, he was just elected. He couldn't even make it to the second fucking council meeting. Where is he? Uh, where's, where's Solomon Walker? You know, he was just elected. He couldn't even make it to the second fucking council meeting. Where is he? Okay, uh, yeah, he's got the consumption. Um, you know, there, I, I don't like the idea of it being bogged down in bureaucracy. I like being able to go out there and speak with people and figure out what's wrong. Last night, I took my wife's bike to Mosley's and Angus, a solo mechanic working out of Mosley's, told me, hey, I haven't had repair parts for five days. Um, it, it is impossible for me to compete with places like Milton's because they are buying up all the stuff, blah, 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 blah. Um, and he was like, is there anything you can do to make this better for us? And I said, hmm, and then I remembered, uh, the, there was a thirteen percent tax on all mechanic supplies. I was like, yeah, I could make it easier for you. Uh, I could go change the, the mechanic tax down to zero percent, uh, to give you guys the ability to actually. Potentially convince someone to come into Mosley's and pay the three point four K, uh, down from four point one, uh, for a one across. Um, and to pay nine point six or nine point nine for an injury replacement instead of twelve thousand. So, I went, I, I, we had that conversation. It was a three minute conversation. Uh, I was like, yeah, I'll go do that right now. I went back to my office, changed it. He called me a minute later and said, oh my God, it worked. Uh, like this gives me a ton of hope, uh, especially during the, uh, the shift three hours. Where we feel like, uh, or I feel like I can actually operate, uh, in, in to convince people to maybe bite the bullet. To pay that three point four K. Um, and that whole interaction, it just, it was ten minutes, but like. What, what does that interaction become when we involve this whole extra process?
I gotta, uh, I got an idea, actually. Um, Max, Max, you speaking made me kinda think of this. Uh, what if there's a compromise between the two options? Uh, what if there's, um. Like, uh, a sole authorization, uh, adjustment limit? And then for anything more like extremely drastic, uh, then that would need a sign off. Wouldn't that be like, cause that way you could do the day to day and impact things, you know, uh, as needed based on the feedback you get. Uh, but, you know, you, you would need to talk to the treasurer about, you know, doing something that's more extreme, right? And I don't know, I don't know the numbers. I, I obviously saw the notes you put in. You go from like one seventy-five to one twenty-five. Right? I mean, what if like you could go, you know, you know, eighty to one, you know, whatever it is, or I don't know, I don't know, whatever. Like maybe you go two thirds each direct, I don't, I don't know. Uh, the numbers could be figured out, but what if there's some kind of compromise there?
That's kinda how it worked when I first entered office, uh, and I first lower taxes as low as I possibly could. Uh, I was informed that I could only do twenty percent of the current value.
Sure.
And it's, it sucked cock. I'm gonna be honest. I hated it.
Well, that was a hard stop on that. What I'm saying is you could still do that, just, you have talked to somebody about it.
It wasn't a hard stop. I, I, well, it wa, it was a hard no from the past. It wasn't actually confirmed that I couldn't do that. Uh, I respected what was the case in the past because I didn't want to, uh, step on the toes. Fortunately, the state in all of its benevolence has given the ability for the mayor to make more active and decisive decisions. Uh, because situations like last night with Angus Bozo, the clown, uh, could happen. And that could have never happened in the previous system and it would have taken, uh, like Cantor said, a week at most to do a change that could have happened at the snap of a finger, essentially. I think, I think, I think that we owe it to the people.
Think the Angus, uh, situation could have been resolved with a less drastic adjustment?
No, uh, a- and that's a whole different issue because I'm, I'm, I'm pretty ear to the ground when it comes to the materials part, market right now. As you can see with my adjustments right now, I'm kind of working it back up to, uh, where it was before. I wanna see how it impacts the, uh, the state account. But I, I think ultimately the people of Los Santos deserve someone who can respond to Angus the way that I did last night. I think that they, uh, they deserve somebody who is able to wield the powers that have been given to them by the state. Uh, efficiently, effectively, quickly, uh, decisively.
I'm sure all the government factions love that they can be punished for giving you a speeding ticket in an instant. That's great. Big fan of that.
Okay, um, so I, I, I like a compromise here with what Crane was kinda proposing with this and, you know, I'm, I just wanna caution you. Uh, Max, of how that can also be seen, um, is that should someone, this Angus person be your personal friend? And they're looking for a little bit of a, hey, how can you help me out? That also could be seen pretty negatively on top of it. And what's to say, you know, one person.
My friend, for the record, we are friends.
Fair. And so what's to say, oh, you did this for this person, why aren't you doing it for that? Um, I, I, I get what you're saying with that. Uh, believe me, the, the swiftness of it, you know, following the fact that we do meet. Uh, once a week on top of this, so following council approval, file sign off required from both. Should I not be there? Whatever. We can just say basically, hey, listen, the council approves it. That's, that's fine, right? It doesn't have to be from, as your sticking point would be both treasurer and mayor for the salary adjustments. It should be council approval as a whole. And so you don't have to wait on me, should something ever happen to me, which is a concerning question that you bring up.
Cause peo- people, people go on vacation all the time. It wasn't like a, you might get killed thing. It was more like a, you know, what if you just have to be gone for like two or three weeks, you know?
That's entirely fine. Then the council would have the ability to approve that as well and that could be enacted upon. I- it's a compromise in between these.
I'm all for things being responsive, like the mayor said, and I'm all for there being checks and balances like the treasurer wants. What I think is like the ideal situation is the treasurer has every right and ability to audit what. What the mayor does or what the council does in the past tense, like if they see a spending issue to bring that here specifically and itemized. And say, hey, I feel like these expenditures are bad. Hey, I feel like this pay raise needs an adjustment and be heard on that basis. Uh, rather than have some kind of, uh, you know, a broad spectrum of powers and a veto sort of thing.
Uh, I, I just removed the whole veto thing on there, Murphy, and on, on top of it.
Some of the stuff I think we could pass right now, but I think a lot of it.
Imagine, for example, PD making the case, they actually come in here and say, hey, we, we would like ideally to be paid more. Or as Crane just put in here, the judges, they wanna be paid more. Or as EMS came in here, let's make their use case scenario and say, hey, alright. We're gonna come in, if you truly feel a certain way about this, put your shit together, come in here, present it. Put your money where your mouth is. Tell me where you're at. And then we decide.
See, I, I thought that that was for the liaisons to take care of, to bring forth to the mayor's office. Because right now it's the mayor's office that determines, so.
The veto thing is still in here, by the way. I, I'd never.
Thanks for actuallying me.
I, I didn't delete it yet, but we were discussing it.
Yeah, he meant like the previous point of discussion was removing it.
TJ, where are you from?
Where am I from? Uh, what's that supposed to be? Like.
Where, where the, where the hell did you live before you moved to Los Santos?
I mean, I've been in Los Santos for a very long time. Why?
You sound like Michael Simone for a second.
Uh, I don't sound European.
He sounds like he's from the south to me.
You know, I do have a southern relative that kinda sounds like this, but nah, that's not me though.
Uh, don't talk like that, that's weird.
Okay.
Alright, so if we look at this, if I remove, um, following council approval, the final sign off will be required from treasurer. Just put the council reserves right for final approval. That makes sense? It's on eight there. If you can see what I have highlighted.
So, no more. Okay, what was I gonna say instead?
Uh, so following, uh, council, uh, the, the council. I, I mean, I can wordsmith it, but basically the council, after council vote, um. Approval has occurred, et cetera. These things are subject to be changed immediately afterwards.
So, mayor can do all the, is that just government salary or is that all salaries?
Uh, that says government and public workers.
So, that includes sanitation and.
Um, well, I guess I should.
Under section three definitions, it says all pretty much everything, all monies and savings.
Yeah, anything that is paid out of the state account.
Which is everything.
Yeah.
Wait, isn't it harder to get the council vote than just the treasurer sign off?
Well, uh, the way that I guess it was being interpreted was that I have a final veto on if I don't like it or not. So, that's what the removal is.
There's a, an and phrasing, right? Whereas both the treasurer and the mayor final sign off, which would imply veto power if you don't sign off on it.
Right, that's what we were moving. So, that's why I, I have it highlighted down there. Uh, so, that would be, I would just wordsmith that slightly, uh, to take out that portion of it and have the council has the power for it.
So, that means the mayor's only gonna be able to make adjustments once a week?
Well, unless we meet as a side parts of it, but yeah, something as drastic that is. Well, not as drastic per se, but something that affects public view or public funding on top of it should at least be discussed, yeah. I mean, a week's not a terribly long spot.
Hell, I'd, I'd rather be in favor of just the mayor and the treasurer doing it together and.
Well, that's kind of.
On an, as, as going basis.
That's why he brought up as a possible issue. I, I would rather work together, but yes.
How about, uh, mayor and the treasurer, uh, and if for some reason one side vetoes it, uh, it can be brought to council by the person who pushed it. Uh, so it's still, if some, if vetoed, can be seen. How about that?
Or if treasurer is absent, one or two.
Or if treasurer is absent, yeah. It doesn't stop anything.
So, it can be done instantaneously, instantaneously if needed.
I, I.
That way you can never be vetoed fully.
In, in theory, I love this idea. Um, what, the, the reality of the situation is though, uh, similar to how. Uh, we kinda got bogged down term one, suggesting penal code changes and stuff, which, uh, is ultimately. Uh, kind of a bastardization of what our, our intended purpose as the council of eight is. Um, I am afraid that stuff like this would bog down our already long meetings with stuff that I could handle, uh, almost instantly. Uh, it, we're making it too top heavy for the meetings. And it's taking away valuable time that we could be spending on, uh, in theory, you know, in theory, if this were to pass. Uh, we would have to dedicate, you know, maybe an hour, maybe two hours to going over all the proposed ideas or changes. Uh, and then, you know, we've got hours after that to go through the actual meeting that should be, uh. Enriching and fleshing out life in Los Santos.
Oh, I, I, I agree with you in that. That's where I think Cantor was just making her point, is that we can do this, you and I, without needing. The entirety of the council side to it. Should something need or we disagree, you bring it to that.
My proposal is just that if he vetoes you, you can still bring it here.
Right, I don't think that we will disapprove very often, my friend.
I don't think so either. Uh, but at the end of the day, I think this is a, a necessary, uh, bureaucratic tape, uh, and it's. As the head of bar said, I, I think that, um, it is small overstepping because you are an unelected official. You were selected by the chief justice. Uh, you are his clerk, essentially. Um, and I think that as I represent the majority of.
I don't, I don't know about, I don't know too much about the clerks.
Cause, sorry, clerical position. Uh, a- a- as the majority.
Everybody else. We all have a vote here.
Okay, fair. Um, as the majority elected.
Down in some shithole.
I'm not, I'm not putting you down, cause I honestly, I'm super impressed with this, uh, and I'm super impressed that you took the initiative to this. And, and it, it is not a simple thing that you just tried to do right now, even without Solomon Walker, who I know is in your gang. Who I know that if he was here, you would have a much better chance of passing this, but you still came here and you fucking tried. And that speaks so much to your fucking character that I'm actually super impressed. I'm super fucking impressed. Uh, that said. I, I don't think that right now, uh, with my history and my record. That it, it is warranted for a selected position like the treasurer to have as much power as is stated in this document. Uh, as the mayor who, uh, I currently represent the majority of the people in Los Santos.
While that may be your thought with that, um. I, I'm not sure why you go to Solomon and, and gang and make that a part of it. That's kind of an interesting quip to put in there.
I, I, I highlighted that because it speaks to your, your character and your, your intentions to me. I know that this isn't just a power grab for you. Um, and that, and I'm, I said that as a compliment and I want the people to know. That you are TJ Walker, the treasurer, and not TJ Walker, the A D M C member. I want people to know that because I respect what you brought forth, even though the odds were stacked against you in this meeting. That's why I brought it up.
When I interviewed, uh, I'm going to, once again, uh, put this out there. If you wanna bring it up and you wanna continually put on the side that I'm A D M C. That's the first thing I said to you, Crane. If this is an issue, I put it flat on the table. I come here, business is business.
I told him that already. I told him that already.
That, that's fine.
I know, I know, I know.
I, I leave all that shit on the table. My he, my purpose of being here is for the betterment sides of the city. And you might not think that this is needed now.
I'm not being sarcastic, TJ. TJ, I'm not being, I, I'm genuinely complimenting you.
Uh, what I'm saying is that, Max, when, when whatever hell happens to you at some point in time and you go sail off into the sunset. And everybody else around this table at some point in time may no longer be here. That.
Oh shit.
The vision that we're doing with this is as for the betterment of the city. You may not think that you need it now and you may not, and we may not have to do this, but what I'm saying is that this is some, setting something that has grounds for the future on top of it. Max, when I say that I have lived through an era of more corruption than anyone else in this room. I probably mean that.
I don't, I don't disagree. I've heard stories.
As a strong ass founding father's argument right there, he's basically saying that. We should be like, you know, some of those religious men who voted to not make religion a part of their state.
Much to their dismay.
Saying we should, you know, we should basically limit, uh, ourselves, not for fear of ourselves, uh, but for love of the future.
Uh, my, my issue is that I think the limiting is, uh, is directly detrimental to, uh, fast paced life in Los Santos. And I think the, the people appreciate a mayor who can respond to them, uh, at the drop of a hat. And it is something that I've tried to do term one and something that I'm trying to do term two, uh, and I think it's something that I've done extremely well.
I'm just putting it out there. I just don't want those things, as you described how you responded to it. To be seen as favors or one offs for individuals that may show favoritism in a certain way. It, it's not hard. It may take a, a solid five minutes. That's it.
So, it, here's what happens, okay? Uh, I, I do favor the people. I want them to make money. I want them to make money at the expense of the state. Uh, I want them to feel like I am there for them. Um, and if it ever, if it ever seems like I am. Doing something that is, uh, demonstrably, uh, corrupt in favoring a certain group. Um, that's why you have the ability to export the state account and figure it out. And the check and balance is you suggesting impeachment. Well, you, it, it's, it's a pretty easy process. Um, the check and balance is you suggesting my impeachment to the council. That's the check and balance. It's a very simple one, too. Uh, if you can prove that I've been corrupt, you bring it to the council, I get impeached.
So, let me also just put this out there. Uh, Crane, just quick thing, um, when you all put together the constitution side to it. Um, in, I, I, nowhere in here do I, do I mention impeachment, by the way. Uh, what do you put together? Impeachment doesn't have a statute of limitations, does it, Crane?
Say what?
Impeachment doesn't have a statute of limitations, does it?
Uh, I mean, impeachment would just be a. Impeachment, wouldn't impeachment just be like a, hey, this, this fellow is not.
Impeachment is not a, it's not a, it's not.
It can happen anytime.
It's a, it's a, it's a bureaucratic proceeding essentially, uh, that's handled separately from civil or criminal codes.
Uh, correct, so you're not subject to thirty days.
It would not be subject to a statute of limitations.
So, Max, when you just said that you made a decision that you should have been impeached upon, upon your last thing that Etta did not catch on you. Isn't that technically still at this point impeachable?
Which one?
Last week when you said you acted in a corrupt manner and making sure Cornwood kept his job?
Well, it wasn't really corrupt. I mean, I don't.
I'm, I'm putting.
What, what, what are you guys talking about?
No, his exact words, no.
Let, let them say it, because, because Cantor's been sniping at me the last two hours and I want her, I wanna hear it from her mouth, please.
Sure, that, that was it, you know, uh, since, you know, we're bringing these things up, uh. Sure, that that was it, you know, uh, since, you know, we're bringing these things up, uh, you you've uh admitted twice to uh corrupt things.
What was that?
Uh, last meeting you brought up, uh, that it was a a reach of your power, an overreach of your power, uh, to.
Potentially an overreach of my power.
Right. Perfect. So someone should look into that probably.
Yeah, uh, maybe you should.
Here's, here's the part, right?
I'm a doctor, Max. I actually have a job.
Well, if you were a doctor, then you would have probably spent your time term one advocating for doctors and EMS instead of having my wife write the only fucking thing you brought to this table, Cantor.
What are you even referring to on that?
Drug scheduling. That's your one contribution medically.
You know that Norman Adams wrote that, right? And she didn't write.
You didn't even write it. I did say, I did say that when I presented it, just throwing that out there. But I amended, I amended Norman's.
What have you done for your people if you cannot even do one thing?
Numerous things, Max. If you actually paid attention, I've passed numerous pieces of legislation. I pushed for a pay raise. Uh, I'm, I'm sure I might have pushed for things other people wrote as well with the drug scheduling, uh, but I've got PIPA. Uh, I've got.
Uh, okay. Very good.
Let's see here. Let me pull this up.
Three months, by the way. Three months.
All right, I've got, I brought PIPA, I've got FFO, uh, I drew, I uh did the testing for the drug scheduling. Uh, I brought forward an economic uh economic thing which uh has been taken over by TJ. I was happy to work with him on uh, as well as the more recent, uh, you know, dubbed horny tags. I'm also one of the loudest people in these meetings to make sure that I can advocate for uh my staff uh and the people of the city.
Did you uh, you pull that from the Discord announcement your husband made or is that like off the top of your head? The one that told people to vote for you?
Uh, if you can read, it didn't say that.
Okay, hey, hey, let's, 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 you know, let's, let's bring it back in real quick.
No, it's okay, Max. You know, uh, this is very clearly you just saying you want to maintain the ability to punish and reward anyone at will so that they will do your bidding. Uh, if you want that power, sure, I'll vote yes, let's go, fuck it, it's gonna pass anyway.
The the thing is, is right now, I'm dealing with TJ, who is a good man, uh, who is uh, an unelected official and I'm dealing with someone who cheated to get elected. And you are trying to tell me what is and is not impeachable.
Yeah, okay, then then do something about it. Well, if I if I apparently did something so bad, then fucking do something about it other than extorting me by punishing both EMS and doctors and saying that the only way you will raise the pay is if I admit to a felony offense which would have me made ineligible to sit on the council, which would mean that you have one less person to vote no to you.
Uh, that's fair. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, I think I would much rather prefer someone like you in that chair that I know is not a threat as opposed to someone who might have been elected fairly, who might actually propose and act as a threat actively to me in these meetings.
Max, I got sixty percent of the vote. Uh, how, how much could I have done uh to do that when we have uh over sixty active doctors every month? Uh, and I got forty seven votes, which is sixty percent of the vote. Uh, you know, you can keep making this shit up. I think you're so far up your own ass, you think I actually cheated uh at this point, when that is clearly not what this is. And you know what? I even spoke to the person who showed you that today. They admitted it to me. Uh, and they're fine. I don't not intend to uh out them publicly because I don't want them getting hate for it.
Yeah, you don't want them, don't want to fire them in retaliation like you've done to other doctors, right?
Uh, I have not fired anyone for retaliation about speaking to you. I fired one doctor for giving you splints. Which uh we were told our pay could not be raised if we let that continue to happen.
No, you were told your pay will not be raised if you cannot fire inactive doctors after three weeks.
This was early on. It was one of the first things that uh Crane and uh Neta told me. Uh, doctor pay cannot be increased while medical supplies are being handed out. And y'all, because you think you're so fucking special and can get away with everything, took that from an intern who had to be let go.
You're talking about my wife when she was injured at the the prison?
Yes, so uh technically I didn't know that part. I'm already broke two rules in that fact. There you go.
Okay. So you didn't fire her because she helped my wife?
Was broken.
No, not because it's your wife, because she admitted to giving out medical equipment, which from the tippy top of Derek Shaw is one of our two rules that we cannot break.
Your husband?
It was used in the prison. It didn't leave the prison. She gave it to me and it was used in the prison.
They are not to take medical supplies anywhere outside of the hospital, including the prison. That's been told to them many times.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I can confirm that, by the way. That's, that's not, that's not even their decision. That's like.
She didn't give it to me. She didn't give it to me. She just healed. She just, she just used it.
Uh, that is also against.
That's even worse. That's even worse.
That is worse. That is actually worse. If she was signed in out there, that is even worse.
Look, I'm not, I'm not gonna join in the the personal shit you guys go go on and forth. But if if you're gonna start talking about uh doctors doing medicine outside the hospital, uh, and Jesus, yeah, that's, that's like a nonstarter.
Uh, so I mean, where were we?
Mm hmm.
Uh, so.
What was, what was the other impeachable thing? I'm curious.
Uh, well, it was actually what you had said just not too long ago in the meeting in regards to uh, things that you had done that should have been under investigation that were impeachable, which is the actual quote.
Potent, potentially impeachable. What I'm trying.
Okay, can I, can I, it's just, I'm gonna step in.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Knowing Max, uh, as as well as I have over the first term, I can almost certainly guarantee you uh, that any comment he made to you about uh, you know, something being impeachable or whatnot uh, is one of two things. Either one, it is him being extremely tongue in cheek and using hyperbole to make a demonstration regarding the fact that essentially nothing he has done uh with his public powers is actually worthy of impeachment. And thus he's baiting someone into acting on something that he finds uh humorous, that they would even consider it. Or number two, uh, it is something that is completely fictitious that he is baiting you with. Uh, because not only, there, there is one more thing that I think he likes more uh, than, you know, being tongue in cheek at people, uh, and that is lording over them after his long term concocted plan succeeds. Max fancies himself a mastermind type personality who thinks he can, you know, control all little puppets and blah, blah, blah. Uh, so, you know, I I don't, I don't believe any of this shit for a second that he's done something actually impeachable with the public powers. Uh, and I think that he is uh basically just being a smug little dickhead texting his girlfriend over there. So that's my consensus.
I just pulled my phone up.
Yeah, and that's what you were doing.
Well, I I had a conversation, I had a, I had a conversation with my, I had a conversation with my wife last night where we uh, we literally almost word for word predicted that is exactly what you would say.
Well, that's the reality. I'm not saying it because I'm wrong.
Uh, well, you're not wrong. That's the thing.
Yeah, I know.
All right, so uh, the, go back to the actual thing that we were discussing.
Um, sorry about that there, TJ. Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So uh, the assessment approval, I just reworded that. Uh, take a look to see if that's acceptable on your behalf and if we can meet on the compromise with that. And shit, I mean, it could even be one versus the other. I mean, if you want to do it, whatever, you know, it's, it's, you know. You tell me.
Uh. There are, like I said, there are certain things about this that I like. Um. Section six in particular, uh, I would remove section eight entirely. Um, I would. I don't like. Uh, I I don't like section five because it slows the process down. Uh, in fact, the only thing I actually like out of this is transparency. That's it. I would love for there to be a public way for me to document all of my changes and uh my mentality for them.
Uh, wasn't number five?
Didn't we for a long system?
Yeah.
Yeah. Wasn't number five what you just said that you liked with it? Because I was talking with the Andy stuff. That's exactly what that describes.
No, six.
Uh, no, that's the ability to actually see what's publicly available. The roles and responsibilities is that, that you were trying to get Etta to be empowered to actually go through be the point of contact for funding requests and make those and kind of be the final determinants with it, which oh, oh, twenty minutes ago, that's what you.
I I like, I like that. I I like section four. Um, I think that this is also unnecessarily bogged down because it includes requiring my signature for stuff like that. I think that the treasurer should be able to review stuff like that and to completely just be able to do that themselves. Uh, I don't even, I I like. Um, as so long as you're reporting on what you're doing so that we all know where the money is going. That's it.
So if I strike out uh on five, the mayor's side to that and then strike out on number four also, uh, both the mayor and the mayor's side to that. Those two things, if I remove those, that's less that you have to do. And that then complies with what you're requesting.
It it it's less about uh having less to do. It's more about empowering us on a a middle management level to be able to actively uh, and quickly respond to people and to be able to do that. Uh, like I said, at the snap of a finger, at the drop of a hat, I want people to be able to call you TJ and be like, hey, here's my idea. Can we meet? Boom. One hour later, you decide whether or not that's a good idea. Uh, you don't have to wait a week for the council meeting and then you just give them the money and you make a little report on it and then we all know. Like, that's, that's what I'm about. I I like the quick response time.
And that's, that's why I just removed from your side to it.
Right. Hold on, I gotta question.
That's my philosophy.
What if we could, and I agree with you, Max. I I think you're uh your, your perspective on sort of these middle managers and their little fiefdoms being able to make quick decisions that are, you know, strategic uh, makes for more like, you know, dynamic executive board type, you know, operation. Uh, I, you know, I certainly would always, and I always have reserve the right to do things with the DOJ, so I I can see your perspective on that. Um. What if? What if the treasurer had a big red button?
To do what?
What you mean? To do what?
What's the context behind that?
Uh, to like, like set everything to a null status.
I still don't know what you mean.
Oh, okay.
Well, if the economy is in freefall, what if you had a red button?
Uh, I mean, that's like the ultimate veto right there. Red, gone. I mean, I wouldn't like.
Kind of works against the first thing that you said, right? Like the rainy day fund?
I like the rainy day fund.
Yeah, that's thirty million that we discussed, yeah.
And I will say out loud, um, I did send the economy into a freefall. Uh, I I did. And I also demonstrated that um it was very easy to get it out of that freefall, too.
Well, sure, right? Because we, you know, uh, there's room to do that now because we don't have encumbrances, right? That's not to say we won't.
Hmm. I I think the issue stems from, it's like I was saying earlier, if if things are trending in one direction, eh, it's the trends, there, there, you gotta look at the whole picture, right? And a trend, sure, you might have a trend of like a week that's bad, but how's that trend looking over the course of like a month, two months?
Well, he just said that he literally just did it.
You kind of have to let it play out.
Yeah, I I get what you're saying, but he literally just said that he did that.
No, I know, but that's, no, what I'm saying is to his.
What's to prevent him from doing it again?
Sure, but I mean.
I I'm going to do it again. Let's be clear about that.
Yeah, like he even, he even prefaced it because he said it's, it's gonna happen because of how he's planning on playing things out over the course of the next three months. So if if.
That's my fiscal policy.
Yeah, if if you have that freefall hit again and then you come in big red button, but you're not letting the plan play out, then it might make things worse because you're coming and putting a stop to it before the plan's in place. It's, it's done being put in place, I should say. Right?
So let, let me just back up real quick because I I'm trying to understand this. Uh, and I'm, I'm trying to just kind of wrap my head around it. A lot, there's been a lot of discussions, a lot of points back and forth. Um. So Max, you're saying that you wouldn't mind if I just go ahead and for most of this stuff, just approve it as is?
For events. Yeah, specifically.
Correct. So that's, that's the number, that's the section four. I'm trying to go, kind of bring us back into, you know, on track here, kind of going down one by one with this so that we're not just making overarching things. Uh, so that's, that's section four. Okay, so that's why I removed the language on the mayor's side if that's what you're interested in. Is that amenable?
I'm gonna be honest, I wouldn't want state funds in this instance to be uh amended to just be for ad hoc state fund requests rather than uh unilateral uh state funds.
Can you define that?
Like ad hoc requests, uh, things like Andy Jones, like for your example, right?
Uh huh.
Um, things of that nature or the, what we discussed earlier, I don't want to make Ursula have to edit more footage, but um, you know, things like that. Ad hoc requests.
Yeah, those will still be fine.
Paying only those.
I'm still not sure. I'm not following, sorry.
I'm saying to amend the definition section in section three to change the definition of state funds.
Uh, all money is controlled by the government? You don't have an ad hoc fund or a different side fund on top of that. There is, there is one pot. The other one that we were talking about is.
But we're, we're just, when we're discussing it, I'm, I'm concerned that the phrasing uh, I I'm concerned about the phrasing and what it means in other places of this.
Uh, the city's government are intended for public use. So the money that people are paying into the government that is then being put to use for them, salaries, compensation, funding requests. If if, I mean, I don't have to dumb this down even further, but we all pay taxes. This is a public system that should be used for the people. I I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Uh. Yeah, I'll just, I'm just gonna cook on it. I'll, I'll, come back to me.
Yeah, I I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm not following right now and that could just be me being everywhere with uh all the information that we talked about. That's what I was trying to bring you back on side. Uh, okay, so that's fine. Section five, I deleted your side to that, um, because you don't want that, right?
Repeat that?
Uh, section five, I deleted your portion of that. To review funding requests, provide secondary approvals uphold. You're basically just saying, listen, uh, TJ, trust you, when the request came in, you don't need to do a secondary approval. I trust treasure, do it, go.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's why that is outlined or striking out there. Okay?
Okay.
So I'm going through each one, section six, you said that you liked. Section.
Why, why don't we, why don't, why don't we do this?
Yeah.
Um, let's make section six and four their own like report slash X, I guess. Uh, that would be good. Uh, those are two very good uh legislations in my opinion.
Uh, okay, the other ones are just defining things. So I mean, it goes basically up until one through six at that point. And then seven is just say very much uh, just says we have to vote on this act.
Mm hmm. And uh, and number eight, I would backspace entirely.
Uh. So you want all in full control salary to just send it into a spiral again?
Uh, yeah. Yes.
Hmm.
I I I will remind you that the state account is almost uh at its peak right now.
Uh, yes, that's, that's, that is fine.
The courtesy of my actions.
I want to say something. I want to say something because I think this is very important. Even in a time where somebody embezzled hundreds of millions of dollars for a fictitious spaceship program, uh, the state account was still a better than it has ever been. So take that for what you will.
So what you're saying is it shouldn't still have happened, but the city account is still fine afterwards. So regardless, you're giving the, it shouldn't happen, but it did happen, but we were still fine.
Well, it it worked differently back then. Um. Right now, uh, there are a lot of people who depend on their salaries being doled out from the state account. So they're, they're, we eh, right now, um, eh, unless I'm mistaken, the state account is paying for more than it ever has, which presents the very real possibility that it could actually reach zero uh in the case of say, uh, let's say that somehow another mayor comes in and then wants to build a fucking spaceship and somehow gets a hundred million dollars for it. Um. That the state account would not, it it would, it would get so hard fucked that that situation that Crane just outlined could never happen. Uh, fortunately, we don't have to worry about that because Crane and uh the the lady who was interim mayor. Uh, fortunately, we don't have to worry about that because Crane and uh the, the lady who was interim mayor worked together and decided, hey, maybe there should be a check and balance on the mayor randomly spending a hundred million dollars. And it's you.
Correct. Right. All I'm putting in there. It's all just legitimizing. I'm not trying to add unnecessary steps. That, that's it. If it comes to that point where it gets to, I want to build a fucking spaceship program. I don't even think that launched, by the way, dude. Anyway.
It didn't.
Okay.
No, it got sabotaged and they filed a two hundred million dollar insurance claim. There was a one sheet of paper that literally just said insurance claim, and then it said an amount to be paid.
Okay, that, that sounds like Lang Buddha, alright.
Sounds like some shit I would do, huh?
Well, I mean, it was actually out there. It was out in Sandy. That entirety of the program was, was there. You could go look at it if you weren't around them. So silos did exist in their, uh, miss rocket did exist. All those things were there. So I'm not, I'm not trying to work against you. What I'm saying, I I'm literally just trying to, as Crane put it, it's because you could do it, doesn't mean you should do it.
Uh, well, I did it for a very specific purpose, and it was during a time and period where people were vying and struggling to purchase a car or a house or an, or a, a trailer. Uh, and I deliberately crafted the system that was provided to me by the state to fatten as many people's pockets as I could that were working legally, that would be getting money from the state account. Uh, and the cost of that, of course, was that for a brief period of time, about a month and a half, month and a half, the state account made no money. Uh, and once uh it was time to pull back, like I, I'd set a number for myself. I was like, I don't want to go below forty million dollars because I think that's too dangerous. Once uh it got close to that, I reverted the changes that I made. Uh, or, or rather, one of, just one of, uh, two of the changes that I made, and all of a sudden, the state account was in the green again, and we're good. So it was, it was my intention always to make the state operate at a loss for the sake of the people of Los Santos on the street, and it worked. And I'm gonna do it again.
And let's be fiscally responsible for it. If it does occur, as you say, that it's not absolutely crippling.
And it won't be. Yeah, no, yeah, of course. No, I mean, look, my, my wife has a, a master's in finance. Um, you're a smart guy. Um, I, it really was as simple as me setting a, a lower limit and being like, I, it's too dangerous to go beyond this number. Uh, no matter what happens, if it gets too close to that, then changes have to be made. Um, but everything's great right now. Um, I think in the last seven days, we almost made twenty million dollars. Twenty million dollars in seven days. That is fucking crazy. You know what the best part is? Um, I haven't had to drop anyone's pay. Um, I've raised people's pay, except for group six. I did lower group six, back down to default numbers.
And that's entirely fine. Just putting it for the future, Max.
Yeah, that's fair. Uh, I mean, I so do you disagree with removing section eight entirely?
Uh, what portion of section eight? Like, is there a specific line? Uh, so if you go line by line, which one are you not, not good with?
Uh, let's see. Proposal along the justification of the adjustments, including financial forecast shall then be forwarded to the council for discussion. Don't like that. Uh, approval of salary adjustments must be obtained through majority vote of the council. Don't like that. Uh, the treasurer and the mayor will work together for salary adjustment. Should the treasurer and or mayor not be available, proposed will go through the council for final vote. Don't like that. Uh, no salary adjustments shall be implemented without adherence to this process. Obviously don't like that. Um, I do like the treasurer assessing salary adjustments. Uh, but at the same time, once again, um, I don't want to have to wait for you to do that. Uh, and I'm doing my own assessment, and I will say, uh, there exists a, a realm of possibility where you are more qualified to make those assessments. Um, eh, maybe you're more college educated than I am, maybe, maybe you have more experience with finance, with economies, so on, so forth. Um, Los Santos's economy is a very specialized thing. Uh, and I think more than anyone actually in this whole room, and probably in this whole city, I am the most qualified person to assess and to make adjustments because I know what is possible and I know what can be done and I know what will happen. Uh, and once again, as I have proven. Um, and I think it adds an extra layer of bureaucracy that I am not able to stomach.
All right, um, so let me propose this then to you real quick, uh, as you just kind of mentioned it. Instead of putting it as a limiter um, as to what you can or cannot do, then why don't we just empower and say, just as you can, I can as well, and that's, that's it.
You want to be able to adjust it as well?
Uh, um, you don't have to go through checks, you don't have to go through balances. If you can do it, I can do it. There's no need to go back and forth and try to limit that.
Um, if you want that kind of power, you could run for mayor, TJ. That's what I think. Uh.
Well, you gave me the other ones to go through funding requests, so it's not too much of a difference. I can go through seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can go through what's just done in a week, which is, you know, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred. Not saying I'd do it, but it still gives that power, so we're not bickering back and forth about it.
Fair. Um, I mean, if you're keen on keeping some of this or, um, we've almost been talking about this for an hour. I don't mind. Um, so what we do, we've, what we've done in the past for stuff like this is, uh, if we, if it, if it ever got to a point where it seemed like we had to super discuss something, typically we would table it until next week. Um, so unless this is in a state that you think is uh votable right now, um, which I mean, I think potentially it could be votable, uh, we could just wait till next week, uh, with a, uh, with the, the revised tabled version or whatever.
I think it's actually complete now. We went through line by line and said what we don't like, so I don't foresee that changing whatsoever. I'm just removing the stricken things now, and I think we can vote on it.
Okay, um.
It is, it's done. That's done.
Okay, uh, who shall start this vote? Uh, we'll let TJ start, and then we'll go left.
All right, all in favor? Sorry, my left? Cancel?
Yeah.
All right, let me do the recording for it. Uh, Crane?
Uh, hold on a sec. I'm gonna look at what, what I'm voting on.
All right.
So did anything change with section eight?
Uh, we basically just said that the treasurer and mayor may assess and change salaries. That's, everything else was taken out. The limitations has to go through approvals, has to go through a council vote, has to be checked and balanced, et cetera, by everybody. It's just gives dual power, and we don't have to fight on it. We just go with it. That's what changed.
So. Wait, so it's like whoever goes to bed last?
I mean, all technicalities, sure.
Yeah.
Shit, Maxwell should have been in favor of that then. Fucking guy never sleeps. Um.
I haven't voted yet.
Ah. I'm voting on the whole thing. God damn.
I did suggest that it be broken up.
I'm sold on everything uh but eight, but mostly because I just I, I, I don't think that. I don't know. Uh, I'm gonna vote no if I have to vote on everything.
That's, that's kind of the way I feel about this as like an omnibus type of bill. I have no idea what that just meant.
I mean, it's like when you put a bunch of stuff in one thing.
It's kind of an omnibus bill. Uh, Cornwood's next vote. Cornwood?
All right, so how about this? If I take out eight right now? If we take out eight? Shall we revoke that? If we do that separately?
Well, let me see.
Let's just have the vote first, and then we can discuss amendments and proposals.
All right, that's fine, okay.
Cornwood, what's your vote?
Uh, I'm, I'm still kind of looking through it a little bit. I, I'm, I'm just gonna be honest. I, I feel like and I know. Hmm. There, there's definitely parts of this that are good, right? I mean, there's, there's definitely the, the whole cover your ass portion, okay? There's the accountability, there's the transparency, right? But there, there's, each one of those things are a different thing. So to Judge Braun's point, it is when, when you got an omnibus situation, I, I think it's just too much all at once. Even if you take part eight out, I, I this is too much for me all at once. I, I know y'all are leaning towards it, but I, I, I'm a no on this. I, I just, I don't agree. There's too much at once.
Brief, got a brief interjection, eh, like, removing eight, entitling this like, like additional duties and responsibilities of the treasurer, I think uh, would be great. Although, uh, removing the transparency section and presenting it as it, like, its own thing, uh, so that it can be wait, hold on. Now I'm tripping myself up.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, ignore everything I just said. I'm a fucking idiot. Uh, Murphy?
Yes.
What's your vote?
Oh, it's my vote.
Hmm.
Um, yeah, I, I think that this, this, uh, this stands to percolate a bit more and be discussed a bit more, maybe for, you know, uh, another week and be tabled.
Want me another two hour discussion with this? I'm happy to do it.
I mean, I think, I think I can endure a two hour discussion if it's in the best interest of the public.
What about this is not in the best interest? Please let me know, because this is all about transparency. This is all about the people. There's nothing in here that is not for people or transparency that is deterministically against anything in the best interest of this city. So if you're gonna stay here and say it's not, then I'm very concerned real quick.
I'm gonna defer to Crane and vote now and discuss amendments later, and a- as it is right now, without further discussion, it'd be a no for me.
Siobhan?
Uh, no.
Also no.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so let's discuss, uh, what would change that?
Removal of section eight entirely. Um, I don't think it is. Uh, I don't think it is in the best interest of the people of Los Santos if, uh, an unelected position like the treasurer has the ability to assess and change salaries. Um, I
Can I ask a question? We, we, we in the beginning had a number of discussions uh and meetings that I thought were very productive about, uh, the adjustment of salaries. We talked about cops, we talked about EMS, we talked about all these different things, right?
Mm hmm.
Um, now with the police, I can understand that, uh, the way that the PCP has manifested in your first term, right, when that was authorized. Um, you know, it, it made sense that that superseded sort of what we had been doing because that was targeted uh, at a very narrow and very specific task, right? Of micromanaging one department.
Uh, the P, the PCP didn't have anything to do with my quota system. That's something that I would have presented to them regardless, after I was gifted the, uh, the powers by the state to adjust their pay.
Okay, and I guess, I guess, okay, so let me, let me ask that. Um, what, what is the, I, I understand, for example, your, your concept about Angus and Mosley's, right? That makes sense to me. Um, what is the emergent need for the ability to rapidly without, uh, council discussion, change, let's say, uh, lawyer pay?
Um, what's the emergent need for the restriction of that power? That, I mean, there, this is a present, presentation that was designed to restrict that ability. What is the emergent need for this?
Well, hold on, we didn't restrict it, actually. We went line by line and got rid of restrictions for this and actually.
Boy, eh, when it was initially presented.
I'm not, I'm not asking this in relation to solely his legislation. I'm saying that I, I understood, uh, and I understand the the argument about why it doesn't make sense to have a check and balance on the mayoral powers be in emergent situations, but I'm saying what what kind of emergency or what kind of scenario would forego the potential for like mutual discussion?
Well, first of all, we only ever discussed at the council of eight because, uh, the mayor did not have the power to make an adjustment. Uh, it was our only method of having our voices heard was to meet in this room and then to make suggestions on pay changes to then be given to you, uh, which would then be forward to the state, uh, which there are some forwarded changes that haven't even happened. Uh, and I'm pretty confident, I don't, I don't know if it was, uh, Siobhan, what was the, the one um, actual pay that didn't actually go through and get changed? I think it was maybe, um, DOC, there, like, there was.
I remember it was us. We talked about it.
Oh, yeah, it was us.
It was us for two hundred dollars an hour.
We talked about that. It was no, the, the doctor one was the one that didn't go through because the state said that they were um, worried about corruption at the time, and there were several people removed as a result of that investigation.
Doctors removed?
I think that's before what we're referring to. That was like one of the first few weeks. Um, I think that was way back then.
Well, no, it was, it was longer than that.
No, but our two hundred dollar an hour pay didn't go through. And we did that.
Okay, what is, what is, what is city council currently?
Uh, nine hundred, I think?
Yeah, nine hundred.
That was what we were saying.
Okay, and what is it supposed to be?
It's supposed to be eleven hundred, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that, that, that's why, uh, with what power and, uh, actionable things I can do, uh, it's good for me to do because at the end of the day, there are people that will just drop the ball on the state level. Uh, and that's effect, that's effectively what, um, that's wh- when we were making these suggestions and changes, that was the only way that we could do it. Now I can do it. Uh, now I have been doing it, uh, to great success.
So that speeds up the decision or the process, uh, whether the decision is made by you or us, right? Uh, now it no longer has to be forwarded to the state. We can just have a quick chat and you walk off and do it, like has been done a couple times, including last week with EMS pay. Uh, it still increases the speed on it. Uh, I fail to see how it makes a, a discussion unnecessary.
Unnecessary?
Yes, you're arguing, you're arguing that there shouldn't be a discussion. You should just be able to do it.
Um, and I am arguing that because I have done an excellent job. I have done an amazing job.
There are many people that would disagree with that. The amount of people we have coming in complaining to us about what you've done with I know toe, PD, whatever, since they heard about our pay decreasing, decreased.
Yeah.
It's not even just EMS and doctors. Uh, I promise there are plenty of people who would disagree with that.
Well, they should have voted differently.
Uh, I did, I think they did, which is why, uh, you have less votes than last time, uh, and have a deputy mayor that disagrees with you. These people tried to get you out.
They failed. Why did they fail, you think?
I don't know. There's enough people that, uh, you paid off, probably.
So you're accusing me of paying people off to get elected?
Oh, no. Uh, what I'm accusing you of is what you were directly stating that you were doing, uh, is creating, uh, this big bubble where everyone gets paid, uh, this perfect amount, uh, to make them all really happy so that they revote for you.
Um, well, see, that's the thing. I didn't know I was actually running for reelection until about like two. Um, well, see, that's the thing. I didn't know I was actually running for reelection until about like two weeks beforehand and most of my fiscal policies. Yeah, my, yeah, my wife, my wife was gonna run. Yeah, yeah, totally.
So would it not make her look good if you, uh, use your powers to do so?
Uh, yeah, I suppose it would, but, uh, she didn't run. I ran.
So it still benefited you.
The golden age had nothing to do with anybody running for election and everything to do with performing the role and it was, changes were made as soon as Max had the ability to do so. He would have done it sooner if he had the ability to do it sooner. So the timing just happened to line up.
Question asked was, uh, that you have done an amazing job, uh, and what I bring up is that many people disagree. Uh, and are unhappy, including doctors who have come to me who stated that they voted for you and now regret it.
Unfortunate. They should talk to their liaison and get their pay fixed.
Uh, we do not intend to give into your demands.
You don't want to make it so that you guys are held to a higher standard and thus can be paid more by the state by way of not hiring felons and that you you don't want to have to go through every twenty one days.
It is not my decision, Max. I'm not a board member. I know, uh, no.
You're married to one.
On this, no, he is not. He's an attending like me.
Okay. All right, well, uh, your pay will remain at that, uh, and in fact, until Happy speaks with me, it will also remain. Where it is, uh, I don't think he's a good leader. Uh, I heard again recently that someone had to wait. Uh, a month and a half for an interview to get hired at EMS.
Okay, if we're moving on to that, I have had a discussion with him about it. Um, the issues occurred with the fact that their P and T department, um. Numerous times, uh, at this point has has left once they were placed in the position. Uh, so they are currently as high command, uh, doing, uh, the entirety of hiring and firing. Uh, I've offered some, uh, solutions that will help speed it up, uh, as well as offered to assist with, uh, putting people into those positions. Um, I've had extensive talks with them. Uh, do I think they are in the best state? No, uh, however, uh, that was not intentional from Happy's point. Uh, he is just trying to work off of the fact that people, uh, have left, so they are doing what they can in the meantime.
You, uh, did you bring to the board members my, uh, two demands?
I spoke with Janetti, um.
What did he say?
Uh. He was just uninterested in it.
Okay, uh, did you didn't speak to anyone else on the board? What about Pixie Tarantino?
To be very frank, uh, Pixie is not incredibly interested with having these kind of discussions with me, uh, when I try, uh, she does not want to be involved.
Uh, and who is the the last member of the board?
Derek Shaw. Uh, I. I struggled to get a response from him on a good day. Uh. That's about that.
Well, it it sounds. Sounds like the hospital's in trouble then, if you're not able to meet a simple. Uh, board meeting in order to discuss having all the the dozens and dozens of doctors that voted for you have a fair and livable wage.
If you have an issue with the fact I can't speak with Derek Shaw, say it up with him himself, uh. We do a great job of running the day to day, um, and our doctors know that. And I do everything I can to make sure, uh, that they are happy and well taken care of, uh, and I've had many discussions with them regarding the pay. Uh, and they're all in ignorance that, uh, we will weather this if we have to, uh, that it is not worth, uh. Giving in to other demands of a terrorist.
Um. Former terrorist.
Sure.
Uh, two-time mayor. Uh, and also the, the the purpose of your role is to represent the will of the average doctor. So you're saying that the average doctor. In the hospital is okay with making $500 per hour. Because they think that that making it so that felons cannot work at that hospital. Uh, and that inactive doctors should be fired after twenty one days. You that, those are the two, you told them that and they they are okay with weathering the storm.
Twenty one days number is something, uh, I've only just heard. You didn't bring that up before, uh, you seem to have no issue.
I said, I said, I said three weeks. I said three weeks, twenty one days.
Uh. To be clear, no, they they really don't have an issue. I've brought it up with many people, uh, including at our meetings, um. And, uh, and yeah, uh, I believe there was, if anyone was around that day. The Twitter was being stams, uh, spammed with W cantor or something, uh, because I I said, uh. I said, look, uh, I have you guys' back to a fault, uh, but also, uh, I will do what is best for the hospital as a whole, more so than any individual.
Okay, well.
And I've worked, uh, every single day since then and will continue to do so at whatever pay rate we are at.
I'm proud of you. Um, I think. What I'm learning now is that your leadership. Um, is unwilling. To negotiate. Uh, what about, w- would you guys be able to do four hundred an hour?
For what?
For your pay.
Request here.
For the same, the same request.
Same request? Uh, we're not interested in meeting the demands.
Uh, three hundred an hour.
You offering to to lower our pay to make the demands? I I mean, you know. No, if we weren't interested before, we still aren't.
Okay, well. Back down to two fifty it is. At least until you guys are willing to, uh, negotiate.
Perfect, uh, no, I will not negotiate with terrorists.
Kind of, I mean, I'm just looking at the thing there. Isn't that almost like basically kind of extortion? You're trying to compel another person.
Oh, he already did that. Uh, he blatantly told me I had to admit to a felony.
State employee to perform an official act within the course or scope of their employment?
Well, see, Max is for himself, the head of the PD, so that everyone's too scared to prosecute him for it.
I mean, that's.
Definitely not because you guys don't have any fucking proof.
Uh, look, you can be very loud. You can toot your own horn about W cantor, W cantor, but at the end of the day. We we are playing by new rules. The mayors of the now and mayors of the future will have the power to do this to you. Until you do something about it. And if you are willing to sit in your hospital, if you are willing to sit in your hospital and patronize.
We will continue focusing on the people and not you.
Very good. Listen here, okay? Um, that hospital functions without doctors. It does. The only necessary branch of that medic.
Is that the argument you're gonna make? You think people are gonna be happy if, uh, you do that?
I I don't give a shit about that, okay? The only part of that hospital that needs to be there are people doing EMS and that department is fucked up. Okay, so if you think you are making a statement by sitting in your hospital and saying, guys, Max is an evil man. He he's extorting us. Uh, he's a, he's a terrible guy and he he really.
I like spreading the truth. I think people have the the right to know. You're all about transparency now, right?
Yeah, and I'm gonna be entirely transparent. I think you are a sham. I think the head of the board of your medical board, when they come around, they are frauds. I think that all of you are so lazy that you have allowed a clique and environment to form inside of that hospital that is so. Unhealthy that people are not allowed to progress in any meaningful manner. I think that the EMS are similarly afflicted. And I, and shut the fuck up, listen to me, okay? I had countless people come up to me about what it is like to work in your hospital.
Numerous of those people come to me, admit that they did that and tell me that they were wrong.
Yeah, I wonder why they would tell their boss that they.
Or anything. Uh, I've already asked your silly little whistleblower thing, uh, because we do not intend to punish anyone for attempting to better their situation.
Little whistleblower.
We have their back. I was very clearly an attempt to protect the people who have spoke to them about the hospital. Uh, and I, uh, I have no issue with that.
Yeah. You think I am, you think that the whistleblowing protection act was because two people came to me. And told me that your work environment sucks so much cock that they were afraid to present themselves as potential runners? You think that's why that was written?
I spoke to the individual who has talked to you, uh, today, actually. Um, there is no issue. We, uh, we're on good terms, uh, talking through. She apologized for the situation, uh, and then we're good. You know, you can keep creating issues that don't exist, um, but no, I I have my doctors back no matter what they want to do.
See, that's, that's, that's my problem. I I I think that the city would be what better well-served by a cast of doctors and a head of board or board or whatever. That were not any of you. Um, that's the bottom line.
Max, your only issue, uh, has been a couple interns who at the time were mad they didn't get promoted, uh, and me. You have no actual idea on how the hospital runs or what our real issues are. You for some reason think that it's okay about the doctors treating people outside of the hospital or giving out medical equipment and you think you're, the issue. It is, is me somehow. The person who, uh, who worked, uh, a hundred and forty hours last month to make sure that I was there every second to make sure that all of their voices were heard. The person that has constant meetings with every single level of the chain of command, the person that has pushed for the most progress, the newest member of the hospital command that has taken the hospital from a sad. Overly serious place where everyone felt too scared to do, uh, whatever they had to to treat people. Uh, to something where, uh, everyone has the right to try their best. Uh, and I will hire, uh, anyone to give them a chance. I've hired someone with a missing arm. I've hired, uh, blind people. I've I've. I've literally turned this place around. Uh, you would actually love it. In fact, you sat in on that one interview we did. Y'all loved it.
It was great.
I think that you would love the hospital if you sat aside for a second, ignored your hatred of me for two fucking minutes. Just to realize that the hospital is in the best place it has ever been.
Okay, um, I will, I will admit that culturally that might be the case for you. Uh, I don't think it's the case for everyone. Uh, and if your argument is that you are in essential service in Los Santos. That deserves to be respected, deserves to be paid more than senior buns workers, why the fuck are you hiring blind doctors? Why the fuck are you hiring, hiring felons? Why are you hiring doctors with no arms?
People who can do a good job, uh, we're not gonna discriminate against them.
Okay. Uh, we can.
Can we go back on topic here? I think we really just, you know. This, we're sidetracked a lot here.
Wants to have these conversations. If he has an issue with my leadership, I'll talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it sucks.
Okay, why?
But but I will say.
I just told you why.
What? Because people are scared to come on duty? Those people that have talked to me and said that that isn't correct, that maybe they just, at the time were, uh, mad they didn't get promoted or something?
Yeah, no, that's not why.
Numerous people. Okay, then why?
Because if I have a heart attack, I gotta worry about the armless Tandy Miller doing my heart surgery. That's why.
So now you're mad that we haven't get kept unemployment, uh, when, uh, when I was hearing that.
It's not about, it's not about.
That we were?
Uh, no, your whole, your whole point and argument is that the the hospital is so essential and so necessary and must be here and that you are doing the best job and that everything is great. Um, but at the same time, you you think that you deserve to be paid more than $250 when you're unable to.
I do not give a fuck about the pay. I could have bowed my fucking head and been real careful and just begged you for a pay raise and I'm sure I could have got it. I do not give a fuck about that right now. I care about defending the fact that we are doing our fucking best and there are amazing people in that hospital who are trying every fucking day for this city. Uh, and I will not have you shit on that.
Uh, I think they're doing great. They're doing a great job. Uh, and I bet they'll be able to do it.
They do not feel that you think that, to be clear.
I know, seriously, I do. Um. And I think that they'll keep doing it for two fifty an hour.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. They likely will. Uh, in fact, you know, I'm sure they'll, they'll love to hear about this.
Good. Uh, that'll free up some money for other aspects of development.
Go for it. I I hope your wife has fun running next term and getting, uh, not a single vote from any essential employer.
Okay, I I just have to step in, alright? Cause. A- at the point in which the the EMS isn't being taken care of, that that affects my job as a police officer. So. We we already have an issue of like not having enough EMS on duty and I don't know if the pay really fixes that. Right? There needs to be something else that's done, but we had a scene yesterday at the, uh, Orchardville area white construction building. And, uh, we had like eight, nine people down. So something needs to be done. I I, we had one EMS there. I got Karen Lang Buddha screaming in my ear. I I I need to go, I need to go. Somebody help me up, you know? It's like, holy shit, okay? We and we're trying to do scene control. We got. Uh, we got a bunch of people just kind of showing up, seventy eights call essentially. It's, I mean, it's a disaster because we only have one EMS. I roll up my damn sleeves. I'm trained, so I start helping people out, right? And that shouldn't have to happen. We we should have people there and training. We just have to find a way to support people and 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 bickering and bitching and moaning and all this kind of shit. It it ain't gonna help fix that. Cause it, cause now my job's being affected, even though I'm not a part of this shit. It pisses me the hell off, okay? I'm sorry. No, I don't mean to raise my voice.
You're fine.
But we gotta, we gotta find a way to fix this shit, alright? And we're, you're just throws all the time. It ain't gonna work. So we gotta find a way to support our our hospital workers. We gotta find a way to support our EMS and there's gotta be some middle ground that's found.
I'll be happy to discuss.
We'll figure some shit out, we will.
Pay is just not a great motivator for activity or competent command, unfortunately.
No, I I don't disagree. Like we talked about last meeting, it's more morale, uh, and, uh, some people are very demoralized by the fact that the mayor does not value what they do. I will be there either way. I know many people that will, uh, but if you want to make the statement, uh, that they are not worth, uh. The tiny amount, uh, the drop in the bucket that it is for the state budget, uh, then you go ahead and do that.
Okay, so so let's not worry about the pay. Don't worry about the pay for a minute because obviously it don't work, okay? They got their pay tripled last week and we still only had one EMS there. So what else is there that we can do to help out the EMS? That is not related to pay without touching the pay?
You're bored everyone with bad personalities.
Okay, I am.
And the EMS will be happier to be at work because they'll talk to people who actually want to be there.
It's a.
Does that work for cops too?
I. It's a, that's a bold response. I mean, I guess it might make things better for them.
Bold problems require bold solution.
I don't necessarily disagree.
I mean, is there, is there anything we can do to make the EMS have more fun?
So, I'm be honest, uh, last time I did volunteer EMS, I just went around rubbing dirt and everything. That was pretty fun.
That sounds great.
Even if the person just got shot in the head, I just rubbed dirt in the wound and said suck it up pussy and then got me their feet.
That would probably work better than half the shit that we give people. I don't know what the hell is in there, my fact.
I don't disagree. Uh, it's sanitary, be surprised. Yeah, it's a, it's a real thing. Absolutely it is. Uh, for the EMS, obviously, you know, they they've had requests, um, a lot of it's financial. I think they are in an unfortunate position where there's not. That much that helps other than financial because, uh, when their pay is lowered, they essentially have to work other jobs just to afford to be on duty. Um, I can say from the doctor's side, um, it's, it's the culture that encourages people to be around more than anything. It really is that morale thing. Um, for EMS, I. I don't hear complaints. Um, they they seem to be happy as a group. Maybe, uh, I think these fundraising events will help to, uh, increase morale as well. Um, but they've, you know, been planning those for a long time, uh, not Max motivated on that. Uh, but hey, you know, uh, now they have to instead of just want to, so fuck it. Uh, they just, I just want to be able to afford to, I guess, uh. I know my doctors are happy anyway, and I'll keep doing my best for that, um, but EMS, I think, uh, they are just in a rough spot.
Okay, what if we gave EMS guns?
I love guns. I don't know if they love guns. I do, I I'm on board for that.
Hmm.
We did suggest that.
They deputize, they deputize themselves too much.
They go.
Can, can EMS care, are they allowed to carry a civilian firearm on duty?
Uh, I don't believe so, um.
What if y'all change that rule? So so at least they don't feel like they're sitting ducks, so they can carry their civilian firearm and they can stand their ground.
Who's targeting the EMS?
They've been robbed quite a bit.
They did get robbed, yeah, for medical equipment, absolutely.
All the time.
I don't think they're targeted as, uh, targets to harm, but to rob, absolutely.
Cause they want their IFAX and shit.
Yes.
Why don't we just make a law about making it illegal to have like IFAX or whatever?
We already have.
It is, yeah.
Oh, okay, cool. Problem solved.
Well, I mean, the law, I mean, somebody's got it.
Ah, I see what Crane did there.
Yeah.
Law is not gonna fix shit. Yeah, I get it.
I mean, yeah, uh, that's why that's not a request of mine, right? Um, I think the the law covers their biggest concerns, um. I mean, you know, to, it's, it's unfortunate, but a lot of what they specifically are looking for is just the ability to do their job, um. And the finances have kind of, kind of fucked that. I know for us, uh, it's, it's just the culture that, um, that keeps people on duty, but they're in a rougher spot. They can't really have a culture. They can't afford to be on duty.
I think, look, you you got seven fifty right now. Let it ride out. We all know money, money ain't a huge motivator.
We said it was two fifty.
For doctors.
No, those doctors. Uh, EMS EMS is gonna go up to, uh. Uh, one thousand after this meeting.
I'm, I'm just gonna say this every time that we have these meetings, every time we discuss this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. It's a great feel-good and everyone gets pats on the back and people will temporarily be happy. Uh, pay adjustments have never solved anything in the long term. They will not continue to do so, in the rest of my case.
Right.
I mean, you said it's the first week of our first.
Yep, you did. Uh, I will say. Um, it has helped out. Yep, you did. Uh, I will say, um, it has helped out my wife a lot. Uh, we were able to afford a new house because of the, uh, the adjusted pays or whatever, but I, you, you. You did say that and I didn't believe you. And then I raised EMS pay to 1.3K and then there weren't any EMS on duty.
It literally doesn't matter.
I don't disagree. Uh, for me, it is the statement you're making, uh, of which I'm trying to bring up because people, uh, do not believe you care about them, uh, and not do I.
I think the hospital could do better. Uh, I think that they should be held to a higher standard and I would love, uh, you to meet that demand. So that I can justify raising your pay accordingly.
Sure, understood. I'm glad to hear that my, uh, my discussion with Happy, uh, helps you convince you that they deserve something, uh, and if you'd like to discuss that anymore, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay.
I, I'm telling you, you, you letting them sons of bitches carry, that's a morale increase.
I don't disagree. I love my gun.
Yeah, at least you feel safe. You feel like you can take care of yourself. But I guess that's not a city council thing, but fixing morale problem.
Okay, are we done with that one? Well, well, we got that out? We're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we take a break? Can we take a break?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Feel like everybody could use a type five and we just haven't like gotten a chance to call for it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanna finalize that, clear that out. If I just delete eight, just amend it, revote it, and that would be my final thing for the day. We good?
So, uh, whi- which one, where?
Eight.
So, for a long time, we've operated on the assumption that, um, we don't. Give money to various departments.
And police aren't allowed to be supported by anybody other than themselves.
And I'm afraid that, I'm afraid that section four is kind of establishing that we would be able to do that.
Uh, sort of like asking me to give Suarez 35 grand.
That was for his max pay thing.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna pay that, I'm, I'm gonna pay that out of pocket.
Are you gonna pay that out of pocket? Okay, well, nevermind.
Wait, wait, hold on. Wait, what? Suarez gets 35 grand?
So it was asked of me to pay Suarez out of state account for the quota. Uh, I reviewed the quota, talked to some members of command and they had expressly said that that is not how it works. And so I did some due diligence behind it. Uh, to understand what that process is. Um, the reason why I even held off on that is because if I start opening. Paying people quota sides to it as part of the state account, that opens the door for anyone that had at any point in time down in quota and say, why not me too? Uh, where's my hand up? So that's why I was gonna kinda nix that side to it.
That's why I wanted to do it myself, cause I didn't wanna set precedence. And the reason this was brought up is because during one of the shift three meetings. Uh, I said I would do it because he contributed, uh, a lot to, I think it was two different quota weeks. Uh, he was top three or some shit. And he wasn't available to be around to, uh, reap the benefit of that. And I said that, uh, I would see about getting him paid. So yeah, um, it's coming out of my pocket. Which I'm totally fine with. I think he deserves it.
Oh, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, it was what he was calling me every day for.
That's fair. I mean, he probably has some, uh, probably needs some financial stability now that he's been fired for doing his job.
Uh, I mean, he's got a gauntlet, nice one. He was saying that he was trying to use the funds to buy a new one, so I don't know what he needs.
Wait, hold on. He's gonna buy two gauntlets?
I just wanted another car, as we said.
Uh, you know, I was looking at the Carfax for the gauntlet versus all the police vehicles. The, the Carfax rating is 150 points higher than any police vehicle we have. It's kinda wild. Um, we're seeing gauntlets all over the city now. Kinda crazy how that works.
So, I don't know why it says that. Um, I would definitely rate some of the, uh, cop cars above the gauntlet, in my opinion.
I mean.
Drive a lot of cop cars, they're mad.
What?
I said you drive a lot of cop cars there?
I have driven a lot of cop cars.
Uh, maybe years ago, but.
No. Ah, no.
Sounds fun. I'll do that too, fuck it.
I'm not gonna ask more.
Why, I didn't steal.
Did you steal my turbos?
I had to drive one the other day to, cause an officer, they got hurt and they needed me to drive it down a mountain for them.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
I've driven a CVPI, a Taurus, uh, Scout, uh, B-Star. Uh, not the Caracara. And I've driven a gauntlet.
Yeah, the, all I know is this. There's a black gauntlet. Oro Alex Suarez. It shows up everywhere, every single time.
Oh, so he's doing a, um, what was that guy's name?
Jamal?
No, uh. Who was the guy who had the motorcycle with 28 strike points and then he sold it and got a new one and then joined the SDSO? Murphy, help me out.
Oh, that's so specific. I wish I knew who this was. Yeah, please remember.
It's like, is, is some guy, is, is like.
Why was it Salim?
Yeah, Salim, there you go.
It was fucking Salim, okay.
Yeah, he's probably.
Salim Winder?
No, no, a different Salim.
He's probably doing a Salim. That's why he wants to get a new gauntlet, cause you guys are tracking that plate, so he wants to buy a new car, cause he can't change your plates anymore.
Oh.
I'm telling you, I know that plate by heart. It's U3377883.
Come on.
Black plate, yellow text, red lights.
Holy shit, impressive.
Yeah, that's, that's a Salim right there.
We don't know if it's him, but that car shows up everywhere.
Is it, uh, in crime shit or not?
Uh, all I know is I saw it and then I got mag dumped two days ago.
Oh, okay. Alright, uh, so yeah, I just took out eight. And then I think we, that's everything that we went line by line for you. From before. That should be alright.
So, so what is the concern with four? It authorizes them to disperse money if they're not authorized to?
Uh, this was the portion that you said that you actually liked and that you were just gonna say, hey. Uh, if someone wants to come up with an idea, you trust that the treasurer is able to enact on that idea. Uh, that is the section that you requested that you liked out of them all.
Sorry, Max?
Yes.
I went and, uh, wrote something in section four.
The purpose of funding events, right?
Yeah, just, uh.
Yeah, I think that's fair, cause I don't wanna treasurer to be misunderstanding and think that they're able to like, you know, say, give 300 grand to the PD or some.
No, that's, that's not the intent. That is, is for the city to be put back into the city, should events, like for example Pride that was just. Uh, presented in front of Siobhan and I, um, as well as Andy's things. So, yeah, no, that's, that's entirely perfectly fine. Uh, I'm not trying to be like, oh, hey, yeah, I'm just gonna go give PD a fuck ton of money so that they can.
Yeah.
Well. That brings me up to a point. We, uh, we have, uh.
Are we gonna vote on this first?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's put this to bed, cause I think we've been on this for three hours. So I've removed eight, Max added for the purpose of funding events. And at that point, I'm, I'm pretty certain, okay. Uh, I'm, I'm good as long as other people are good, if, with the amendments, if we wanna vote on those.
Uh, just for clarity, TJ, that right there, that's what I meant by ad hoc earlier.
Uh, okay, I gotcha. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I didn't. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I still feel like this needs to be split into like three parts.
Uh.
Like you got the transparency, you got the CYA, you got the, you, you know what I mean? Like, I, I just feel like this needs more time.
So, uh, technically, um, so one, two and three are all like kinda standard. This first off definition type shit, right? So it's established what it's, what it is. So the only thing you're really looking at here, Cornwood. Is four, five and six, because enforcement's amendments is basically just saying that what that is, is it has to be approved by us. Not, eight is taken out and nine is just means that's effectively now. So the only things you gotta look at, four, five, six. Uh, which we have gone through extensively. So delete everything else from your mind and just look at those.
We gotta delete that shit from the damn paper too.
Uh, no, there's, that's backgrounds is definition shit. It, it's a cover your ass again in case it comes up in like legal terms.
Do we, do we, do we wanna amend anything or vote?
Well, uh, I see some people still, are you, you done editing, uh, Max?
Yeah, I just, uh, threw in for the purpose of funding events in section five.
Yeah, uh, it's perfectly fine, yep.
Uh, we might wanna rename this to like event funding approval and Financial Transparency Act or some shit. Um.
Thanks for fund requests and transparency.
What, I think Cornwood's right. I think Cornwood's right. Um, we can keep going around the table. If you wanna split this up into just section six being its own thing. And then clearly, clearly defining, um, the process that you will be doing for approving events and stuff. I think is probably the best way to go for this.
Uh, that's fine. So I can take six, I can put it into a different one.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
Uh, we, we, uh, can anyone hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, we can keep going around the table while you do that and then we can go back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Wait, we're not gonna vote on, okay?
Uh, well, I'm just making a small adjustment to it.
It, it needs, it needs to be split up into like three separate legislations, I think.
Just, just two, just two.
Two.
Yeah, two, two should be fine.
Okay, I'll take a look. Uh, uh, whatever.
I'm just gonna name it Funds and Transparency Act, but fun?
Yeah.
Alright, so what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna change it to like section three, make copy and paste like the first parts of those definitions, if it needs to apply to it or not. And then I'm just gonna put it in there, alright? Give me a sec.
Sounds good. Um, can't forget anything?
No, not today. I'm, uh, I'm good on that. I was cooking on the, uh, you know, your, your very kind of offer to, uh, come up with my own, uh, staff. Uh, but then I realized that Lethem doesn't need a free job handed to him, uh, like Michael does. So, uh, I'm, I'm alright.
Uh, Crane already presented stuff. Uh, Cornwood, you got anything?
Boy, do I. Okay, got a few things today. I'm gonna try and keep it brief, since everybody comes to me bitching and moaning about everything.
Okay.
But I'm gonna try and keep it brief. Um, we already followed up on, uh, the shit from last week, got that done. Uh. One thing that keeps coming up from Command, PD Command, is about the times and fines. Uh, and an ETA on the rebalancing of the times and fines, a lot of the charges that are in place.
So that, that, I already talked to Slacks about that today. Um, to my understanding, there, uh, is some data being looked into by the technicians. On why the MTD is, um, oh, displaying certain things. Uh, and why it fluctuates a certain time. But I also noted to them. That based on my reading of the latest log, Max has equalized them, correct?
Nope, uh, so, yeah, what happened was, is, uh, the tech, the technician. Uh, so basically during last meeting, I was like, okay, I'm just gonna set back to normal so there's no more confusion. And then, uh, we can wait to see if, uh, it will be fixed in the future. Technician at, technician asked Cornwood to ask me to set it back so that they can target the bug. And figure out why it's doing that.
So, so I have informed Slacks either way that it is being looked into. So I told him, for now, you should just be using whatever the MDT says.
Okay, so pending the adjustments from the IT guy. Um, then, then at that point, we'll get it balanced.
Just, yeah, just, just go with the MDT says, uh, the, you know, uh. The, the bugs will be sorted out.
Okay, the, the, what the MDT says on charges or what it says when you actually put them in?
Cause when you put them in, you go back.
Okay, so when you put it in, you go back and then you come back in, it goes to the original numbers. So if you go to the charge screen on the MDT, then those numbers are higher. So just for clarity.
Realistically, realistically, look, here's the thing. Just do your goddamn best. The truth is, is that we're sorting out a bug. And that there are going to be niche use cases where, you know, your mileage may vary, right? But the worst possible thing that is gonna happen is that someone is gonna have 25% more fines versus, you know, same 5% less, uh, or 25% less time, right? And, uh, the, the inverse of that is possible as well, that they'll just have equal, equal, okay?
And I will communicate to the lawyers that they need to just deal with it.
Just deal with it. Just, just let the technician short his shit out. And everybody just needs to go back doing their jobs and stop worrying about shit about their pay.
Calm the hell down, good shit, pretty much.
The one method I know works is applying the charges fresh, uh, after an MDT reset. And then taking a picture of the, the time and fine that pops up in the top rate after you apply the charges the first time. Uh, that's the correct value.
Yeah, that's too complicated for BD. Just fucking deal with it.
Taking a picture.
No, it's resetting and then fresh adding and you, you said four steps before that. Just fucking deal with it until you get figured out. Next.
Okay, next. Uh, there's another question that comes from Command, uh, helicopters. Do we have any sort of idea how we can, uh?
I am going to be talking with the state on how much the manufacturer is going to charge them for the import of the helicopter. And then we will relay that.
Okay, and is there any sort of grant or anything we can get in order to assist with the pay that?
Uh, there are some discussions occurring about how you could pay for it. It has yet to be determined. For now, it is a look but don't touch. This is something to be excited about for the future. But do not act as if it is actually something you have access to yet and do not make plans around it.
Okay, so I'll get, I'll just tell them one or two weeks.
Just, you know, and this is pretty goddamn simple. There, there's a fucking what, uh, what, what's in there in your garage? A police, uh. There's fancy shit in there. Buffalo, there's another one that looks like a goddamn super that Mary Mush can try to sell me six years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, at, at the end of the day, just treat it like that shit, okay? For now. Uh, it, it is there. The manufacturers have it on their assembly line. It is not something that y'all have been afforded or, you know, is, is in place yet.
Okay. Uh, as far as EMS low numbers affecting police work, um, that's still being worked on. Uh, you know, there, there's efforts being made, I guess, to, it's kind of like a joint EMS PD thing. Um. Some legislation. Uh, I want to bring up a specific legislation because just some shit has kinda gotten out of hand. Uh, and this is something that I've talked about with a lot of folks. And, uh, the PD is weak, the PD is. Honestly filled with a whole bunch of pussies that are afraid to do their job sometimes. So, I said, what better than to give the PD. A, um, I guess a little bit of impairment through legislation with the Police Vehicle Protection Act. And I went ahead and put that in the, uh, I went ahead and put that in, in the MDT, if you wanna take a look at it. So, report 6217. We basically have people stealing our cars and shit and major, majorly hindering our ability to do our jobs. It's getting bad. And years ago, you know what we did? They're stealing our guns and shit. They're stealing our equipment. We'd shoot their ass, okay? Now I understand that we can't always do that, however. Having it legislated, some degree of qualified immunity, if you wanna call it that. Then hey, if you need to take the force, use the force necessary in the given situation, based on where you're standing, where the vehicle is, et cetera. Then you can do that and you're protected in doing that. Cause it's getting bad. Like, I went on duty last night.
You're asking for the ability to shoot people with your cars.
Not always. Just use the necessary force. So if you're, if you're at a distance, if you're real far away and that is the only way that you could stop them, sure.
You already have that in your SOPs.
Uh, I'm, I was told never, that we're never supposed to do that.
Okay, then you're never supposed to do it. We don't override SOPs. Okay, then you're never supposed to do it. We don't override SOPs here.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that's just the reality of the situation. Uh, in terms of PD SOPs, this council is not in a position to do that. The state is, the state may communicate as much, uh, through, you know, myself. Or through the mayor in some cases, whatever it may be, like we had under the PCP. Uh, but at the end of the day, uh, that is not something we could decide here and now without state input.
Okay, well, what I'm seeing, I'm, 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 let me look through one more time. I think there might not be anything in our SOP specifically about.
Well, yeah, so you just default to, you know, uh, your SOPs regarding use of force. And if those fail you, then result to the law about self-defense. You cannot protect property with self-defense. And if your SOPs don't, you know, allow you to escalate to lethal force for property either, uh, then there's your answer, I guess.
Okay, well, I mean, if somebody can take a vehicle and they're driving away recklessly and they're now, I mean, at that point, they're fleeing felon. And they have police.
Your argument, your argument would then apply to every single bank robbery ever. Just shoot them when they leave.
Well, no, cause it's, you, when you rob a bank, what do you get?
You just said recklessly evading in a vehicle.
Oh, true, but you're, you're stealing police equipment, right? When you rob a bank, you're robbing them of money, right? When you, when you rob a, uh, police vehicle, you're robbing them of, I mean, I might have a gun in there. I might have privileged information in there that could be used to harm the public, right? To be held, held against somebody.
Yeah, but we don't operate lethal force on could. You operate based on your should, right? And the law says that you shoot someone if you can articulate. That not only are they fleeing felon, but that they're presently armed and present a continuing and ongoing danger to society, themselves or others. So in this case, for you to articulate that, well, there could be something in there. You would not only have to demonstrate that it was in there, you'd have to demonstrate, you know, they had reasonable knowledge of it being in there. And they had expressed a previous capacity to use that thing and/or a current intent to do so. So for example, if someone were to shoot at the cops and then steal a cop car and run away, then yes, you would shoot them. But if the person just steals the cop car and drives away, then you should not be shooting them.
So what would you recommend that we do? If we're, if we're, have people steal our car, I'm standing there twenty feet away from the car. And I'm seeing them steal it. And I know I got my damn Glock in there, my backup gun, my other backup gun. You know, my backup badge, everything, okay?
You keep your guns in, in like your glove box?
I'll keep it in the locked storage, but what if they take the locked storage out and crack it open?
Cornwood.
Okay.
If someone walks up to you and puts a gun to your head and says, open the lock storage, what do you do as an officer?
I mean. What do I do?
No, what, what are you supposed to do as an officer?
Well, you're supposed to say no.
Okay, so if that's the case, then your argument is moot. We need to move on from this point.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, I guess to that, to that next point, I mean, this is kind of like the middle point of two other things. One of which is a, uh. A, a qualified immunity. Is that something that's ever gonna be discussed here?
Uh, yeah, we discussed it. Uh, Nakota brought up, why isn't it codified? And I said, because it's not a piece of legislation, it's a concept.
Okay.
Uh, qualified immunity is not something that is written down, except in a more narrow sense in certain jurisdictions. It's just a concept that police acting in good faith are not able to be sued like, you know, civilians would be for liability in those things. Which is already the precedent. Yeah, it's a, it's, it's just a, it's a thing that exists. It's not, uh, it's not something we rewrite down. It never has been. So the, the concept that it, it doesn't exist in writing and therefore it doesn't exist is wrong here.
Okay. So. Since qualified immunity is essentially applied, implied, excuse me, and. We don't need to have it written anywhere. Don't, essentially don't worry about it then, right?
Correct, but what I'm telling you is that, again, uh, if we're going to discuss like this concept of. Using qualified immunity as a shield to shoot people who steal your car. Uh, that's probably not gonna be viewed in good faith, right? Because that's, that's a very clear directive, both from PD command, high command, as well as the law.
Sure. Uh, okay, so next thing is a castle doctrine. If somebody comes into your home or something, uninvited, unannounced, somebody breaks in, if, uh, people can shoot them. Someone's coming in trying to rob your ass.
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I wouldn't see a problem with defending your property.
Yeah, if somebody comes in onto your property. Now, would that, I mean, shit, would that apply to your vehicles?
No, specifically doesn't.
Vehicles are specifically, that's the whole reason why you get to search vehicles without a warrant, is because they're not considered to the same level of habitability.
But even on your own property.
And in terms of self-defense, protecting your vehicle is a no-go.
Listen, Cornwood, if you're at home, uh, and we have castle doctrine and someone walks onto your property. Like my front yard and starts stealing my car, uh, then yes, I'm going to shoot the fuck out of them.
Right, okay.
But that is very different than saying like, for example, I'm a police officer and I have a police car. And I go park it somewhere while I'm on duty.
No, I was clarifying at home is what I was talking about. Okay, so, uh, yeah, that's something, uh. I mean, I, I don't have something written up for a castle doctrine yet, but, uh, it's something I, I'll, I'll, I'll get written up for, for the future. I just wanted to.
Well, do we have any objections to the concept?
Yeah, can we take a vote on it? The concept of a castle doctrine?
I'm all fucking for that, go.
As a future homeowner, I'm for it.
Uh huh, he wanted to hear me object to that. Tech my shit all day.
I really have an issue with it, honestly, nothing, yeah.
My house that I don't possess.
Y'all got no reason to be on my land without my knowledge.
Oh, there you go.
Oh.
You didn't see the house?
Yeah, uh, uh, I'll show you after the meeting.
Alright.
Okay, I might, I mean, I might write some shit up now while we, you know, well, wait.
Max, any thoughts?
Um, let him write it up. Uh, we can keep going.
Okay, and then, uh, the last thing, well, I guess the last thing ain't even me, it's, it's about, uh. It's half me, police continuity plan. Uh, what is, is there a job description for the commissioner?
Uh, I actually just wrote one.
Oh, okay.
Um, cause we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna present PCP two or just, I guess it is technically PCP two, cause there's some, uh, clarifications that I made. Um, I wrote, the commissioner is the absolute head of the law enforcement chain of command. The commissioner does not answer the mayor's office in any capacity after being selected. Uh, commissioner is empowered to carry out the functions of law enforcement at the highest level as a political attache between the state and law enforcement communities. Uh, based on my research and discussing things with people, two things are, we're getting into PCP territory right now. Uh, so if I'm gonna talk about it, uh, I may as well present it.
Send it, I'm done.
Okay. Um, the changes are as such, um, in speaking with Barrick. Uh, in speaking with Cornwood, in speaking with many officers who have expressed a, an interest in there being another law enforcement department. I initially came to one conclusion. Um, one, I didn't think that there was anyone capable of being the commissioner. Uh, and that was just based upon my experiences with various officers. Uh, this sentiment was pretty much agreed by everyone that. Uh, didn't outright say to me that it was their intention to try to become the commissioner. Um, and I am, I'm willing to err on the side of caution for them. Essentially, my first compromise to this was, okay, uh, the people want another department. Uh, what's the harm in that? Uh, oh, two different chains of commands, that's bad. Uh, if there are two different chains of commands, and you know, there's a situation where one department wants to chastise someone from another department. And then the person from the original department's like, nah. Uh, or the, the, the person from the other department's like, nah, that's my deputy, uh, you're just an officer, uh, you're just sergeant of the LSPD, blah, blah, blah. Um, uh, and I got hung up on that for a long time and I was like, oh, okay, so what's the solution to that? And then I decided, um, the best way to do it without a commissioner would be to make it so that. There was at least a de facto head of chain of command, uh, and that would have been the chief of police in this model. Uh, and the sheriff of this other department, cause it's gonna be a county department. Would be equal to the assistant chief. And that would essentially allow for a, in theory, fluid chain of command. Then I realized, that's fucking stupid. Uh, and, and why am I so afraid of allowing there to exist two different chains of command? Uh, what issues could it truly, truly cause that would be ultimately detrimental to the functioning of the police department currently? Cause the police department currently has problems that are, uh, so vast. That it, I, I struggle to even call them a police department. Uh, because their, their capture rate is so low. Uh, on a, uh, a, like on an eight hour basis, on a shift basis, that sometimes it dips down to two people per shift. Uh, and I mean, if anyone's been out on, look, I, ultimately, I understand and recognize. That it is not the sole purpose of a police department to be this wildly effective. Uh, crime crushing unit that is ultimately one hundred percent superior.
You don't wanna make anybody upset.
Right, uh, and that is sort of the vision that has carried on from the, uh, the initial. Three captains of the LSPD down to one now, uh, down to one who thinks it's wise to allow Bobby and Carmine to do a prison transport. For Ramiel Rahman from MRPD. Um, it, there are.
On duty.
With six officers on duty, there is clearly problems. And at first, I tried to address this problem with competition. I did it with the quota system. Uh, and at first, that worked. Uh, interest in the quota system has dwindled a little bit. I'm still going to keep doing it. Um, but at the end of the day, it all comes back to, uh, higher pay isn't necessarily a motivator. For people to want to come on duty. What, the thing. And I, I've, I've spoken to Kyle Pred a couple of times and I'm gonna use Kyle Pred as an example. I know, uh, something like what Kyle Pred had. Will never happen again in Los Santos, uh, cause it, it was dangerous. It bordered on, uh, paramilitary. It, it like, it, it was a fanatical cult. Um, but they wanted to work because they knew that, uh, because their morale was through the roof. Because they could count on each other and because they could, they could be around each other and know that they had each other's backs. And. I think one of the first important building blocks of establishing that level of morale. Is to allow officers to express themselves in the way of choosing if they wish to represent. One uniform or another. Uh, this is the primary reason for the PCP coming back. Uh, is to allow us to pass this, uh, which I would immediately then follow with a suggestion. That we begin the process for allowing officers to run for sheriff, uh, similar to how, you know, we did for mayor or whatever. Uh, get that ball rolling and then, you know, the week after that, start the election. And then the week after that, get them up in the, uh, the Sandy Shores Police Department and get them rolling on that. Um. And after I spoke to a couple of officers. Ultimately, the model I wanted to settle on was two different chains of command. And I know that this has the potential to. Um, cause some tension if there's ever disagreement between two different commands about, you know. What they feel should happen to one particular officer if there's a disagreement. Um, and the solution to that is to appoint a commissioner. Uh, and as I've said, there is no one suitable to be commissioner right now. So another addition that I added to this document is to allow the mayor to act as a person who will mediate and determine final decisions. That could not otherwise be reached by, uh, between two separate chain of commands. Established if and when a secondary law enforcement department is established courtesy of this plan. That's what I wrote.
Do you, do you repeat that story? The first part, who was gonna do it?
The mayor.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Sorry, I just missed that.
So the hypothetical here is, let's say, uh, Sergeant McNulty decides that deputy dickhead. Um, it deserves to be punished. And let's say Sheriff Cornwood's like, hmm, nah. Uh, you know, and like reverses that decision and then the sergeant brings it to the, the, the chief of police and the chief of police goes to the sheriff. And they can't meet, reach an agreement. Then they would come to me, they would present me with all of their information and stuff. Uh, and I would make a, uh, an unbiased decision similar to how the commissioner should. Because the commissioner would not belong to any, uh, law enforcement department. And that would be to ensure that it is able to, uh, enact the absolute unbiased decisions that must be made by someone at the head of. That chain of command, because ultimately, um, two different, uh, it, it, it already happens with the different police shifts. They are, they are tribal. Um, and I, I think a certain level of tribalism is good because it builds toward that morale that we're trying to establish. That is, has not been established and is the reason for lower activity right now out of the police department. Which is then a reason for the lower, um, capture rate, so on, so forth. It needs to be done in such a way that the commissioner can, uh, carry out their duties. When they are finally selected, and I hope to God that someone can prove themselves in the next two months, two and a half months or whatever. Uh, where I can confidently be like, okay, uh, John, federal government, this person is the one who is going to move forward. Uh, who, who is able to be level-headed, blah, blah, blah. Um, it's a whole fucking thing. But, long and short of it is simple. Uh, if this passes, I will move that a law enforcement department will open in the north. Uh, I will move that the sheriff elections begin, uh, and I will move that I will, uh, moderately. And carefully, if I'm even called upon, resolve disputes between these two different chains of command. Uh, because right now, I think that internally, uh, the various law enforcement officers of Los Santos could use a bit of. Um, competition amongst each other. I think that the competition typically breeds improvement. Uh, and I think that if one department excels, it might also inspire the other department to excel. At this point, uh, I'm willing to try anything. This isn't how I always felt. But, you know, between there being maybe five or six officers for shift two, uh, and zero officers for shift three. Uh, I think it's time to try anything.
I mean, look, let's call, let's call a spade a spade. People are finally seeing the same shit I saw three, four months ago. Yeah, everybody sees it, everybody knows it. So I'm, I'm glad people are starting to understand. Cause it's, it's getting egregious.
What is it?
Do you want those men to go another three hours?
Oh, God.
Well, I, you're, 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 I know you're just. I mean. Trying to understand, you know?
I, I, I feel like I have to ask and this will be with the caveat, this is not intended to shit on it. I'm here for the sheriff's office, I've done all that. Um, but wasn't the first PCP meant to fix things?
Yeah, it was. Uh.
What do you think's different here? I'm actually open here.
It was to fix the chain of command issue, so right, Max?
Uh, it was, it was intended to fix everything.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, right now, uh, I have done everything that I can for now for the LSPD. Uh, and what this, what its representation is for is to establish the sheriff's office essentially. And to allow there to be two different chains of commands and to allow there to be a voice that can settle disputes should they arise between both of those departments.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, yeah, so that's PCP two. Uh, questions? Concerns?
Do you, do you foresee an immediate benefit to deploying a parallel development track for, for law enforcement? Do you like, like, do you think like doing like bounty, like, uh, quota bounties? For example, would just like create an immediate incentive to, to, for, for, for departments to compete and shape up? Like, you know what I mean by a bounty? Like, first, first department to get to ten arrests for this, like, problem crime, like, something like that, like.
It, it would allow me to expand, uh, the quota, which would then probably have that hopeful result. I, I know that they'll compete with each other.
I want them to.
Well, on that bag of the question though, uh, if we're talking about a department up north and department in the city. Uh, do they just have identical jurisdiction and requirements? Cause.
Yep, yeah, uh, at the end of the day, uh, I don't, I mean, right now, I, I could not in good faith ask. The sheriff's office to stay out of Los Santos, cause I know that there aren't enough units to even patrol Los Santos. the sheriff's office to stay out of Los Santos because I know that there aren't enough units to even patrol Los Santos right now.
Okay, well, then then that makes it. The competition thing kind of has to go out the window then, right?
Not necessarily. The uh if a Blaine County Sheriff's Office Officer uh gets a traffic stop, they tag up BCS. This this has specifically to do with the quota.
Um right, right. So I'm saying like kidnapping, for example, let's say there's a laundromat. Sure. LSPD operate out of the city primarily. Does that mean they just create every laundromat scene? So they just, you know, uh?
Uh who my wife and I will investigate to see who was the leading officer and how many officers were from each department and go accordingly. It's very easy to uh figure out the particulars.
Yeah, I'm already going through and adding all of the officers who are involved in each report anyway and um separating them out.
I mean, being in that situation, I feel like that's gonna be a pain in the ass. And so so you'd have a different like a different rate of pay between like the county officers and the city officers?
It's not possible.
Yeah, cuz that sounds that. Yeah, okay, good. I was just.
So my my question is this, uh it it it's tempting to look at this as a way of saying, okay, while the PD can't be saved, let's say abandon it, the idea of fixing it. And rather than like breaking up the the structure, the command structure that's not working somehow uh to create a whole other department and just start from scratch, which you know, does give uh and afford opportunities for other people who aren't getting them now to stand out, sure. And it kind of doubles your ability to scout that. But you're still kind of giving up on PD.
Not necessarily. Um they are allowed to operate as they have, and I think it's important to realize that. I don't I don't think that establishing a secondary chain of command in another police department is is saying that the first one has failed. I think that it is an attempt to breed competition in order to inspire morale.
Okay, no, that answers my question. It's it's just tempting to see it that way is all. Yeah, I'm sure you get it.
No, that's that's fair. I mean, look, there's a major, major morale issue and it 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 goes beyond. It goes beyond the scope of what anybody can even see, you know, whether it's whether it's me. Yeah, it's it's just it's bad. It's miserable. I I would go as far as saying it's it's actually completely dead gum miserable right now.
Um it it I and I'm not saying this, uh the establishing another department will even be uh the thing that fixes that. Uh I this is an attempt to uh I feel like I pussyfooted on this during term one because I was I I kind of subscribed to that belief, Murphy, where I was like, listen, if we do that, then that's admitting that, you know, all of my efforts and attempts with the LSPD have failed. And I don't. There's a there's a lot of factors at play here that unfortunately, uh I and even people in the LSPD do not have any control over. Uh there are certain directives that must be followed that may not be immediately apparent. Uh there are certain people who unfortunately have lost their job because they felt that they were doing the best that they could within the powers that were afforded to them, only to find out that the rug was pulled out from underneath them. There are people who there are. It it is scary on multiple fronts to be a police officer. Uh and at the end of the day, this is some, this is going to be something to allow them to express themselves in a way that will hopefully uh allow them to build the same kind of community minus the cult that was present uh years ago.
Yeah, I mean, oh, I don't want to get on soapbox right now, but holy shit. It is it is hard to stress how horrible it is and and how helpless everybody feels. I I just it is it is so damn bad where we're losing officers every day. People ain't they just eventually they just stop showing up. Right? Some of them have have turned to a life of crime, apparently and allegedly, right? It's just like, I I don't know. I I I don't know how much longer and how many more people can take it. It it is so bad. Like, I I think there needs to be a whole mental evaluation on every single person that's in the PD because there's obviously something that's wrong with you. Like some kind of self harm, like you you obviously hate yourself if you're a police officer right now. It is bad. Like, we're losing, we lost a receptionist two days ago. A receptionist. That that's how bad the morale is.
Can I add to this, Cornwood? Just a hot second. I'm not disagreeing whatsoever. I'm actually like I advocate for your shit because as someone that uh was, you know, you reference pred side to it. Uh I've worked during that time as a cop for two years, if you're not familiar too much. Morale's a big thing. Leadership is even a bigger thing, though. And you reference pred side to it and he is the type of person that actually they fight for his people publicly and internally. Uh which, as you said, people understand that they have your back, but that's that wasn't everybody, right? That was that was definitely a pred thing, for sure. Not all departments were like that. I'll be flat out, right? And that was one of the reasons why I was like, give me the fuck out. I mean, I wasn't in pred's department. It's a strong leadership that is going to get people to be around someone that actually motivates. It Crane, you said it before. Money isn't going to be a determining factor. Right? And it is truly putting that right person that is going to motivate people. Listen, I've lived through commissioners. I've lived through all them, but you gotta have someone that's vocal. You gotta have someone that's actually there, someone that people want to rally around. If you don't have that, what the fuck are you doing?
Yep. Um I'm gonna be doing a long investigation in the next month or so, provided this passes to uh uh to learn from my mistakes from the first PCP and to hopefully select somebody who meets that definition.
I got a question.
Sure.
How are you going to be privy to the issues that they disagree on?
They'll both present their case.
I mean, there there's a lot. There's there's a lot of issues in the PD. The 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 bottom line is morale. What really affects morale negatively? There's the whole, oh, I can't catch this criminal, right? That's that's one thing, but I don't think that's really that bad. Uh I think the pay thing, it's not really that bad, right? Like, these aren't really big factors when I say not that bad. I think one thing that really, really hits hard is when you feel like you can do something or you feel like you should do something, but you have something holding you back or feeling like you can't do something because you don't have help. You don't you don't have somebody who has your back, right? Now, you want to you want to reference pred and that that cult shit he had going on after I left. I I don't know, right? What I do know is this. I'm a big believer in the thick blue line, okay? And I do believe that we need to support each other more. I'm sick and tired of seeing police officers not supporting each other because at the end of the day, I know how this city works. And we're all we got, okay? When you when you look to your left and you look to your right, that's it. You don't really got much else. And a whole lot of the rest of the world is against you. So the last thing we need to do, and there's a line behind, don't don't mistake my words, this ain't about like a asking for a lack of accountability, right? Or less accountability. But the last thing we need to do is to go against each other, okay? You can still hold one another accountable. You can still teach one another, okay? And say, hey, this is how we can get better. This is how we can do right by not just each other, but by the city, by the people, by the by the people that we're here to protect, right? And hell, since everybody else in this damn city cares so much, even the damn criminals, okay? Cuz at a certain point, you ain't gonna have nobody to steal from the way things are going, all right?
Yeah, I totally get that. It's like, um you know, for all intents and purposes, you're going to war every day. So if you don't feel like the people you're going to war with have your back and that you don't have that strong leadership who's leading from the front of the charge, like morale tanks really, really fast.
And and I'll I'll take it a step forward. I'll I'll take it a step forward. The leadership needs that. The the leadership needs the backup. Culture culture changes at the top. Cultural movements come from the bottom. I think I think everybody should know that. They don't already. And I think as much as much as you can try and change the culture at the top, if if the people in the middle and the people in the bottom, if they don't have your back, which for the record, in our case, I think a lot of people do. But sometimes there's a there's there's a there's your PD. You got your command, you got your high command, you got your officers. And then you got God, okay? You got the highest of high command, all right? And sometimes you just gotta pray real hard and say, good Lord, give me the help I need to go in today and be able to save this city and protect people, okay? And I just look, I just want the Lord's blessing. I want the Lord's blessing for the good people leading us, and that's all I ask. And hopefully that's coming. But until then, we gotta do the best that we can within our bounds. And we'll be good.
Are we? So I intend to put this to a vote. Do we have any questions before we do that? Okay, uh TJ.
TJ?
Oh, no. Oh, sorry. I was totally talking but not talking. Uh I'm guessing you didn't hear anything I just said.
No.
Nope.
You can go from the start.
Okay, all right. So I I do have a quick question with it. Um so what happens after the fact of you're no longer in term? I just kind of want to put that out there. How do they report what's reporting? Or what actually happens?
Uh all of those people that are appointed remain appointed. Uh hopefully, a commissioner is chosen so that they can have a final top to the chain of their command.
So you have it in there basically saying you're going to choose a commissioner.
Hmm. No, I would to be to be to be clear, I'm going to pick who I think is the best. Sure. And then I'm going to forward that person to the state and then they are going to tell me if that person is okay.
Yeah, yeah, that that's 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 fine. Um so you choose, um state says, okay, sure. They come in. After that point, that commissioner is kind of like you're setting them out on a ship and they got their own shit together. You know, they got their crew and then afterwards you got no longer any oversight basically of it because that's now them.
Yep, it kind of reverts to the way that it is for most departments where there isn't there isn't like direct oversight that will raise the flag on potential issues.
Yeah. So you're handholding him until there is actually off the ground.
Um you I handholding, I wouldn't say handholding, I would say
Negatively.
Uh I know what I know what you mean. Uh setting them up for success, uh just giving them, you know, if they've got any questions, acting as the direct conduit uh to pass that on and to have that answered for them in a timely manner.
Okay. Uh I got nothing against it.
What is your vote, sir?
Yeah, well, I guess that's yes.
Solomon. Uh Canter.
Uh you are. It's gonna be a bit of a shocker. Uh actually, yes, uh you have my vote on this. Uh I can understand what you have laid out uh for this time around. Uh I don't think the first one was incredibly well executed, but I do actually believe you might have learned from that and uh and want to do something good with it. So uh so here you are. You've got my vote on that. Also, good job saying Michael did nothing. That that really helps. Thank you.
Uh Crane.
Mm hmm.
Alan, Alan.
Hmm. Yeah. Are you planning on replacing the chief and assistant chief?
They're gonna be under review.
Hmm. Is this? Okay, is the sheriff election publicly voted?
Yep, that's actually what the original three captains wanted, uh and it's a good idea.
Then in conjunction with those two things, I would propose an amendment that states uh that anyone who has been replaced as high command in the past should not qualify to run for sheriff.
Ooh.
Well, recently or?
So for example, if you go through and you decide you're going to uh you know, shuffle around the current chief police or assistant chief police or you and the state decide you're gonna you know, do all these different things. Uh then I don't think those people should be eligible for some kind of golden parachute to just go become a sheriff.
What what if they were high command years ago? Like Matt Rhodes or myself?
Um you were. I don't think you count, Cornwood.
Okay, and what about Matt Rhodes?
Wait, do we really have to tell him hello? Oh, shit.
What I'm saying is you what I'm saying is you could wipe your shit.
I'm always talking to you, baby. What's going on?
Quick with the foot.
Oh.
Yeah, get in. Where are you at, Slim?
I know how that goes.
No, you're on the wrong floor, buddy.
Um I had a little line about the sheriff selection in the uh PCP.
You're on the wrong floor. Where the fuck? Wait, what the hell just happened?
Uh I don't think anyone knows.
I don't know. Okay, yeah.
I'm not too worried about it.
Well, you just relax, Sig.
I think that's that's great.
He's hammered.
All right, get in here, bud.
Get it. Get him in here. He's hammered and I gotta go.
All right.
Oh, Zuckerberg, what's going on?
Hey, this is Wam Wingle. Wingle's here too. I'm just gonna.
Hey, am I right?
Uh.
Oh.
Uh huh.
I'm taking a break. Get in there, boys. We got work to do.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that's right, Fing. We'll get in here.
Sorry, guys, I got some special guests.
Make me Fingle done. Hi, Fingle.
He's really.
Hello.
Oh, my God.
Zuckerberg virtually.
What's good, y'all?
Oh, hi.
How we hanging?
Oh, my God.
What's up?
He's been so.
What's going on, gang?
What's your first name?
Fingle.
You.
Hold up, the same Zuckerberg that I fought with.
I heard your voice.
He didn't walk in yet.
I I I was whispering. I was whispering, Siobhan. I could hear you before you walked in through the door.
Called you a lot today, Siobhan.
I know you did, Fingle. I'm really sorry.
Didn't pick up the phone, but everybody else.
I missed you, man.
I'm stealing your fucking food.
Ooh.
All right, you're cool.
Thank you. What's up?
Thank you. I take meetings very seriously. If I was meeting with you, I would do the same thing, Fingle. I would ignore everyone else's calls if I was meeting with you.
Who's in front of me? Look like collateral Tom Cruise.
This is Murphy Brown. You tried to set me up for killing a cop, remember that?
Yeah, I remember. You are. You in this room right now.
I just woke up at the apartments and you're like, oh, you must have killed that cop. Let's go to jail now. That was fun.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm not about that anymore. I don't. I'm just uh very legal.
Hey, Fingle, you want to be police commissioner?
I tried. I did the same thing. I said the exact same thing, believe it or not.
That is a good choice.
Yeah, Crane, I would really like that, if that's okay.
You gotta talk to Max. You gotta talk to the guy with the face tattoo on that one.
Seen this guy in my life.
Hey, Alexis Fingle, yeah.
Oh, hey, Fingle Dan.
Yeah, you gotta talk to that guy pissing in the corner.
Yeah.
Hey, Cornwood.
Oh, wait, you know, you're also a DOC.
It's good seeing you.
Yes, really good.
Sorry, and get him about running over at like a hundred and forty miles an hour like eight years ago.
Yeah, I remember that.
Wait, Fingle, you know you're a DOC, right?
You see?
There's a law, there's a law right now. Okay, so get this, Fingle. We made, and and bear with me, cuz I know it sounds crazy, um, but I'm sober, so trust me.
Sorry to hear that.
So that Carmine Costello and Bobby Charles run the prison.
Yeah.
And it's a lawless zone where anything goes and the only people pre-authorized to be hired are the Dans and the Littlemans.
Put the Dans in there?
Yeah, so you, you get to go just sign on a DOC whenever you want and go fucking kill people and do other shit in there.
You're not just tricking us to go to jail again. That's all I'm saying. They'll just give you guns over there.
Fingle. Hey, Fingle, I need a, I'll send you an email, Fingle.
Yeah, yeah, man. So what's the meeting about?
Pay you to hunt inmates.
Hunt? Like a ghost?
Yeah, I've heard of these things.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a ghost, a ghost with a gun.
What I'm saying is like DOC is a lawless zone. You could, you could get paid by people to to hunt people for sport. It happens.
And then I can hire you.
Okay, but why do you have Mark Hamill Joker on the wall?
Oh, that's my inspiration.
Oh, my God, it is.
And can we sit down at the table today?
Yeah, go for it. Grab a seat.
I'll sit next to Murphy. I'll take Cornwood's seat for now.
Hey, yeah.
Tension's high? Oh, okay. Alright.
To be honest.
Uh, Cornwood, how do you, there we, there we go.
Anybody scream at each other? Oh, who, who, who?
Uh, me versus Max, so it's a.
Oh, nice. Did you, did you scream too or just Max?
Max told Cornwood to shut the fuck up in a very loud tone.
Oh.
Yeah, but I did that on purpose.
Nice.
Fingle, you're looking slim. You working out?
Yeah.
Nice.
He wants, he wants a gun.
I've also been working out.
I'm on the same pill as Drake was on.
You look amazing. Look like he just woke up out of that coma.
I heard that's pretty good.
Very skinny.
I stay pretty active.
Ozempic?
No, no, just just diet and exercise.
Come on, Bron. Be real with us.
Hello. Hello.
I'm being real.
Hey, uh, Max, I'd like to formally nominate Fingle Dan as police commissioner.
Hello, young dad.
I thought you had, uh, cancer.
Yeah, I tweeted a bunch of diseases. Cancer, gout, AIDS, like the whole nine yards, all of it.
And I used to know a guy who who used to keep his, uh, AIDS infected blood in a needle and would stab people with it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That guy taught me everything I know.
Nice.
What was his name again?
You wanna?
Uh, what was his name? I was there when they raided his house.
Wanna hear his name?
His name is Leslie.
Yeah, Leslie.
You, you did not, you, you. You have no idea what I'm talking about.
Oh, no, there were, there were two people with AIDS infected blood then, cuz there was another guy that did that too.
The Hangover?
How was that happened twice?
You remember The Hangover?
Oh, that's happened more than twice, trust me.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, Leslie Chow.
No.
No. Well, we were, we, we were just in the middle of a vote. Yeah, we actually.
Alan, what was the amendment you said you were proposing?
Uh, something about past high command not getting a golden parachute to be voted as sheriff.
I wrote, I wrote, I wrote, I wrote in the PCP, a sheriff election should be public semicolon, any officer so long as they have not been replaced as high command in the past may run for sheriff.
Um, in English?
Yeah, Doc, come on, Doc. English, please.
Uh, you can't be a two-time loser.
Oh.
Oh, we only take W's here, Fingle.
W.
And where do the Dans qualify on the loser scale?
You guys are exempt.
Oh.
Uh, still, are we talking post-collapse or?
Well, obviously, they're talking post-collapse, Cornwood.
Okay. I mean, it's been five years.
Uh, what's your vote, Crane?
Uh, with the amendment, yeah, for sure.
Uh, Fingle Dan.
Do what you will.
Um, what did everyone else say?
Yes.
Yes, so far.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Cleese Cornwood.
Yes, this is Jeff Foxworthy.
I abstain.
Okay, uh, head of bar, Murphy Brown.
Uh, I am progressive about policing, yes.
Uh, chief of staff, Siobhan Thoroughbred.
Duh.
Uh, I'm also, yes. Uh, Sergeant Jeffrey Bones.
We shouldn't fire him.
Who?
No, we're not talking about firing you. Oh.
Not yet. That's the next discussion.
That's, yeah.
I don't think we should fire him.
We're not firing anyone, jackass.
Alright.
We're allowing, uh, we're voting on allowing Max to do the PCP again.
Oh, promote him.
So that's a yes.
It sounds like a yes.
Cool. Okay, so, uh, two abstains, the rest, yes. Um. Immediately now, I would ask the chief justice to, uh, open up, uh, sheriff elections.
Yeah, we gotta do signups first and then we'll vet the signups, then we'll do the ballot and blah, 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 blah. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good. Awesome. Uh, I pledge to do my best, uh, to act kind of similar, uh, to a judge. When it comes to making impartial decisions as the, uh. The mayor, uh, when resolving disputes between two, uh, chains of command. Um. I just want them to succeed. I really do.
What's the problem?
Have you considered tying yourself to a different boat?
Nope, this is, this is, this is the boat. This is the boat that I.
DOJ is a steamliner. We're chugging along.
Yeah, cuz they got a dictator at the head.
Exactly, goddamn right.
With that, they need a dictator, man. I, they do.
They do.
Oh, now I get it.
I'll take a leave of absence. I'll do it. No problem. I'll be sheriff. Okay, I accept.
Commissioner is what I need you as.
Oh.
I thought I was.
But sheriff gets like a better outfit, right?
Yeah, sheriff's the Fingle thing. Did he get fired?
What about, yeah, did I get fired already? Cuz I. Fingle, Dan.
I swear, Crane, you would not have to change a single thing about yourself to be commissioner.
Probably not.
You wear the same shit.
You could interchange Fingle and Crane for this, and it would be like the same.
Okay, no, now I'm cooking. What if I hire a Fingle as an interim chief justice? And then I'll be a commissioner.
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, I'll show off it.
You, you're saying this as a joke, but I'm not opposed to that.
I'm on my forty-eight percent shit right now.
We both drunk.
No, he's sober, Fingle. He's.
He's fucking lying.
Oh, okay.
Hell, yeah.
Alright.
Uh, yeah, okay, we can discuss the particulars later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone can run for sheriff, that is so long as they're a cop and so long as they have not been high command, replaced as high command before.
And they are approved by the state and a screening process that will occur directly before the ballot is open. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I've never been that.
Uh, I think, I mean, Cleese, you said you were done? Before that?
I am, yeah, I'm done.
Want your seat back?
Uh, Bron.
It's good. I like standing.
Um, I'm cooking something. It's not quite ready yet. I wanna do a lot more of the work up front cuz it's a softer piece of legislation. So I don't wanna have a vote on it and then I'd be stuck with the work, so. Okay. I got some other things to do on it.
Well, I'll move past that. Uh, is the sheriff reelected every three months or is that, did we total file it? I don't mind either way. I was just wondering, uh, I'm assuming it'd be replaced eventually? Or is it like a, once voted, you're just, it's there?
Hmm, that's a good ass question, actually. Should, should, should we force a, uh, like a, like a six-year revote?
Three months is a lot, so, uh, or, uh, not a lot, not a lot at all. Six years though?
Sorry, six, I meant six months, six months.
Six months, oh. Cornwood, what do you think as the PD here, since I'm a, I don't, I don't really have a horse in the race?
I think that if the, the sheriff.
I don't think six is bad and they could rerun. Yeah, that was what I was thinking, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on if you have term limits or not. I think, I think if you have an election every three months with no term limits. I think that's, I think that's good, probably.
Uh, okay, I love quarterly.
I think, I think that the state and the commissioner should probably just.
Think about that.
Uh, well, no, they should have valid, well, so what we did with the judge elections, what we still will do when we implement them again, as we discussed today. Is, uh, you basically give people two terms as a voted judge or sheriff or whatever. And if after those two terms, the state is like thoroughly satisfied with their performance, the state has the option to just appoint them as sheriff, right? Um, because it may be that things are going great and that person is the right person for the job. Uh, and if the state doesn't decide to do so, then you just continue with the same cycle of elections, right? That's typically what's worked in the past, at least for the judge, the judge stuff.
It's like achieving tenure.
Pretty much, yeah, it's a good way to put it. Getting tenure, um, and the state is the one that weighs in on tenure, I think is fair.
I mean, they need some time to.
I don't dislike that, yeah.
I, I added, uh, I, I added, a sheriff will have a two-term maximum as an elected official. The state can decide to appoint the, the sheriff in question for a more permanent term if they are found to have served exceptionally well.
Perfect. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
So do, am I, I have job or?
Yeah, we'll get you something.
Like chief justice, I think.
Fingle, I gotta hire you for a million things. Don't worry about it.
Alright.
You could be chief justice of the, uh, the prison.
Zuckerberg and Wingle can have a job too?
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Word. Cool, threefer?
At the very least, you guys get to go kill people indiscriminately in the jail.
Talking about.
I added, uh, sheriff election should happen roughly every three months.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Zuckerberg, I'll get you another RPG for you. Don't worry.
Word. I handle it.
I would like to be king. Do we have an idea on realistically when the election would begin and how long it would last?
My, my typical schedule is that, uh, we take about a. Uh, it's about a four to six day period for signups. Uh, so I will announce like, let's say, three days ahead of time, the four to six day period opens on this day at this time. I then put up, uh, the signups, people then sign up. At the time and date of the signups closing, there is then a week-long election of pure voting and then it is announced at the end of the election.
Would it be unreasonable to ask for that signup period to be shorter? Because there's only a, a very limited amount of people that are gonna be putting their names in anyway, more than likely.
Um, it is essential that we keep it around a week to allow for people who, you know. Might have something going on and don't wanna miss such a like monumentous thing. Uh, so in, in all fairness to, to everyone, uh, we always, you know, need to, at least four to six days, I think is fair. We've done even longer in the past. That's, that's my shortened version.
Okay. Nice.
Uh, okay. Um, Murphy says he wants.
From start to finish, we'd have a sheriff in somewhere between two and a half, three weeks at the latest.
It's not bad. It goes quick.
By the end of the month. We'll have our sheriff by the end of the month. Yeah.
Okay, that would be a very fair statement to make, correct.
Max, that other shit is dumb, by the way. Max. Yeah. You said, uh, you said Murphy? What's up? Oh, I was, I, I, I was starting to say that Murphy says he wants to let his shit cook a little bit, work on it a little bit more. Uh, Siobhan, do you have anything?
Oh, not, nothing this week, just, um, friendly reminder that I do have, uh, that, uh. Tenant rights thing on there, if anybody wants to work on that with me. Um, did not have time, uh, this past week. Um, and, uh, do have like a couple of other things I'm working on, but nothing right now. Nope, I'm good.
Um, I also, I mean, all I had was PCP two. Uh, I think we are done, everyone. Hold up, hold up. TJ is, I forgot, was.
And mine is still waiting.
Yep, tha- that is true. That is true. Uh, well, actually, yours doesn't, uh, apply any longer to like the old shit, so, I mean, I was. It's for that, but yeah.
Okay, so, so Maya gets approved because we changed the sections, right?
Uh, yeah, so I wouldn't can, I wouldn't directly, uh, influence that.
Okay, so any nay votes on the incentive program for judges, ten K for benches, twenty K for dock cases?
Nay.
Nay. Alright, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, so I split those two out. It's, I, I didn't call it some stupid acronym. Sorry, didn't have enough time to really think about it. Uh, Funding Transparency Act, that's the one that basically just, uh, we talked about before. That's everything that is out there. It's public. That is the first one. Uh, that was, I believe, section six. I just changed to section three. Um, just look at section three. That's all you need to look at. And then, can I get vote? Let's see. All transaction tax, uh, changes in place, salaries, you know, uh, shall be recorded and maintained in a public ledger. Love that. State funds are subject to information requests and he says it may submit an information request to obtain detailed information regarding the dispersment and allocation of state funds. So about that. Um, it's been a while since I looked at exports. Um, I forget, in the actual export, does it say what the money was used for? Uh, so this is subject to what I get when I can get it. Keep in mind, I don't have the ability to export those currently, only the ones that are old exports. Um. If I recall from my time in the past, it was two from reasoning, uh, bank account linking between them. And then if you saw from like bank account ID number one, that's coming from the state account. And then you can go from what it is and usually there's a reasoning behind it. Uh, yeah, so. That was, I'm pretty sure it is now. Nah, I'm pretty sure it's the same. Also, uh, for requesting exports, um, we can't do it either. We, we literally just have to ask the state to do it for us, so. I, I, I'm sure you could do the same whenever you wanted. Um. That part looks fine to me. Uh, any adjustments to taxes, salary subsidies, or any other action, uh. Impacted by the mayor's office must be referenced via state announcement. Love that. Must immediately be documented and publicly available, up-to-date catalog for citizens, all citizens to view at any time. Love that. Um, I will say it's not possible to publicly catalog it yet. Uh, we don't have a way to make a public facing, or at least I don't, uh, public facing document that people can reference. Well, well, it means put it as like a legislation document, technically, as a, uh, workaround for now. Yeah, Crane could, uh, find a way to swing that. I, I do not have the, the means to edit a legislation document. Crane, is that good?
Uh, is the state announcements work? I saw Cornwood did one that we have access to, like as a test.
Thanks, Max. Uh, I am a, uh, yay on this. Alright. Uh, with, with the understanding that we're gonna have to find some kind of workaround or, uh, have the ability implemented to allow us to actually make it public facing. It's fine. Uh, Canter?
Uh, yeah.
Alan.
As amended, yep.
Fingle Dan?
Uh, yep.
Cornwood?
Well, what was, sorry, what, what do we go down again? The, the first.
Funding, FTA, Funding Transparency Act, we're fighting on section four is the meat of it.
Um, okay, let's see, I'm, I'm just looking.
And you, and you made a new document, right, TJ? So I'm gonna get rid of the old ones?
Yep, yep.
I'm gonna tag them as gotten rid of.
Uh, yeah, just kind of mark it as invalid. I just use it as.
We use not approved or removed.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just, I need the tags, so when I go through and enact everything, I know what's what.
Yep, that's fine.
Uh, will the, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping, do we have any idea, Green, any ETA, and let DOJ up that might alleviate some of these things?
No.
Your laughter just tells me everything I need to know.
Shut up, cancer patient.
Alright.
Oh, come on. She's suffering.
Good one.
Um. That stolen laugh, Valerie, you son of a bitch. You've already, no, okay.
Well, what else do we need? Well, what else do we need to discuss, guys?
Wait, did you not know?
My docket is clear.
Okay. Uh. Uh, yeah.
So, Cornwood voted no on the Funding Transparency Act, okay.
Correct, correct.
Oh, the yay.
Siobhan?
Yay.
Okay, alright. Uh, I also vote yay. Yeah, I had you on there as a first.
Did I say yay?
So that passes them.
Yes, you did, Fingle.
It's abstaining on deputy mayor, nae on Cornwood, and then everyone else, yay, okay.
And then the next one we're looking at is the, uh.
You just put absent, not abstain, absent is more accurate, cuz abstain means he like, couldn't make a decision.
And the next one we're looking at is, uh, the Funds Request Act, it's the top one in the reports list.
Could do abstention through absence.
Alright.
Is this the same shit we already agreed upon but split out, right?
Yes, that's all that, I literally just copied and pasted it, unless. This, this empowers, uh, TJ and future treasurers to handle, uh, helping people like Andy set stuff up.
Me.
Alright, uh, so, go ahead, Cantor?
Yes.
Crane?
Yeah.
Cornwood?
Yep.
I know on this one.
Oh.
Big yes for me.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, didn't mean.
Yes.
Suckenberg?
I'm just not fucking feeling it, to be honest, I don't know.
Alright, thanks, Suckenberg.
Can I go back?
Uh, you can always go back, Fingle.
I'm over it, no.
Cool, uh, Murphy, he said yes.
Big yes for me.
Okay.
I'm trying to get event funding codified for one.
I'm not feeling it, dog.
Yep, so good, Siobhan?
Uh, I'm just double checking everything. Uh, come back to me.
Uh, I'm a yay, of course. Alright, uh, well, is this a recording, passes regardless?
Yeah, double it and give it to the next person.
Sorry, I was just making sure funding events was in all the right places, uh, yeah, I was gonna need to.
Did anyone hear, Wingle? You said double it and give it to the next person?
Yeah, this guy watches Vine, am I right?
Yeah.
Uh, you're.
Crane.
It's approved.
Come on, come on now.
Look, I'm up on technology, alright?
Alright, and with that, I do believe we are done.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through and let you know everything I'm enacting, just to make sure.
Okay.
Based on my tags.
Okay.
Cabinet, PCP two point oh, toe clamps in you part two. Uh, the thing about sex messages.
Yep.
Hmm, perfect.
Rider protection check.
What?
And the judicial compensation program.
Yep.
Funding transparency and funds request, everything else is either work in progress or not approved.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Oh, wait, emergency fund, sorry.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's there?
Didn't we already like as a piece, like all agree on that, basically?
I don't think, okay, let me delete the.
Wait, didn't we also vote on the whistleblower?
I don't think we actually voted on emergency fund real quick, we just.
We did, we approved whistleblower and we're gonna do the, the thing that is not in the meeting minutes.
Would it be possible if me, Suckenberg, and Wingle knew what we voted on?
Our PCP two point oh, I'm voting for that.
I think it's better if it's a mystery.
So it's like a new PCP, is it like stronger, like what's up?
Yeah, a little bit.
You're more improved, yeah.[1595.11]